Meeting of April 21st to order. Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Vice Mayor Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Mayor Shepard.
Here.
Nine present. Council will be going into closed session. Labor negotiators regarding the Palo Alto Police Officer Association and International Association of Firefighters.
And we'll still end up in Atlanta.
Before we went into closed session. Okay, thank you. So tonight, we do have a... Can you give that to the clerk, please? And not come... Thank you. Tonight, we do have a busy agenda, and our first item is going to be for the study session with our Earth Day. So we begin our meeting with sustainability issues and the city's climate change protection. One hour has been set aside for this item, although the topic is of importance to us, and we can always use more time. Our chief sustainability officer, Gil Friend, will make the staff presentation, which could take 30 minutes. Now, I wanted to just share my experience with Gil since I've met him. I've been on a couple of conferences with him now, and this is a man who is well-known in the sustainability field and very popular, and many of my friends that have been involved in sustainability know of Gil and have... and share real enthusiasm for having him here in Palo Alto. So this is a... And you are the author of books and awards and one of the pioneers in sustainability. So we are really getting ready right now to learn much more about sustainability, and if we're going to get real about it, I guess we're going to get real with you on it. The city manager informs me that staff will suggest next steps for council's involvement on this subject as part of the staff report. So today could allow for an initial surfacing of questions and comments by council, but we also should be open to scheduling a follow-up session rather than running too long over our schedule this evening. So Gil, I'm going to turn it over to you, and welcome to Palo Alto again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for that no-pressure introduction. So this is a report that staff has given to council each year at this time. This year, we follow the same format as last year in general, but with additional context wrapped around the report. What I'd like to do tonight is update you on our progress in the last year, orient you to the way... some of the ways the world around sustainability has changed since the 2007 Climate Action Plan and your decisions in 2005, offer a challenge to you for how we move forward, gauge our appetite for that challenge, and really open an exploration that will continue over the next year, hopefully with more conversations like this one. In summary, we've made impressive progress. You've made impressive progress. I'm new here, so I won't take credit for any of that, but I think there's some remarkable achievements to take credit for. We face daunting challenges in the years ahead, and if we face these with boldness and pragmatism both, I think we can benefit this community and make another important contribution from Palo Alto to the region and to the world at large. The question that I'd ask you to keep in mind is what can one small innovative city do to forward the sustainability revolution? And do that, of course, in ways that advance our community as well. There's a record of leadership here, of recent plans and policies. I'm not going to read these to you, but you can see they span everything from procurement to integrated pest management to the climate plan and the commitment just about a year ago to go to carbon-neutral electricity, which has been achieved and is a sterling achievement, rare among cities around the country. But, you know, it's always useful to step back and think, why are we doing this? And we're doing this, I think, to improve the quality of life in this community, to build prosperity in this community, to enhance resilience here, and do all these in a way that serve us and future generations. So I said there were great achievements. Let me go quickly through a few of them. I'm not going to summarize the specific programmatic accomplishments. You have those in the staff report. That wouldn't be the best use of our time here. But just some highlights of results. You may remember this pie from the 2007 Climate Plan was slightly adapted, but these were the combined emissions of community and city at that time. The original goal was to reduce by 5% by 2012. That goal was revised upwards based on the success of city staff in meeting that goal. Revised goal was 20% by 2020. As of now, we've reduced 29% from those 2,005 figures, way ahead of plan, a pretty sterling accomplishment. If you look back against the 1990 levels, the increase is even higher. It's 34% reduction against the common baseline that most jurisdictions are using to project against the target of 80% reduction by 2050. How did we do it? A number of key measures. Green electricity takes a big bite of our carbon emissions... out of our carbon emissions. Aggressive efficiency programs from the utility. Resource conservation programs across the board in every city department, using landfill gas at our waste treatment facilities, and drops in transportation that we can't take sole credit for. There are exogenous drops in transportation and vehicles mile-traveled in the region, but those benefited our emissions footprint. Some examples of that, you can see we've moved our market power purchases are green or offset by REX. Our renewable portfolio is expanding. We have the base of a large hydro supply. There's electricity, and you can see the progress on renewables, 50% now and shooting Energy efficiency has improved with both electricity and natural gas. The percentages here just reflect what we can take credit for through our actions. There are other efficiency improvements from the things that people buy independently of our programs that are not reflected here. Great gains in residential resource efficiency. You can see over the past, what is this, six or seven years, significant drops, some flattening in water. We need to understand why those gains have stopped and see what we do going forward, because water is clearly a front-and-center issue for us, not just in this coming year, but in the decades to come. City operations themselves, emissions are down about 53%, well ahead of the targets. And progress against various goals is notable: carbon-neutral electricity, maintaining greenhouse gas inventories, and so forth. Here's the challenge. We've done the easy part. Actually, let me back up for a second before we get to that and step back for a little bit of context, because the world is very different than when we started this effort in 2005. We've seen extreme weather events. This chart shows you by decade through the 80s and 90s and aughts, and then just the first three years of the present decade, significant storm events greatly exceeding what we've seen at a decade level in prior years. We're facing a $22 trillion carbon bubble, the 80% of fossil fuel reserves that have to stay in the ground if we're to have a chance of keeping climate temperature increases to 2%. And this is becoming a significant factor in financial markets who see this as a material risk in their investment strategies. KPMG summarized the global mega-forces that we're facing, and if you can see this chart, you'll see that climate is one box out of about 25 or 30 on this box. We're talking a lot about climate, but I think our conversation will need to be broader to encompass many other issues. Fortunately, climate analysis will give us a gateway into those. We've seen declines in our natural gas use, about 1.3% per year. This is citywide, the government, the residences, and commercial use. Electricity use declining more slightly, only a half a percent or so. Water use, not clear if it's declining much at all. So while we have seen efficiency gains, we have overall resource demands that remain high and will be a challenge for us in coming years. To give you a picture of what those big challenges look like, here's the 2005, '12, and '13 emissions broken down by source, and you can see that the big gains came at the landfill and with the electricity portfolio. Notable accomplishments, very worthwhile. The big challenges ahead are here in transportation and natural gas. We've got a Palo Alto green gas program kicking in that will start to take a bite out of the natural gas. Transportation, as you understand very well, is a deep and significant challenge. We clearly don't meet 80% reduction goals by 2050 without addressing those two, and that'll be one of the focuses of our work in the coming year. So just to give you a sense of perspective, here's what it looks like over time, from 1990 stretching out till 2050. Those double bars in the middle are about where we are now, and you can see that we've got a significant ramp ahead of us. In fact, if you look at it this way, the blue on the left is our current practice, steady reductions, and then a big drop in '13 as we went carbon-neutral for electricity. The red is the ramp that we need to be on to hit the 80% by 2050 targets. There are big gaps there, and it will take not only what we've done, we're projecting continual reductions of the past five-years rate. That clearly isn't sufficient. We need to do more than that, but I think we're going to be... need to be seeing some other discontinuous leaps like we saw last year in order to have a chance of doing this. Now, this said, this is leadership among the cities in the United States. This is nothing to be ashamed of. We are way out in front, and it's impressive, but the challenge is bigger than what we've seen before, and we'll take different approaches than what we have used before. So where we stand in relation to some other cities, San Francisco's got an intermediary goal of 40% by 2025. We're almost there, 80% by 2050. Portland moving on a slower ramp. New York on a slower ramp. We're at... We've exceeded our initial goals. We're at 34% now, and one of the questions for us to consider is what do we set as our next series of targets to guide us on this mission? Going forward, the approach that we propose to take is to set clear and bold goals, to see sustainability as an innovation driver, not as merely a problem to be solved, but a challenge that can drive us into innovation that actually improves our quality of life and our financial position. See it as a financial opportunity. In the business world, the leading companies see this as the biggest business opportunity of the century. That's certainly the way that we approached it when we were doing consulting work for In perhaps a departure from how we've worked before, we're going to suggest that we do integrative planning that combines multiple factors into one, and normative planning that stands in the future that we want and looks back to now, because looking forward from here we are, it's hard to see the path for the level of change that we need to generate. And we propose to do all this consistently with the city's open data and open government processes, to share and learn widely, to learn from others and share what we learn with them, because frankly, sustainability is a team sport, and this is something that we're going to have to pull together on. We'll, you know, we'll compete for fun on how we're comparing with others, but in fact, we need to learn together and pull all of us up. And in fact, this is not a problem, obviously, that we can solve at the level of a city. It takes regional collaboration and state and national. But we have the opportunity to be a spark plug and an inspiration for that change for the folks who watch this city in the region and around the world. So let me go into each of these in a bit more detail. Thinking about clear, bold goals, here's an example from San Francisco. Three high-level goals on top of a stack of many more, but it provides a simple summary that people have been able to orient around. Zero waste by 2020. It's a goal that we have set as well for 2021. 50% mode shift out of single occupancy vehicle by 2030. That's a challenging one. And 100% renewables by 2030. We've also set the zero-waste goals. Here you can see our progress against it. It's notable. We're at 78 or 9% now. Just by way of reference, that orange line is the United States average. It's about 35%. The blue is Germany at about 61, and the green at the top is San Francisco at about 80. So we're doing very well there. Sustainability is an innovation driver. This requires us to be willing to fail and fail forward and fail fast, to experiment and try things out at a safe scale, because frankly, nobody knows how to do this. No one has done it. This will have to be innovation. It has to be based on where we're going, not where we are now. And I put this graphic up here just from one of our business people in town, Elon Musk, in the development of SpaceX, looked at the fundamental physics of putting a payload into space and looked at the cost of moving a payload of a particular mass into orbit and determined that the theoretical limit of that cost is about 1% of what NASA spends to put that kind of payload into orbit. And he said that was enough for him to bet $1 billion on SpaceX, not knowing what the technology was, not knowing what the pathway was, but knowing that there was a significant opportunity as defined by the physics. So that's a lesson that I think we can learn from. There's financial opportunity here. People tend to assume that better has to cost more because a BMW is a better car than a Chevy and costs more than a Chevy. People assume that a lead-platinum building will cost more than a lead-silver building, not necessarily true. Integrative design strategies that tunnel through the cost barrier, as Emory Lovins talks about, can deliver results at lower capital cost as well as lower operating costs, really challenging and shifting how we assess what projects are worth doing and what are not. Normative planning says that instead of standing here and trying to improve 1% or 2% or 3% or 4% per year, we look at a vision of where we want to be, whether it's the 80% by 50 or more likely for us, an intermediate goal at 2030. Look at that in relation to where we are now and then reverse-engineer the mission as NASA, in fact, did with the Apollo mission in the 1960s, taking a challenge of unknown proportions and working it backwards, like you might solve a maze in a newspaper from the solution rather than from the beginning. We'll share and learn. We've joined the Urban Sustainability Directors Network. This is a network of 190 leading cities, 120 leading cities around the country, a platform for resource exchange, for sharing of best practices, for funding opportunities, another way to put Palo Alto on the map as a leader in this work, as we are also doing with the Green Cities California Network, a local version of USDN, with regional networks dealing with a variety of sustainability issues, and more broadly reaching out into this community and the talent and know-how that's here, both in our residents and in our businesses and employees, and make this an open process so that we can both have our work be visible in a fishbowl, our progress tracked and charted, and what we need known to the community as an open invitation for people to come and play with us, work with us, experiment with us, and accelerate the pace of development. There are about 1,000 moving parts here, and I want to suggest one way to think about them is to cluster them into three domains of resources, or the flows of energy, water, and materials through the community. Infrastructure, the things and system of things... systems of things that we build, and the behavior, the beliefs, commitments, and actions that we make as people. And so that's one way to try to make some sense out of these many parts. Some examples in resources. Efficiency goal could be to pursue best-in-class in everything that we do, buildings, technology buys. Renewables, clearly the target will be 100% renewables. The question will be at what pace? We're already looking at switching from fossil fuels to carb... switching our uses from fossil fuels to carbon-neutral electricity in the reverse of what utilities were telling customers several decades ago, and looking at how we can maximize the use of the energy and water that falls on this community as free gift of nature. In infrastructure, the big dog there is the building stock, and how will we transition that as quickly as possible to carbon-neutral or perhaps net-zero? Perhaps not just net-zero energy, but could we think about net-zero water, at least in some facilities? In transportation, electric vehicles are certainly in our future. Can we think of a car-free city that provides people the kind of access and mobility that they need to live the life they want without sacrifice, but with also without the congestion and pollution of cars as we know them today? In information, the key is to make the information ubiquitous and transparent and actionable. This includes both better systems within the city government, how we manage the work that we do, as well as embedding our sustainability principles and policies into everything from our procurement systems to our financial management systems, to our understanding of how our actions impact future generations, something that we have now as kind of a slogan around sustainability, but it hasn't been reduced to practice yet, and we'd like to try to do that, to make that specific for you. Examples around behavior, one of them kicks off this Wednesday night with our Palo Alto asking the question of what do we really want to be? What kind of city do we really want to be? That will be one of the ways we get at the goal question. As you know, we are working with the Clean Cities Challenge, which is proposing to engage 25% of our households on a neighbor-to-neighbor, block-by-block basis to reduce emissions 25%. We've also entered the Georgetown University Energy Prize, a $5 million, two-year competition that'll go to the community that demonstrates the greatest progress in these couple of years. We see a big opportunity for dashboards and scoreboards. Think about this as the O-Power report that we have on our utility bills, but take that everywhere, ubiquitous in real time, so we can see how we're doing and how we're doing compared to others and can learn from who's doing better. And I would expect we'll do lots of pilots, small experiments along the way. Linus Pauling said years ago, "The best way to have a good idea is to have lots of ideas." So let's have lots of ideas. Let's try them out. Let's not pick a single path and bet everything on it, but try different ways of getting to this future. Now, in my conversations over the last few months, some people have said, "Oh, this is impossible," or they've said, "Well, let's be realistic." And I'm entirely in favor of being realistic. I think that's what this is. Because the question is, you know, what if we could do this? Or what if we had to do this? Or what might be possible? One of the reasons I wanted to take this job is that this is a part of the world in which impossible isn't part of the normal vocabulary. We are surrounded by businesses who have invented not only new technologies, but new ways of doing business that have disrupted whole industries. You know, the chip at the top, in that Pan Am picture, there's a 5-megabyte disk array being loaded onto a jet. 5 megabytes, it's 32 gigabytes on someone's fingertip now. If someone had told you 10 years ago that nobody would be buying encyclopedias anymore, but we'd be using encyclopedias written by everybody for free, you would have laughed them out of the room, and there we are with Wikipedia, and the examples go on and on. So when I hear impossible, I think, what's needed? How do we do it? What does impossible tell me about the specific challenges that we need to understand and overcome? So the process going forward that we suggest to you is that we will first focus on renewing the Climate Action Plan. We'll broaden it into a sustainability roadmap that doesn't just speak to climate. We'll look at the impact of our spending. Rough analysis we did so far says that if we look at the city's own footprint and the climate impact of our purchases, it raises our footprint about 50%. We don't know what that is for the community as a whole. It's probably worth knowing, not to tell anybody what they should do or shouldn't do, but to make it known to all of us what the impacts of our choices are so that we can make better choices. We'll do skunkworks. We'll do, you know, quick experimental sessions with multiple stakeholders inside the city and out to grapple with questions about how do we take transportation impacts down massively and quickly over the next 10 or 20 years. We'll pilot, as I said. We might try contests to invite people, not just as we've done with the app challenge, but more broadly on policy challenges. What's the way, you know, invite people to come up with ways to do this and have our constituents and our citizens race with us to find the best solutions most quickly. And we'll learn and share broadly. The provisional plan that we bring to you, and we'll come back to you with more detail in coming months, is to, now that we have a sense of where we are, develop an RFP for a consultant for the Climate Action Plan this quarter, engage the consultant in the latter half of the year. Over the course of the first half of next year, develop the draft Climate Action Plan, bring that to you probably late second quarter. That's our assumption at the moment for your review. And periodically along the way, we'll have regular retreats with the Sustainability Board that I work with, the dozen or so department heads that advise me and hold me accountable. And if you'd like, perhaps some additional study sessions with council as we have milestones in development of our thinking. The key questions that we're going to keep in mind in this process and that I invite you to keep in mind is, first of all, how good do we really want it to be? Or another way to that is how good is good enough? Second, what would it take specifically in terms of policy, technology, investment, innovation, behavior, and personal change to actually get to those goals as specific as possible? And then in view of those requirements, the choice comes back to you as the council and the community as a whole. Will we choose to make those commitments, to make those changes, to meet those goals? I'd like to help that be an informed choice based on these realities as we move forward. You know, and the real question is a big one, is are we going to choose a future from the ones that are presented to us now that stand before us? Are we going to generate a future that hasn't been seen before? Are we going to improve on our past performance, or are we going to take this opportunity to make history? Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, would you like to say anything? And I do have public speakers, so we will go out to the public.
Yeah. No, Madam Mayor, if Gil, if you wouldn't mind joining me down here, and Shiva, maybe at the staff table also, and then we'll listen to the public comments along with you, Madam Mayor, and we'll be ready when you are. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein, I see your light on. Did you want to... I'm going to go out to the public first. Yeah. And I'm going to give two minutes for the public because we do have a heavy schedule this evening. So you can come up and speak on this item, and our first speaker will be Stephen Rosenblum to be followed by Sven Thiesen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to follow on with Mr. Friend's excellent introduction to suggest really an idea which I consider somewhat innovative to deal with climate change, and that is to encourage the use of battery storage on all scales in the city, particularly in individual houses, so that people could use photovoltaic arrays to generate as much power as they can rather than just generating as much as they need, and then use this power in storage as either emergency power when the grid goes down or to charge their electric vehicles at night. This would have the advantage of providing carbon-free electricity for Palo Alto as well as impacting our transportation carbon dioxide emissions significantly. And for the homeowners, you know, for me, just putting a solar ray in my roof is not really very cost-effective because it would take me 20 years to pay off the cost, but if I can get free fuel for my electric vehicle and get backup power if the grid goes down, I think that makes it basically a no-brainer for me. And of course, if the city were able to put in a smart grid and access this storage when they needed it, that would even be better. But that's a thing that's more in the future than immediately available. Thank you.
Thank you. Sven Thiesen to be followed by Bruce Hodge.
Hi there. Sven Thiesen, Palo Alto resident chemical engineer, one of those 22,000 engineers and scientists who won the Nobel Prize for Climate Change back in 2007. Great job, Palo Alto, for decarbonizing our electricity. The next step is to make it 100% renewable, but that was an amazing step. As such, we still have to continue to sequester and keep in the ground that 80% that Gil talked about. So what does that mean? It means moving as much as we can to electricity as quick as possible. That means tiered rates for natural gas as soon as possible and very big rebates for electrical things like heat pumps, where you put in 1 kilowatt-hour of energy into the system and not like normal electric immersion heater or normal natural gas, you get three to four kilowatt-hours of electricity out. These are things we need to do as rapidly as possible following on Gil. What he said was, "We have a daunting task in front of us. We need boldness and pragmatism." And I see him having just attended a Seder as Moses. And I hate to say this, but the institution is the Pharaoh. How many plagues do we have to go through to get to the promised land? And hopefully, this time Gil doesn't have to die to get there.
Thank you. Bruce Hodge to be followed by Walt Hayes. See what you get for coming here, Gil.
Good evening. Bruce Hodge from Carbon Free Palo Alto. Climate change is real and is impacting us today. Inaction today will greatly magnify future impacts. Both mitigation and adaptation are crucial and necessary. There are many strong co-benefits associated with addressing climate change. Our actions in the next 10 years are absolutely key. So what do we need to do? We need to replace our existing energy infrastructure with an electricity-based infrastructure with the energy coming from renewable sources such as solar and wind. Devices that consume fossil fuels need to be replaced with their electric counterparts. Those devices include our cars, water heaters, and furnaces. At the same time, we need to plan for increased drought conditions, a less reliable water supply, increased storm surges, and possible flooding from the bay and local streams. The challenges are significant, but we believe that Palo Alto can do this and make huge strides towards achieving this in the next 10 years. Palo Alto is a perfect storm for addressing climate change. We have a high educational level. We have high environmental awareness. We are economically advantaged. We have a long history of environmental action, and we also own our own municipal utility. If not Palo Alto, then who? We call on the entire community of Palo Alto, not just the city government, to engage directly with the climate issue and to become a beacon for innovation in... with the climate issue, and to become a beacon for innovation in both mitigation and adaptation activities. We can do this. Will the city government play a crucial role? I hope and believe the answer is yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt Hayes, to be followed by Win Gersich, and thank you for the phonics.
Good evening. I looked at my computer to see how long I've been working on these issues, and it's been since 1993. You know, the Zero Waste Task Force, the Green Ribbon Task Force, general advocacy. And actually, I can remember when our city manager at that time wouldn't let the staff even use the word sustainability, she thought it was too fuzzy a word. So you've come a long way, and of course, you have a long way to go, but you know, there's movement, and I just want to express my deepest personal gratitude for the support that you've given to this whole movement towards sustainability. And we're particularly thrilled to have someone like Gil aboard to lead the way, and I would just say, I would pledge my own personal commitment to support whatever you come up with to keep this thing going. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Win Gersich, to be followed by Sandra Slater.
Hi. When you're talking about sustainability, and you're talking about climate change, one of the latest things that have been on the internet, this is on YouTube, it says "Geoengineering and the Collapse of the Earth 2014." And this is really important to see this, because they talk about how they geoengineer the weather, and they use it as a weapon of war. And there's a document in there, and it says "Weather Modification: A Report from the Interdepartment Committee for Astrophysics Scientists" by Homer E. Newell. And it was in the archives of NASA in 1966, and they were showing how they geoengineer the weather in Vietnam, there was Operation Popeye, and they put $100 million into this thing in the 1960s, and how 12 universities, and we know Stanford's one of them, that has to do with this weather modification. But when you're talking about life-changing things, when they're spraying aluminum oxide on us, and it absorbs these nanoparticles into the brain, it causes Alzheimer's. And they're making the ground so alkaline, they said it starts at 5.6 acid, and then they've got 20 times higher because of these chemical sprays. And what we need to do to save this earth is, this has got to be stopped. And the EPA has got to be checking this stuff, because we're not going to have any sustainable future if we're being sprayed with this, and we're causing brain damage and everything else, and it's killing off plants, they have to geoengineer forests now because of this chemical spraying. And I put a document, and I put a video for you to look at, but this is the most important one to see, because after you see this, this is a collapse of the earth. They're talking about how we're modifying the weather, it's man-made. This drought here in California, they talk all about it, how it's processed, so, and now we're going to be turning more to toilet water, you know, we're going to be recycling toilet water because of this climate change. And here in Palo Alto, you guys want to use your scintillated sewage sludge and use it as mulch, and it's going to go into your wells, and you're going to be drinking that stuff, and copper causes Parkinson's?
Thank you. Sandra Slater, to be followed by Arthur Keller.
Hi. First of all, I'd like to thank the council and for the city of Palo Alto for taking the lead really, and becoming a wonderful model, in many ways, for sustainability for many cities across the state and around the country. And it's really your foresight that's really brought us to this point, and I really want to just echo a lot of what Walt and Bruce have already said, so I don't want to take a lot of time. It's time to take, to set the bar high. The IPCC report, third report that came out this last week, is really devastating. If not in Palo Alto, where are we going to do it? And we have to have the aspiration, we have to be there to show people that the culture can change, people are, do want to do the right thing, let's make it possible, let's create the environment for them to do the right thing. And I think everybody will be behind, not only the council and staff, but behind any challenges that we put forth. So thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Arthur Keller.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and city council members. I think that this is excellent work, and I'm looking forward to seeing this proceed. There's interesting juxtaposition in time, and that is, that a lot of this work is happening in parallel with the Arpa Palo Alto process. And I think it would be helpful with the plan to understand better how the two interact. Also, in terms of that, what kind of additional policies we might want in the comp plan? I know you're going to look at the comp plan in a couple of weeks, but that's also going to be in the Arpa Palo Alto process. We should think about what additional comp plan policies we might want to have for the next 10 or 15 years out. And in addition, the understanding, not only interaction with the Sustainability Board and the council, but also interaction with the boards and commissions, in particular the Planning Transition Commission and the Utility Advisory Commission, I think are key here, but I think that some of the other boards and commissions may also have things to weigh in in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment period. And Councilmember Klein, I did see your light, are you, was that, did you want to go first? Okay. Okay. Well, you are it, because, and, thank you.
Gil, thank you very much, excellent report. I'm going to save the report with all of its numerous charts, I think that really helps us to understand where we are. But I have to tell you, from where I'm coming from, I have a sense of even greater urgency than what you expressed. I worry that, as good as Palo Alto has been in all of these things, that it just may mean that we're one of the fastest snails on the planet. And that we have to go from being a snail to being a gazelle. And thus, one of my concerns is our calendar, and perhaps I'm not understanding you correctly, but
Thank you.
By developing this new Climate Action Plan, we're talking about basically a year from now. And I don't think we can afford to lose a year. So I'm hopeful that some of those wild thoughts that you may have would be coming forth much before then. I worry that, as a planet, we may only have, pick your number, 10 years, 20 years, to really start moving a lot faster, and the idea that we would be giving up a whole year before, so to get the perfect plan, really bothers me. I don't think I could support that, because, as you correctly pointed out, we may have various failures, fine. And if we don't have a perfect plan perfectly synced up with everything else, I think that's going to have to be something we should live with. So I'm hopeful you'll be coming forward with some of your suggestions in the next 60 to 120 days, not waiting till we have a plan in place a year from now. And unfortunately, my experience on plans like that in Palo Alto is that when we say a year, it really ends up being more like 18 months. So I'm hopeful that you'll be back for many more sessions during this calendar year. Three areas, two areas, excuse me, primarily, that concern me that I think we ought to address more in the, either in the plan or somewhere else, are, you make a few references to the built environment, but they're few and far between, and I think the usual number is that the built environment's consuming maybe 25 percent of our energy, somewhere around there.
I see estimates ranging from 25 to 50, depending on whose sources you're using, clearly large.
And this is one of the more difficult ones, but I think that we need to really think hard about what we can do with the built environment to really improve and achieve a lot of energy savings with houses and buildings and offices and so forth that are already in existence.
And if I could add there, that it's the impact, not just the built environment itself, but the impact that then has on transportation and how we need to move. So those, these two big dogs are linked together for us.
Okay, fair enough. The other one unfortunately is adaptation. Again, there are a few references to it, but I think that we have to accept the fact that there are going to be significant impacts, it's way too late to ward them all off, and that I think we have not given very much thought to it so far, but we know that we have a bay on our eastern flank, and water coming down from hills to our west, and we're not immune from all of these things, so I think we're going to have to start really thinking a lot harder on what we would do for, to adapt ourselves to some of these changes, particularly sea level rise. And I hope we're going to have a lot more to talk about in that regard.
I hope we will too, and I'm glad you raised these points. On adaptation, it's, you know, it's not just a matter of the bay at our flank, but it affects our water supplies, and since we rely 50 percent on hydro, it affects our power supplies as well. So we are exposed in a variety of ways to these changes, and we need to plan for those. To your point about being a fast snail, I understand the concern, I share the concern, I'm a believer in action planning. So while the plan itself has a document and a, you know, and a formal process that has certain things that need to be, and it is going to take a while to put together, we're not going to wait for the plan to start doing and experimenting and bringing programs forward that we know make sense already. So these will happen in parallel.
Good.
And if it's not, you know, if it's not happening fast enough, let us know, and we'll see what we can do. You know, this is, I agree with you about the urgency, and, you know, we are, we have limits of our bandwidth and staff capability, but this is something that's very much on my mind, of making measurable gains and measurable earnings quickly. Partly for the reasons that you mentioned, and partly because key to this work is going to be engaging people in this community, and nothing engages people better than seeing things happen.
Good. Thank you for the response.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for the presentation. So I'm going to speak to something that probably nobody else will, and that has to do with, I shouldn't say that. Walt Hayes is here, so he would speak to this perchance at some point in time. And that has to do with zero waste, and landfill, and the current CND, Construction Demolition Ordinance that we have. I put a call into our planning director recently, I'm not trying to highlight you on this, it's just something I saw recently, again, in our community. We talk about diversion from landfill, it's great. We need to be measuring our diversion from recycling, having to do with building materials. And the reason I say this is because, even though salvage is in our CND ordinance, it's not being promoted, it's not being required, it's referenced when I talk to people who are demolishing, scraping buildings, they oftentimes aren't even aware that salvage is even, you know, an option, or that they should be doing that. So what happens is, we are not reusing materials, and that means that we're causing the energy to be used to recycle perfectly good materials that could be reused, we're causing the manufacture of more materials, which takes more energy, we're causing the transportation impact of those new materials. So we need to, I think, seriously look at revamping our CND ordinance, to look at the larger picture of our impact on the environment in those number of ways. And there's a market, I mean, there are so many salvage companies around now, there's a very large market for salvage building materials. Besides the fact that it's kind of a heartbreak to see some of these, you know, I mean, I just mentioned two things. So you see Clearheart Redwood Building Timbers just being splintered, you see perfectly good cabinetry, perfectly good hardwood floors, I could go on and on and on, that are just being splintered, as opposed to being salvaged and reused. And it's a heartache to me. So I'd really like to see that addressed, and us be much more aggressive in that area. Transportation and traffic, of course, that's a huge impact that we have, and I think one of the things that the community is looking for us to do, and it's part of our one Palo Alto, or, excuse me, our Palo Alto proposal, and we have some of these considerations in front of us this evening, is not only how do we, how do we address that going forward so that we reduce the impact of new development, but so that we manage what we have, and that we don't further exacerbate the impact that we have now, by allowing more development that, you know, just increases and increases and increases. You know, if the cup's full, how much more can you take? And I'm not saying, you know, put a stop to development, I'm saying we need to move forward carefully, and so how we don't look at 30, 50 percent of a single occupancy vehicle reduction, we need to be looking at much greater than that, and also looking at how we, how we zone for parking requirements, transportation, traffic, all of that, and how we do cumulative impact analysis, all of the things that we know, but we need to be doing a much, much, much better job. We do have a full agenda, so I will stop with those two things, but I knew nobody else would speak to the CND issue probably. Thanks.
Thank you for this.
Councilmember Schmidt, thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot for the updated data, so that we can measure where we're going, how we're doing. I'd like to follow up on Councilmember Klein's issue of, what can we do now? There are decisions, we're in the midst of housing sites in particular, that is probably one of the most important sets of decisions we'll be making over the next five or 10 years, that will have tremendous impacts on things like transportation. So can we turn to you with a very simple question? What kind of greenhouse gas reductions could we get by moving 250 new housing units, dense housing units, from South El Camino, where there are few transit services, recreational activities, retail shops, pedestrian opportunities, to the downtown or California Avenue, where those types of options are manifold? Now, is that a question that we can get some guidance on in the short term?
I mean, I think obviously we have a, we have a process for talking about that component of it, and it certainly fits in the larger question of just development in general, as both Councilmember Holman was talking about, but you could flip that all the way around on the other side about more development, and some of the impacts that that could have that are not always negative. I mean, we're all going to be living somewhere in this region, and even for our city to do the best it possibly can, we have to ask ourselves whether that is, are staying completely static and doing the best we can, or is there an adaptation that we have as far as the built environment that's also required of us as people within a region? And, you know, that raises just larger questions I think we'll deal more directly with, both in the housing element, but ultimately with our Palo Alto and the comprehensive plan. But I think that Gil surfaced this issue when he's talking about transportation and the land use pattern that we have.
I would add to that, if I might, that I think the question is partly, where do we put housing? It's also a question of where do we put amenities and transportation services in the future? I think, you know, both of those are potentially plastic categories, we need to look at them systematically. I don't know the specifics of this project, I'll speak with the planning director and get up to speed on that.
Vice Baroness?
So that's a good place to pick it up and aim this at you, Gil, in the same way. We have, we're heading in a direction where we're saying, we would really like to depend more on transit that is not car-related. We have an issue in our community where we are resisting density, and I think that's what two people have referenced already. And I think that is going to be one of our most difficult decisions, is if we cannot decide where our density is going to go, I'm not sure that we're going to get where we want to be as far as, how do we deal with transportation? So with our last comprehensive plan, which came out of the 90s, it was a clear message that we would like a walkable and livable community. In order to do a walkable and livable community, we have some tenants that are in place, and certainly one of those is you have to be close enough to transit that you can take it relatively easily, and you have to have the kind of transit available that's relatively easy. So later on tonight, we're going to take up Caltrain, and we're going to hear probably a lot of pushback on that. And yet, that's one of the areas that we've talked about, that would allow us to move more easily with public transportation. So my long-term question to you would be, we have a number of issues that I think are in contention with each other. Some of them are so visible that we've just dealt with them over the last year. Some of them have been in place for a long period of time. I think Councilmember Klein referenced houses, you know, a number of us, at some point, live in a house here in Palo Alto that's not insulated, very complicated. And And probably most people don't want to make that enormous investment into insulating their house in order to protect the environment. But we have a number of these areas where we're heading. And while I don't anticipate that you'll address them tonight, I'd like to dangle them out there because all of these are very real and right in front of us right now. They're not just a long-term discussion out there somewhere. These are real. And the last thing I would do is just talk about Councilmember Holman's discussion of salvage, which I find is fascinating. I actually grew up with parents who believed in recycling and made a business of it. So it's very real. And probably more in Berkeley, you see salvage really ongoing, I think, than we do here. But I'd like to underscore that because I think very often we do just say, let's get rid of all that old stuff. It doesn't work that well anymore. And we tend not to look at what are the possibilities for how we could recycle, reuse, and keep it within our environment in such a way that we didn't allow it to go to waste. So big questions, don't have to address them tonight, but I just think that they're so evident and so in front of us right now that this gives you a great deal to chew on while you're here. And it's a pleasure to have you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the chance to chew on things that are good and chewy. Let me offer a couple of comments here, not as definitive answers, but let, you know, we're trying to shape a conversation here today. So first of all, on the salvage point, one of the reasons that you see so much more salvage in Berkeley is that a number of people started businesses around that and made it convenient and workable for people to engage and salvage from both ends, both as harvesters and sellers and buyers. And I don't know if that piece of the business ecosystem is here to that degree. To your other points, you know, I understand people's reluctance to make an enormous investment in insulation of their home, but what if the enormous investment's a good investment? What if it's an investment that yields better returns than putting their money into a CD or a bank or something else? Or what if we can facilitate those investments through instruments that we might develop through the utilities? I mean, when we think about the built environment, we've got three points of action here. We've got new construction and we have interventions in place and others in development for that. We've got buildings that are being renovated, whether residential or commercial, that's another possible leverage point for some kind of intervention. And the third is buildings that are already there that people are not making serious changes to and live in and may see a change as disruptive. And I think part of our job there is to provide the education as well as the services that make those changes attractive for people to choose, which sort of goes to your first point about the issues in contention and, you know, the clearly strong disagreement in this community around things like housing plans and density and so forth. We have seen a lot of success in other communities where bringing people together in a conversation that shifts from the political position to what people's concerns really are. And what is the kind of community that people really want, so what we're entering into with our Palo Alto process? And we've seen a number of cases in that mode where people who disagree find common ground, find things they agree upon from which we can start to design. It's okay, you know, we may disagree about an idea of density, but we may agree about an idea of livability in the community. How do we generate that? How do we produce that in policies and design and land use practices? So very general answer to what was the general question, but these are the kind of things I think we need to grapple with over the coming years. My sense is that there is a lot of common ground possible here if we engage these questions the right way.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, it's almost eight o'clock and we have five more colleagues. Councilmember Price?
Thank you very much for your presentation and the comments by the public. A lot of the points we're raising here are really critical. And I'm very excited about the kind of the innovative driver approach, normative planning, scenario planning. Predictably, I'm intensely interested in these networks of the share and learn concept when you're talking about the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, et cetera, et cetera. Because we are very self-conscious here about what we've done and we should be proud of what we've done. But I've consistently felt that there's a bit of an inconsistency in a sort of an internal dissonance that goes on here. Because at this presentation, we talk about being bold and being transformative. And then we have all these other transportation land use issues that are right in front of us related to the comprehensive plan. So this is the platform for me to talk about, smart growth, the housing element, height limits. I mean, these are the kinds of issues that the community is grappling with at a time when we don't have time to study this to death. So every comment you made about a sense of urgency and purpose is really critical. I do believe Palo Alto, community, the elected, all of us, need to be more bold, more focused, and work on this in pieces and be strategic in the way in which we try to build and work together to build a future for Palo Alto that has meaning, that's sustainable, and that is related. Because I feel sometimes we talk as if we have this robust, very intelligent conversation about sustainability and all this work. And then we have other conversations which are perhaps not as well-informed. And I couldn't agree more about the issue of the learning community where we, in a non-threatening way, have a difference of opinion, but really come to terms with the decisions we are making and what those implications are. And that's housing, that's all of the issues here. The other point is Palo Alto, I think, has done well and we can always do better, we should never be satisfied. But the other point is that we are not the island of precious Palo Alto. We are part of a region, we're part of a state, we're part of a country, right? Part of the world. So the point is that if we're too tightly focused on this and how do we share those practices, how do we really work with other partners to do meaningful work? Because I don't think any of us here want to be sitting here if we're not doing meaningful work. So I will stop. But this is a great presentation and I hope it actually relates to the other aspects of our work and our policymaking and our decisions. It really needs to. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to take it down the line and if you want to wrap up at the end, maybe with comments. Councilmember Scharf?
Thank you. That was pretty inspiring. I just hope that's not where we're heading. Makes me a little nervous up on the tightrope there. So I'm with Larry a little bit. I'm looking at your provisional plan here. So I gather that on 2/14 you sent out the RFPs?
Yeah, this quarter.
So we, well, we sent it out on 2/14?
We will send it out in the second quarter.
Oh, that's the second quarter of 2/14?
Yeah, so sometime in the next two and a half months.
So next two and a half, so we're putting that together right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Takes a long time, I guess. As we go through that process, I personally would like to see us be updated, you know, on a regular basis so that we, as we go through it, we think about it and have some sense of it. I think that would be real helpful. I'd hate to have us given, here's your climate action plan, it's done, you know, take it or leave it, and we start the process over again and it takes another, you know, eight to 12 months. So I think it's really important to bring us along as we go through this and to bring the community along, frankly. And, you know, of outreach and there's a lot of things here. In looking through your slides, several things struck at me. I wasn't clear, are you advocating that we take San Francisco-type goals and say we should pursue 100% renewables? Are you advocating for that? Do you think that's a bold goal we should adopt? Or were these just sort of examples?
Since we haven't gone through detailed planning process with utilities about their considerations, knowing that, I don't have an official recommendation for you, but I think that's a worthy goal to look at. My own bias is that if I look around me at the, you know, 3.8 billion years of living systems on this planet, I see a couple of things. One is that they run on renewable energy. Second is they have no waste. Third is they have no persistent toxic accumulations. So I think that's a pretty good guideline for starters. Now, how do we turn that into policy and a timeline for us? That's the conversation we need to get into.
So when we talk about Palo Alto specific, I am concerned when we say things like 100% renewable in Palo Alto, because it leads the community to believe this is something that's possible. And it's just simply not possible in Palo Alto unless you really want to go down a path where we no longer take hydro. I mean, hydro's not a renewable. And so for us to say 100% renewable implies that we're going to dump our hydro, which would be a huge mistake, frankly. And so I think really where we need to go is probably like 55% renewable and you add that to our hydro. And we're actually really close to that. I mean, I think, you know, when I look and see what we're buying in terms of solar and where we're going, it seems that we're almost there. So this doesn't seem like something that's going to be a huge challenge. I mean, it seems like we're, I mean, almost there, frankly. So...
That's on the electricity generation side.
Yeah, no, that's on the electricity side. So when we talk about, we're not going to get 100% renewable on gas, right? There is no renewable equivalent. So we're not going there.
Unless there's a fuel switching, that's...
Right, unless there's a, but I mean, there's no reasonable fuel switching that anyone's ever mentioned. We've had, you know, the UAC's looked at it and that. So I guess I'm thinking we need to be a little bit more clear-thinking in terms of, and precise in our thoughts and precise in what we say, so that we don't set up expectations that are not doable in Palo Alto. And frankly, I mean, I think it's unfortunate that hydro's not considered a renewable resource, because I think it is. But I think it's important to set those expectations when we do this and to set clear benchmarks and to be, you know, forthright with the community and not tell people we're going to do 100% renewable if we're not. And at least explain it to people so that they understand what we're doing.
Well, again, I'm not proposing that as a goal at this point. I'm saying that's something that's worth looking at and that other communities are looking at and some other communities have chosen. If we're darn close, then I would ask you, are we, is that good enough? Or is there some place we can stretch and do even better than we've already accomplished? Certainly on the question of fuel switching, I don't think the answers are conclusive on that. I mean, you say it can't be done or the economics aren't there. Preliminary analyses that the utilities have done says no, but there's other factors that haven't yet been rolled into the mix. There are people in the community who've done other analyses and think there may be more possibility there. So I don't want to prematurely judge questions like that. I want us to look at them and look at them hard and see where we can push the boundaries.
So, I mean, I don't understand the rest of that in terms of the gas and stuff, so I'm not going to argue with you on that. But in terms of electricity, I think I understand that fairly well. And, you know, one of the other things I think that we talked a little bit about here is how we got there is in terms of landfill gas. We've had some serious concerns about landfill gas on council about whether or not it's really a good renewable and whether there are issues there. So I think that's something we should think about in the mix. And you asked, at least when it comes to electricity, could we do better? Well, frankly, if we're at, you know, 55% renewable and we're, the rest hydro and we're not buying any recs except in extreme drought years, I'm not sure we could do better than that, frankly. I think it's okay to sometimes say, mission accomplished, look at us. We might be able to do better, frankly, is that our landfill gas contracts expire to not have landfill gas, to move to something else. I mean, that's a possibility because then we could say we're carbon-free. Whereas as long as we have landfill gas, we can't say we're carbon-free because obviously we produce, by burning the methane, we produce carbon. So I think the answer is yes, we could do better in lots of ways. And frankly, I'd like to see us have the climate protection plan earlier. But that's why I'm hoping you can bring this to us as you go through it. Because I do think, and I think it was an inspiring talk, and it was a very, it was a good job. But I do think as we get into the nitty-gritty, there's a lot of really difficult policy issues that we need to talk about. And we can't just say, we're going to do this, we have to have a plan to do it.
Yep. Agreed. Thank you.
Councilmember Berman?
Well, Gil, welcome to Palo Alto. Thank you very much for the presentation. And I was impressed by the environmental leaders from the community that came out to express their support and, you know, folks have been waiting for you for a long time, being compared to Moses. Good luck. But I think you'll find...
You remember what Moses said when God said, "I've chosen you"? He said, "Not me, man."
I think you'll find that, you know, our efforts to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions in Palo Alto is similar to the pie-eating contest where the prize for winning is more pie. The more we reduce our GSG emissions, the more we're going to reduce them even more. And we need to, as some of my colleagues have pointed out. We've been ignoring, you know, this global problem for decades too long. And as you and I have chatted about earlier, you know, people look to Palo Alto as a leader. If we're able to achieve things, other communities will look to pick it up. And so I think there's a big burden and a remarkable opportunity for us to do some great things. I had a quick question about something in your report, which was on, well, first, page four and five, and I'll be quick because I know overtime already. But the first thing was, I was so impressed to see that we've, you know, in reducing greenhouse gas emissions in city operations by 53% since 2005, we're also saving a half million dollars a year. And that was really, you know, I mean, that should get more attention. As you alluded to in your presentation, going green pays. And that's, you know, that was very striking to me as we're always looking to be more fiscally responsible. But then on the graph on the next page, on page five, it's back at page 10, figure one, I noticed that, for instance, solid waste facilities and wastewater facilities, our 2012 GSG emissions were much lower than 2013. Was there a reason for that? Kind of what happened in 2013 that caused those to rise?
It is related to a regulatory way of how you calculate those numbers. It's a function of fugitive emissions.
Okay.
And for the solid waste facility, it's a landfill gas, landfill project, which we were able to capture more methane, but the regulation requires us to compute the fugitive emissions to be 33% of whatever we captured. So more we capture, the assumed fugitive emissions is higher. So it's a technical construct.
Okay.
That's what it is. It's the way up we count.
Do we, and we changed...
So I think the idea is, obviously, the trend itself is not, you know, going necessarily in the wrong direction. And we can probably expect as we refine the methodologies about all the different measures, we may see things going up and down. But as they get consistent over time, then we can...
As we kind of lock in our methodologies and start analyzing things on a consistent basis. And then, you know, one of your questions at the end was, will we focus on meeting California's goal of reducing GSG emissions to 80% below 1990 levels by 2050 or by 2030? And I'd say absolutely closer to 2030 than 2050, you know, given the successes we've already had. And, you know, if we set our goal at 2050, what I was about to say was, is going to come across as very conceited. If we're going to be a leader for other communities, we need to achieve those goals earlier than 2050 to help lead the way. And so, you know, I'd say aim for as quickly as possible without, you know, without making goals that we won't be able to hit for all, for everything you do. So good luck.
And what we'll do with that, if you have this chart in your deck that shows our current trajectory against the requirements, and what we can do and will do in coming months is look at this and say, okay, on this curve, we would have to be at 50% reduction by 2030. What would that take specifically to do that in terms of transportation, housing, buildings, energy mix and so forth? If we were to accelerate and try to get to 60 or 70, 80% by then, what would that take? If there's an intermediate goal of, you know, 20%, you know, 30% by 2020, what would that take? And that's where we'll come back to you, as well as in the discussions with the process that I described, to turn it from a concept to an engineering plan and a policy plan that, with budgets attached to it. And then we can look at that and say, yes, that's worth doing or that's not worth doing. Or we'd like parts of this plan and parts of that plan. So as quickly as possible, I want to get us from the conceptual discussion that we're necessarily having tonight down to real nuts and bolts of where do we want to go, multiple scenarios that we can then choose from.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Burt?
Well, thanks for the presentation. I guess first I'd like to start with that you referred to a lot of the slides and because of the time constraints you're under tonight, you had to move pretty quickly through a lot of these. And these aren't very legible to us. And as Councilmember Klein stated, there's a lot of valuable information on these slides. So are we going to have, I'd say, a streamlined version of this deck provided?
And we'll do that and the whole presentation will be put on the city's website also.
Okay. And some of them don't seem so significant and others... And some of them don't seem so significant and others do. So I, I just encourage you to maybe just put one that, that the public and the council are going to be able to really take the value from them. Second, there was, there's been discussion about, all right, you know, how might we get to where we want to get to? Part of that boils down to, how far do we need to go? We have a baseline last year where we presented our reductions first against the 2005 baseline. And then finally, we, last year had it against the 1990, which is the more globally accepted baseline. That got dropped from this presentation, and I couldn't find it in the slides very much, although maybe it's.
It's on there, yeah.
Okay, well, this goes to some of the speed presentation.
If you'll go to, let's see, nine, 10.
So there's one, you just had one that's even.
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much. Back it up a little bit. Back up to 10.
Despite your number, did you?
Yeah, go back to slide 10. So this is against the 2005 baseline. Slide 11 is against the 1990 baseline.
Okay.
We're presenting it both ways because there's, as we talked about earlier, there's some apples and oranges in this conversation. The state looks at, the, the state imputes a emissions number for 1990 for communities that don't have the actual data. That's very different than the actual data that we have for this community. So I think we, you know, there's terms we can reference among, in conversations among ourselves that you need to be careful about how you're talking with other communities about. So we're, we get an apples-to-apples comparison.
So, and, and this 1990 base was a calculated one, not just an imputed one? Is that right?
This was a measured and imputed. The utility component of it is measured from, one of the advantages we have having our own utility is that we have real data that other communities don't have. The transportation numbers as they are for everybody are partly imputed because no one knows how to exactly measure transportation impacts. And there are a number of other measures that are relatively small compared to those. So that's a pretty, that's a, you know, that's a good enough number for 1990 to work with.
And when you mention this against other cities like the San Francisco comparison, where are they comparing to 1990 or 2005?
All of the, most of the cities are estimating against 1990. The, the recommendation from, I think it's CARB, is that for cities that don't have the data, they assume that 1990 was 15% below 2005. In our case, 1990 was a lot higher than 2005. So that's where it's, it's different, and we need to unpack that. And we'll need to dig into what other cities have actually done for that.
So then I want to discuss a little bit on the, how we get there. And, and, and some of this is fuel switching and some of it is efficiency. But when we look at the big transportation category, if our transportation system moves toward being powered by carbon neutral electricity, then that gives us a big opportunity. And by 2040, 2050, I can certainly envision that a high percentage of our automobile fleet will be some form of clean vehicles, whether they're electric, plug-in hybrids, hydrogen-powered, or who knows what it's going to be. So I'm, I'm a lot more optimistic about that major component of our transportation system being able to move in that direction. In addition to, we had kind of some discussions around other transportation forms here. And, and I, I think we will, we'll have plenty of opportunities to talk about land use. But, but in this city, with a carbon neutral electricity supply and an expansion of our biking and pedestrian use and our local shuttles, I'm going to be very interested in the reductions that we get from the transportation component, somewhat independent of the various land use decisions that we have and the, the increased density and how much increased density that we'll have. I'm not sure that there's as, going to be as much correlation in this community as some proponents more broadly would, would claim. And then we have on the built environment, which I would divide between what's already built and what's yet to be built. And we right now are still allowing new construction to be built, piping gas to the facilities. And, and we've had some projects coming forward, both residential and commercial, that have gone to, because of our carbon neutral electricity supply, they've, they've embraced it and said, yeah, we're, we're going to, no natural gas in the home. Then on top of that, they have EV charging stations. And so that is a drastic transformation. But we don't have that yet in our building codes. Do we have, what is on the horizon to change our building codes for new construction that will move us into this fuel-switching environment?
We have a new green building ordinance coming before you. Jim, do you know the date on that?
I don't, but I mean, we've been having a series of conversations.
There's been a green building task force working on this for quite a number of months. Peter Pernodjat is ill tonight, not able to be here tonight, so I can't give you the specifics on that. But we've got a, the state is promulgating a new generation of ordinances. We are once again setting our targets higher than the state's targets. I think it's about 15% higher in terms of energy performance. I don't know if this is in there. I doubt that it is. This would be a conversation, obviously, to involve utilities. But I, what I think I hear you suggesting is that we say no new natural gas customers as an option to consider.
And, and when that's done, that infrastructure doesn't have to be put in place there. So it's, that's kind of a binary thing. You either have to put in your natural gas system to a building or you don't put it in. And then you have, once you're there, various other cost considerations of the various appliances and how you would use energy in that facility.
And we have precedence for that already in that we're requiring electric charging infrastructure to be putting in in new construction. So it's along the same lines.
And then our existing built environment, we've had a number of us who have been asking for several years for us to implement some measures that would move us more aggressively. And I, frankly, I'm almost disinterested in the state goals, in the sense that I don't want us to be comparing ourselves to X percent better. I, I think it should be, and I don't want to say that cost doesn't matter, it, it certainly does. But I want us to look aggressively at what we can do and do so in, in an efficient way. But things like, we, we don't have building efficiency, commercial building grading systems that, that would drive behavior. I mean, if, if you got a scorecard, just like restaurants in San Francisco, if you got an A or a B, you put it in your window. If you got a, a D or an F, you sure don't broadcast it. And there is a lot of social pressure within our corporate environment and the workforce to, that would drive change by corporations if information was just shared.
Yep.
We also, when we, when we buy a home, we have termite checks and we're disclosed on that. We have disclosure on our insulation, whether we, we meet certain state guidelines. But we don't have an audit requirement or a disclosure of how much energy that home was consuming, so that when I, as a buyer, I can make an informed decision on, am I buying an energy hog? Should I require a retrofit before I'll buy it, just like I'll require termite repair before I buy it? And we haven't done that yet. And some of us have been asking for this for several years. I think this is relatively low-hanging fruit that have, could have a big impact.
Let me just add there, if I may, that we've had discussions about all of those measures and a number of others, trying to come back with a portfolio of strategies that address those different points in the building scheme, built, not yet built, being renovated, not being renovated, with both potential mandatory and voluntary approaches to try to move in the direction that you're talking about.
So when do we expect to see the first of those?
That one I'd have to defer to Peter, too, and he's not here tonight. I'll come back to you with that.
I, I think this fits into this larger conversation, I mean, this, this line of questioning that popped up about, so it's a year from now for, for the sort of revamped climate protection plan, but what are we going to be doing, implementing along the way? And how will we be meeting with the council in different sessions along the way? I think which is going to be absolutely critical. So I think one of the things we're doing is getting an initial survey or mining both of the attitude of the council about the challenge and starting to, we're not going to a sort of formal rank move, we're obviously getting us, your sense directly anew now of where some of the areas you would really like to see us concentrating on. And so I think, you know, in relatively short order, we can come back for a way to start to, well, let's array the low-hanging fruit and get some agreement about what those things are. One of the things we know even in the course of a year before the climate protection new plan came forward, anything we're going to get and begin to do, start in motion, will still be far short of ultimately what we're going to need to achieve. So it's, it's, in, in that sense, a sort of low risk also.
So I, I really don't think there's a need to get much of, more of a pulse of the council. We've had this discussion for a number of years, and some of these initiatives, a number of us have been asking for, for a number of years. So that low-hanging fruit is getting, some of it's getting pretty ripe. And so I, I just want to use this opportunity to say, I, I don't want to see another year go by in order to see some of these proposals come forward. There was a reference in one of your slides to a car-free city, and I'm worried that, that that could have a backlash if it's misinterpreted. Did you mean a vision of a city with no cars or a vision of a city where people don't need cars?
The, the latter. Where people don't need cars. So as you'll get to know me, you know that I'm not very much in favor of draconian measures or compulsion or hair shirt environmentalism or any of that. I'm in favor of doing things in a way that makes them better, more attractive, more convenient, more economical, more fun, more satisfying, more, I want to live there and work there. And in that framework, yeah, I love thinking about a city where a car wasn't necessary. We talk about walkability. Parts of this city are walkable, parts aren't. We've inherited a landform from decades ago.
With the limited time we have, I just want to make a point, which is that we have a very engaged local press and an engaged populace. And there is a potential to misinterpret certain things if they aren't stated with adequate clarity.
My colleagues are wanting us to move this along because we've got a big agenda item. So Pat, can you summarize?
Yeah, that's why I was trying to just get to the points. So my, my final focus is one that Councilmember Berman brought up, which is the cost savings. And I think that's really important if we're going to have broad community support, not just the people who came here tonight. And so I'm hoping that we'll, we'll be able to really identify that, the savings to consumers and the savings to the city, so that people will see that this is something that's not an outlay. I know that we had Peter Graff from SAP here a year ago, and I think he stated at the time that they, as a corporation, had saved in six years over a quarter billion dollars. And so the opportunities in, in terms of cost savings are such that we, we can really build broad community support. Thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna, yeah, thank you. I'm gonna just wrap this up by, if you could move to slide number 22, because you passed it over, and this is one of my favorite pieces of artwork that I found on Facebook. It's called Politicians Standing Around Talking About Global Warming. It's in Germany. And I have to say that this kind of says it all for me. I know one of the questions you asked me when you first got on board in Palo Alto is what do you want to see change with how we do things? And I think I told you a lot about how we really do have to turn the economy upside down in order to get sustainable products, et cetera. And so for me, I, I haven't, this is actually the first time I've heard about some of the building code items on council, but I am interested in seeing how we can do some of the upstream work to actually have products that come into this town that are not so heavily manufactured and definitely not recyclable. And so that's important to me because we could do a lot with some of the other elements of Palo Alto that we've been working so hard on, which is zero waste and getting to recyclables. I also don't mind if you cheat and go and look at other communities that are doing things and figure out how to do them, how we can do them. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that. I think that there's a whole lot of leaders out there in sustainability efforts and nothing wrong with picking up what other people have already tried to figure out with the behavior, because some of this is behavior change. And yet at the same time, I don't think we get to go there without modifying the way we operate as a city and as a first world country anymore. And so we do have to come back into that sustainability model. And then finally, you know, I know we can't do this in utilities, it would be fantastic. But I know that in power alone, in electric power, we, you know, we have savings of 25% even though we have our carbon neutral. It would be a great pipe dream to me if we could just charge out and take that 25% and put it right back into this community to rebuild some of the sustainability. And I know we can't do that because we have a rate structure that holds us right there to only being able to deliver the rate as it is. But so often it's that diversion amount that, it's what you would be paying next door in one of our neighboring communities that is not on Palo Alto Utilities and what we pay in that delta, we could take that money and really use it to move this community forward at many, many levels. But I wouldn't mind trying to measure some of that as well, because one of the things that I've been so impressed by with this community is we've been able to get there with power, with carbon neutral power and carbon free in a couple of years. And we haven't had to walk away from the delivery of service. The, the, how we deliver our services is authentic if we're, if we are testing all of our equipment to make sure it still works and stays safe. And I think that that's something that's given me great pride in, in learning what I have learned about Palo Alto throughout the years. So all of that is really something that I, I think I champion. And as you know, and as I've told you, you've got a big playground here, because we deliver services all the way up from Skyline Boulevard down to the Baylands, from turning on the electric and the water in your house to treating it and, and trying to get recycled water. So there's a lot of, of, of opportunity there. And so welcome to it, and I'll look forward to the challenge.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for your comments.
Okay, and we're going to move into the rest of our agenda. And I have a script here that I'd like to start off by reading now, just to give a shape to how the meeting's going to go. We've got special orders of the day and city manager comment. That shouldn't take too long. We are a half hour behind schedule right now. So at 5:00 PM, the city manager has informed me that there were no, when we get to consent items, we have not received any items to remove from the consent calendar as of 5:00 PM. But we will be deferring the item number seven, the coverly artist, and bringing that back on April 29th in order to allow for another part of the material to be included in the packet. When we take up our action items tonight, we primarily just have one action item under normal action, and that will be the California Avenue Plan. And we've set aside one hour for this because this is a review and direction from the Plan and Transportation Recommended Draft California Avenue Concept Area. The only specific action requested tonight is the approval of a grant submission to VTA. And this is intended to support, I think, about $300,000 in, in design expenses for the actual planning of the Frye's property area, which is, which is where we have a clear focus in the California Avenue Focus Area. The staff presentation will take about 20 minutes. The city manager has suggested that council questions may be presented tonight, but that staff will be allowed to follow up on those after the meeting, leaving more time for comments from council and the public. As the next steps envisioned outreach to the community for more feedback on the California Avenue Plan and as part of the city's comprehensive plan redraft, council action on the plan is, and policies is not necessary tonight. Council should look at tonight's session as our preview on the plan before we take it up to solicit deeper input from the public. I hope that way we can manage our time to meet our planned agenda. We are going to be taking up the comprehensive plan on the 12th of May, Jim? I can't remember when that's coming back. Is it the 12th of May or the 5th?
It's, it's the 5th.
The 5th. Thank you, the 5th. And that's when we'll get to have more time spent on the comprehensive plan. Again, the California Avenue Plan is not going to be approved until the end of 2015 after we go through the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report. Item number 15, which is the public hearing on the ordinance related to sidewalk widths and setbacks, has been re-advertised for the hearing from tonight to April 29th. Council may take comments on this. If we have anybody that shows up for public speaking, I will take comments on that. And then hopefully by then we will be back on schedule and at 10 o'clock, we will be taking up three action items under legislation, because these are all important legislative items that we have to take response, we have to take action on tonight because there's deadlines to them. The first one is the resolution to. The first one is the resolution to support Measure A, the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space Bond. The second one on item 17 is the approval of the Caltrain Environmental Impact Report and Comment Letter, and item 18, the possible direction to staff on additional items on MTC's proposed changes to Dunbarton Rail funding. So if we can stay judicious tonight and, and I look to the city manager and staff to help us with that, we can get through the agenda. So moving now on to special orders of the day, we have a resolution, and I see Eduardo is in the audience, from Planning and Transportation Commissioner Eduardo Martinez. We would like to have the resolution read, and Councilmember Schmidt is going to be doing that for his service as Planning and Transportation Commissioner.
I have the honor of reading a resolution of the council of the City of Palo Alto, expressing appreciation to Eduardo Martinez. Whereas Eduardo Martinez has served the City of Palo Alto as a member of the Planning and Transportation Commission for over four years, from 2009 to 2014, whereupon he served as chair for two of those years, from 2011 to 2013. And whereas Eduardo Martinez has actively provided insightful input and thorough analysis for significant land use policy recommendations, leading much of the Planning and Transportation Commission efforts to update the comprehensive plan, the Maybell Housing Project, the Housing Element Update. And whereas Eduardo Martinez served as a liaison to the Architectural Review Board and coordinated various matters of joint or overlapping responsibilities between the PTC and the ARB. And whereas Eduardo was passionate about completing the update of Palo Alto's comprehensive plan, raising awareness and understanding of public benefit, social justice and land use policies, and supporting principles of good urban design and community planning. He was conscientious, diligent, thoughtful, patient, supportive, and lighthearted. Eduardo's sense of humor lightened up contentious and controversial issues of great importance to the city, and he welcomed contributions from the public, colleagues on the commission, and staff. And whereas Eduardo was a member of the Architectural Review Committee for the San Jose City Planning Department for four years, from 2005 to 2009, Eduardo was an architect specializing in public architecture, including public housing and community nonprofits. And whereas Eduardo Martinez has a Bachelor of Architecture, Architecture and Urban Design from the University of California, Berkeley, a Master of Architecture, Urban Design from Harvard University, and was an Assistant Professor of Architecture at UC Berkeley College of Architecture and Environmental Design. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Palo Alto hereby gratefully records and extends its sincere appreciation and the appreciation of the community to Eduardo Martinez for his faithful and excellent service rendered to the city. Thank you, Eduardo. And if I could move the...
Before you move this, we do have two public speakers, so then we'll come back and move the resolution. Our first public speaker is Fred Balin, to be followed with, by Arthur Keller. And after this, Eduardo, I'll be coming down to give you your resolution.
It's far from trivial to be a volunteer at the center of every land use and transportation matter in town. Harder still to assimilate the background, do the necessary homework, stay centered amidst the choppy seas of stakeholders, and meaningfully contribute to conceptual processes in motion and specific projects before you. And rare to sufficiently satisfy those at whose pleasure you serve to achieve this public recognition. Why Eduardo Martinez? Intelligence and architectural background? Yes. Soft-spoken, low-key manner, wit and humor to lighten the meeting, and Shepherd Commissioners? Uh-huh. Ethics? The state requires disclosure of gifts valued at over $50. Yet on his first Form 700, he listed a guest pass to the JCC Fitness Center, valued $12. He joined the commission strongly discouraged private discussions with regard to PCs and quasi-judicial matters, but after the majority shifted two years later, he decided to dive in and test the waters. His report from the field the following year was not positive. Inquiry? Our paths crossed at a social gathering. He asked me what I had learned from great cities of the world that could inform Palo Alto, and then paused to let me hang. He seemed to enjoy these kinds of interactions, which enabled him to turn conventional wisdom on its head in order to challenge staff and fellow commissioners. Drive? He led a personal crusade to push and extend the comp plan update with as much resonant input as he could get. Two years before our Palo Alto, he wrote directly to community leaders to attend PTC's future Palo Alto. And while nurturing that revision, he did not forget what was current law. At the 395 Page Merode PTC Scoping Session last summer, he listed 10 major comp plan policies to contend with. He was a force, not afraid to say what he thought, albeit in a very polite way. At one PTC meeting, he spoke directly to the largest developer in Palo Alto about arrogance in the face of neighborhood concerns. As PTC rep at a packed council meeting, he prefaced his remarks as one who would not be most popular that evening, and then clearly and calmly made the commission's case for the project. He was highly skilled with language and presentation, supported by reason and informed content. An active listener certainly, but more striking, someone whom you were compelled to listen to and to consider. He served with great humility and integrity, sensitivity to people, place, and circumstance, yet never became visibly upset. Was he unconsciously saying, "People, get over your sense of specialness and think beyond yourself"? His is a record, as a resident who came to the commission solely to benefit the community, found the process worthwhile, even fun, and made a significant contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, and Arthur Keller.
On behalf of the Planning and Transportation Commission, I'd like to offer our thanks to Eduardo for serving for these last few years, and we're very sorry to see him go. In the interest of time, that's all I'll say.
Well, thank you very much. I've got a light on here, Councilmember Holman.
Yes, I had the great pleasure of serving with Eduardo on the Planning and Transportation Commission, and I enjoyed that time together very much. I found Eduardo to be intelligent, gracious, forthright, thoughtful, and whether we agreed or not on issues, and often we did, we were able to laugh at and with each other and move on. And I enjoyed that a great deal. And so just want to thank you for that experience and thank you for your service, Eduardo. Much appreciated.
Eduardo, this is a time you can speak if you'd like to about your work. Otherwise, I'd like to give you this resolution, and if I can get a picture with you, I'd appreciate that.
You may not want to give it to me after my comments. Thank you very much, Mayor Shepherd and council members, for this honor.
It is on, but just keep a little closer.
Oh. This young lady right here is my daughter, Ranaise. Ranaise is a deputy city attorney with the City of Salinas. She serves her externship here with the City of Palo Alto, Office of the City Attorney. Molly and Cara and Melissa have been the greatest role models. I'll always remember that. When I see you in the hallways or I see a member of the public, you always thank me for my service and mention the hard work that we as commissioners do. But frankly, I love this job. I loved the trust that you all gave us and the attention you gave to our comments and deliberations on matters of important land use decisions, of the trust you gave us in our work on the comp plan, and, and really the respect that the city has offered to all of the planning and transportation commissioners. I wanted to thank you for that. I have two bits of advice or comments that I want to share with you. The first recommendation I have is that we need to reinvent the ARB. As architects, we've let the pendulum swing too far where we're afraid to criticize the work of other architects, and we let it go, or we make marginal comments. I think it's time for us to reexamine this position we've taken and time that we really become part of the process again. I would recommend that every public hearing begin with the ARB, with a site plan and a program from the applicant, and a discussion with the ARB about neighborhood character and setbacks and open space and scale of new development. An open dialogue before we get these pages and pages of renderings and grading plans and decisions that nobody wants to go back on. We had a project recently, really important to the city, in which I believe 12 inappropriate, not very attractive houses really were the issue, and they were almost like set in stone. And I believe if we would have had the opportunity to just brush them aside and look at that space differently, perhaps the outcome would have been different. My second thought, and it's related in a way, is that I believe we still have the attitude that we know what we're doing, and if only the public understood this, they would go along with us. And I believe we do know what we're doing, but I think our inability to take a position where we suspend what we believe and look at a planning development in a different way without the preconceptions that we have, I think we would come a lot closer to reaching a consensus or coming up with better ideas for how we can come together as a community than we have shown in the past. But it, it's hard work to suspend what we believe in and to try to understand what others believe. And I think in an infamous recent project, that may have helped us to a better outcome. So I'd like to thank you all for your trust in me, for befriending me, and for really being a part of Palo Alto. I'm moving to Portland. Some parts of it are pretty good, but there's nothing like Palo Alto. Thank you.
Let's vote. And motion carries unanimously, so thank you very much, Eduardo. I'm going to move right into the next item. Item number five is to, let's see, what is this, selection of candidates to be interviewed for terms on transportation, Planning and Transportation Commission. Can I, I'd like to ask for a motion to interview?
So move. To move all candidates.
Okay, all candidates have been, are going to be interviewed with this motion. Let's go ahead and vote. And that carries unanimously. And then the clerk has told me that she does have the appointment candidates for the commissions.
Starting with the Human Relations Commission, I have Councilmember Schmidt voting for Daryl Savage and Mahdi Alah. I'm gonna...
Mehdi.
Mehdi Alhassan. Mehdi, can I just say Mehdi? Okay. I have Councilmember Klein voting for Daryl Savage and Mehdi. Councilmember Price voting for Daryl Savage and Mehdi. Councilmember Berman voting for Daryl Savage and Mehdi. Vice Mayor Niss voting for Daryl Savage and Mehdi. Mayor Shepherd voting for Daryl Savage and Mehdi. Councilmember Burt voting for Daryl Savage and Mehdi. Councilmember Sharp voting for Daryl Savage and Mehdi. And Councilmember Holman voting for Daryl Savage and Mehdi. They have clearly both received nine votes each, so they are now on the Human Relations Commission. Thank you. The next commission I'm going to do is the Library Advisory Commission, and I have Councilmember Schmidt voting for June Loy, Don McDougall, and Alan Bennett. Councilmember Klein voting for Don McDougall, Doug Hagan, and Alan Bennett. Councilmember Price voting for June Loy, Doug Hagan, and Alan Bennett. Councilmember Berman voting for June Loy, Don McDougall, and Doug Hagan. Vice Mayor Niss voting for Doug McDougall, Doug Hagan, and Alan Bennett. Mayor Shepherd voting for June Loy and Doug Hagan. Councilmember Burt voting for Jack Sweeney, Doug McDougall, and Doug Hagan. Councilmember Sharp voting for June Loy, Don McDougall, and Doug Hagan. Councilmember Holman voting for Don McDougall and Doug Hagan. So we have three openings. Doug Hagan with eight votes, Don McDougall with seven votes, and June Loy with five votes have been appointed to the Library Advisory Commission. Thank you. Now moving to the Public Art Commission, we have Councilmember Schmidt voting for Amanda Ross, Jim Migdon, Dara Silverstein, and Nea Taylor. Councilmember Klein voting for Amanda Ross, Janine Murphy, Dara Silverstein, and Nea Taylor. Councilmember Price voting for Amanda Ross, Christine Kelly, Dara Silverstein, and Nea Taylor. Councilmember Berman voting for Amanda Ross, Jim Migdon, Dara Silverstein, and Nea Taylor. Vice Mayor Niss voting for Amanda Ross, Janine Murphy, Dara Silverstein, and Nea Taylor. Mayor Shepherd voting for Amanda Ross, Janine Murphy, Dara Silverstein, and Nea Taylor. Councilmember Burt voting for, excuse me, Amanda Ross, Christine Kelly, Dara Silverstein, and Nea Taylor. Councilmember Sharp voting for Amanda Ross, Christine Kelly, Dara Silverstein, and Nea Taylor. Councilmember Holman voting for Amanda Ross... Holman voting for Amanda Ross, Christine Kelly, Dara Silverstein, and Nea Taylor. We have four openings, and we only have three candidates that have gotten the prerequisite number of votes. Amanda Ross with nine votes, Dara Silverstein with nine votes, and Nea Taylor with eight. So at this point, council could have a second ballot if they should choose.
Who's the next in line?
Could the votes work here, please?
The other votes were Christine Kelly had four votes, Jim Migdal had two, and Janine, excuse me, Janine Murphy had three.
Jim and Christine were the two that were not able to be interviewed. Is that correct?
Right.
That is correct.
Okay. Councilmember Sharp?
So I'd like to make a motion that we go out and we interview the two people if they want to be interviewed.
I'd second that.
Could I suggest that we do it on the same night as the Planning Commission on May 7?
Please.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Anybody want to speak to this? All those in favor, well, let's go ahead and vote on the board. That motion carries, so we'll be going out and trying to interview the other two candidates on the 7th. Thank you. We're going to agenda changes, additions and deletions, and I just want to announce and remind everybody that the city manager, Jim, has pulled item number seven from consent.
That will be carried forward to the next council meeting.
That'll be brought, yeah.
Yes.
And then, I don't think there's anything more on changes. Item number 15 will be also moved, but we will take that up at the time in case we have any speakers. And so now we are at city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I have a number of items to report. I will try to move through them very quickly. First of all, a new mobile app launched by the Palo Alto Police Department for smartphones that will give people immediate access to the latest news, crime maps, urgent alerts, and social media posts right in the palm of one's hand called the Palo Alto Police Department Mobile. It is available for free download in the App Store for Apple and in the Google Play Marketplace for Android devices. It was specifically created for our police department and is another way for our community to access the department's public information as well as build stronger connections. On a related note, I just want to share that Lieutenant Zach Perron, who has led the department's social media efforts, is currently back east and has been selected by the International Association of Chiefs of Police to be a visiting fellow with their Center for Social Media. And so he'll be working and involved in a national-level social media policy and strategy project in law enforcement communities across the country. Secondly, some mentions of our Palo Alto earlier tonight. Officially, we'll kick off the Ideas section with several events planned over the next few weeks. There is this panel discussion called Who Are We?, which will be held Wednesday, April 23rd, at the Downtown Library from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to talk about the changing demographics of the city and what that means for our future. We will also have two discussions on affordable housing. The first on April 28th at 3:00 p.m. at Lucy Stern, and the second on April 30th at 6:00 p.m. at the Elks Lodge. We also have several bike alongs. That's where you get on your bike, along with other folks. Plan to solicit feedback on our proposed Bicycle Boulevard projects, appropriate given our earlier Earth Day discussions. And the first one of these will be Saturday at 10:00 a.m. this weekend, beginning in the Paly High School Lot at Churchill in Castelaya. So we do encourage folks to participate. All these events are free, and more information, go to thecityofpaloalto.org website at slash Federal government representatives conducted a three-day monitoring visit in March related to assess our management of the city's CDBG-funded organizations and confirm that funds are being used to support eligible activities and affirm that low and moderate income individuals and families are being served with these dollars. We just received the result of these assessments and found to be in compliance. Many thanks to Mayor Shepard on behalf of the entire council for officiating in a small awards ceremony that was held this last week to honor those selected to receive funding as part of the city's Pilot Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and to thank our partners for helping to make the pilot a success. This program was developed in response to a needs assessment conducted in 2009 as part of the city's CDBG Community Development Block Grant Program 2010 to 2015 Consolidated Plan, and it offers seed grants ranging from $1,000 to $15,000 for income-eligible individuals interested in starting or expanding a micro enterprise. We received 26 applications. Eleven of these were placed on an eligibility list with a business mentor, and six were ultimately funded. So just to give an examples, Sherice Lane received funding for a business related to handcrafted items, Kathy Wu received funding, small funding for her work as an independent health insurance provider, P. Christopher Murphy received funding for publishing and website creation, Heek Young Kim received funding for her work as a hairstylist, Robin Angstadt received funding for a business involving fine art and jewelry online, Ann Walter Barnes received funding for a business providing baseball and softball umpires. So congratulations to all. Let's see, we have some pictures up there from last Saturday when over 350 adults and kids of all ages turned out for the city-sponsored community event on Saturday, the Great Race for Saving Water, which made a big splash. Our website will be updated soon with winning times and photos, et cetera. Spectators and racers alike really enjoy the post-race festivities. I happen to be there, and it just is amazing when you get to get out at these Palo Alto events and you see the kinds of facilities we have down there at the Baylands and the Athletic Center and just all the families and kids and everything out, just having a great time, beautiful day. The staff at Utilities did a wonderful, wonderful job, all of them, lots of them out on Saturday volunteering their time. And of course, everybody got a good laugh watching people try to stop the running toilet, which was a stunt stage emphasizing that stopping running toilets and other leaks is one of the easiest and most significant ways people can save water. I want to pass on special thanks to our cosponsors, the Tuolumne River Trust, and all the groups who volunteered time, money, food, and supplies to make this event so inspiring. Special shout out to our own utility staffer, Catherine Elvert, for all of her hard work on this. Last Friday night, the city was among the cosponsors of a major celebration of how far we've come since solar voltaic cells were invented, the PV-60 Birthday Bash, and honorees included PV pioneers Mort Prince and Eugene Ralph, who were interviewed by historian John Perlin, who wrote the book Let It Shine, which recounts the 6,000-year story of humankind and solar energy. Mayor Shepard picked up the award on behalf of the city of Palo Alto. We won for our proactive promotion of solar PV systems as an important part of meeting our sustainability goals. Two more things, and then I'll be done. You might have read some of the recent media updates on the Google Fiber Program. We're coming up on the May 1st deadline. We're one of 32 cities in nine regions, three others right adjacent to us, along with us, Mountain View, Santa Clara, and Sunnyvale. And in order to make an informed decision on which of these 32 cities, Google will approach to potentially deliver one gigabyte citywide connections through fiber for broadband access. They requested a lot of information from each of these cities. There's a long checklist of mainly infrastructure items that any telecommunications provider would need in making an informed decision. This includes a lot of publicly available data, such as street names, but also includes protected information, which includes many of our utility-related items. We've submitted most of that info, but I did want to let you know that we will be coming to council related to a couple of items on the checklist on your consent calendar for April 29th. And then lastly, the Palo Alto Apps Challenge Showcase is progressing well. We received, we recently announced that there were nine finalists in our Apps Challenge, and on April 27th, our community is invited to meet all the finalists, hear about their ideas, and provide them feedback. The event called the Palo Alto Apps Challenge Showcase is being held at the Palo Alto Art Center from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, April 27th. There'll be food, good live music, and wonderful opportunities to network. The event is free and open to everyone, so please swing by and show your support to these finalists, and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is oral communication. This is when you can speak to the city council on anything tonight that's not on the agenda. I have two cards. You'll have three minutes to speak. The first card is with, the first speaker will be Win Gershich, and the second one will be William Rosenberg.
Good evening. I came here to tell you that your forced medication of a hazardous waste product with lead and arsenic in it, fluorosilic acid, was actually cut in half. And this is kind of amazing because this article here, when Jackie Spears wrote the bill to fluoridate the rest of the state in 2005, she wrote it, excuse me, in 1995, but in 2005, they added it on the peninsula. So what happened is, is that Alameda County Water District in Fremont puts the poison in the drinking water in Sinole. So what I did was, I gave this city council, Basque, and Alameda County Water District, the 15 university studies on fluorosilic acid and why it's poison and it causes cancer, and it lowers children's IQs. You have the Harvard studies. And what was amazing is that was in November last year, and then in December, when Alameda County purchases, it usually purchases 59 tons, but then they reduced it to 57. When they ordered it, I didn't go to that meeting that month, and I was thinking about it, so I asked them for the purchase order form, and this year, they only ordered like less than $75,000 worth. And usually, I'm rounding it up because it's 74,900 something, and usually, it's around $160,000 worth, which is about, I'm rounding it up because it's 159 something. And so that's quite a significant reduction, and usually, you have to go to your doctors when they cut your medicine in half, especially when this is a forced medication, a poison with lead and arsenic in it. And it's kind of amazing, too, that when this was added to the water on the peninsula, that was the same year when Gina Solomon had the arsenic levels reduced in the drinking water from 50 parts per billion down to 10, because at 50 parts per billion, it'd kill one in 100 people with cancer. So the water companies had to do something to get rid of some of this arsenic so it wouldn't kill as many people when they put this poison in our drinking water. And I would like everyone, you know, at home or on the city councils, you know, email gina dot markou, M-A-R-K-O-U, at ACWD.com and ask for the purchase order form on fluorosilic acid, and you already have the material safety data sheet that's on public record if the public wants to check it out, because they know it causes cardiac nervous disorders, bone fluoresces, bone cancer, and all this stuff. But if we can, if, you know, those documents got them to cut it in half. If more people would speak up and go against this, I think we can get this stopped permanently because they know it's poison. And I asked Marty Kohler, who's a representative on Alameda County Water District, to go to Sacramento, he's the Sacramento rep, to speak up since he has the evidence and strict liabilities to protect the public when the wrongdoers do wrong, and they claim they didn't know it was a mistake. He's got the evidence to stop this. And this is something that Basque, you know, Basque meets on Beauvais Street every, the second month, the second month when they meet on Wednesdays, it's on the same street that Jackie Spears has her office. I said, give Jackie Spears the studies. But I hope the public will check this out and...
Thank you.
...call Jackie Spears and get it stopped.
William Rosenberg?
Evening. I'm Bill Rosenberg in Palm Beach Drive, Palo Alto. I came here about a year and a half ago to talk to you about evil styrofoam packaging and that because of that, I got a call from Julie Weiss, and I want to thank you people for, you know, giving her my name. But happily, I got distracted talking to her and supported her efforts to ban single-use plastic bags. And we were finally successful. You indeed passed that extension of the bag ordinance last fall, or went into effect last fall. And so now I'm back to talk to you about evil styrofoam packaging. You've all, you all know the fact, I don't have to take it out. What I do when I get packages like HP printers that have this packaging, I take the printer out, put the packaging back in the box, add a letter telling them what I think of this and what their alternatives might be, and I mail it back to the company. But I know that this is just like, if you'll excuse the expression, pissing in the wind. And so it's not really very effective. It makes me feel better, but I'd really like to do something other than just whine and complain about this. And so I've been thinking about it. I know that Palo Alto can't just ban styrofoam packaging the way we can ban single-use plastic So I, what I would like to see is a disposal fee attached to this. We have disposal fees for TVs, CRTs, and other materials that we don't really want to ban, or we can't ban, but we'd like to discourage the use of. And I think that Palo Alto could put a disposal fee requirement on people who use bulk styrofoam for packaging and suggest that they go to something like pressed cardboard, or as Julie told me, there's even some mushroom-based materials that are suitable alternatives. So I think there are suitable alternatives. If we can raise the ante, maybe HP would actually use this as a way to make their printers more cost competitive when people go to Fry's. I'd like to see something happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we have minutes approval. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for February 24th?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Niss and seconded by Councilmember Berman. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries unanimously. We now are into the consent calendar, and I have one card on the consent calendar. And Councilmember Klein, you have your light on.
Yes. Will the clerk please note that I am not voting on item number 12, which concerns Stanford, and my wife is a Stanford faculty member.
And I think I can't vote on something, too. Item number nine, I cannot participate in as well. So our speaker is for item number eight, and that's Ven Thesen.
Pass.
All right, then. And do we have any more speaker cards, clerk? No more speaker cards. Okay, so I'm going to call for a motion.
So moved.
Hang on. Have we pulled item number seven yet, city manager? Do we have to do that now?
Oh, I think you announced this at the time. I mean, you can include that in the motion if you want it just to be double shared.
Okay, so I need a motion approving items eight through 13.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Councilmember Price. Let's vote on the board. That motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Klein not participating in the Stanford item and me not participating in the bit item. So the next agenda item is a long one. It's the council review and direction on the planning and transportation recommended draft California Avenue area concept plan and authorization to submit an application for the Valley Transportation Agency Priority Development Area Planning Grant Program for the preparation of a master plan for the Fry's property as identified in the concept plan. Once again, I'm going to be turning this over to the city manager, who's going to kick this off, and then we have the planning director. And what we're, what we will be looking for is a motion on the grant item only, and then comments and possible questions and on the concept plan itself, for staff to be recording them and including them into their work moving forward. So the city manager?
Thank you. I'll turn this over. It is 10 after 9, I would just point out, so we use the hour, we'd be at 10:10.
Right.
Good evening, Mayor Shepard, members of the council. I'm Hillary Gittleman, the planning director. I'm joined by Elena Lee of our staff and Andrew Hill from our consultants, Placeworks. It's wonderful to be here. Tonight's item is directly responsive to council's question and discussion in mid-March. Tonight's item is directly responsive to council's question and discussion in mid-March. Specifically, the council requested an opportunity to review the work that the Planning and Transportation Commission had done on the Cal Ave concept plan before it moves forward into an extended outreach and environmental review process as part of the comp plan update. Also, council at that time expressed some anxiety about the Fry's site and how the city could prepare a site-specific master plan for the site in advance of receiving any application from the property owner. We're here tonight to ask your comments and, for your comments and questions on the draft plan that the Planning and Transportation Commission has recommended, and to seek your approval to apply for a grant that would provide the funding for the kind of site-specific planning document that I think the council was referring to in March. Andrew's going to give you a 10-minute presentation, a lot of material in 10 minutes, on the concept plan. But before he does, I wanted to explain what happens next and what we're requesting of the council tonight. Next slide. Thank you. Oops. As the council discussed in March, we see the long-range planning process to create a, or the long process that's been going on to create a concept plan for Cal Ave is feeding directly into the expanded environmental review and engagement process about the comp plan. Tonight, we think that council comments and questions, we probably won't be able to get answers to everything, but luckily, we have some additional opportunities for input along the way. The process, as the council has approved it, and we sketched it out in mid-May, I'm sorry, mid-March, allows for the discussion this evening. Then on May the 5th, we're going to have a discussion about the entire comp plan policy document as the council, as the, I'm sorry, as the Planning and Transportation Commission has recommended it. So that's a chance for us to get back to you with any questions we can, answers to any questions we can answer this evening. And then, the process calls for us to continue. A lot of community engagement and outreach come back to the council in early August. In fact, we're right now on your schedule for the first meeting back after your break for an extended discussion at the, towards the three-quarters of the way through this visioning process we see as part of the planning effort. And then, again, coming back to you with draft materials in early 2015. Finally, one more word before Andrew starts. I wanted to thank a couple of the members of council for their questions this morning. It was a great way to get the conversation started. It also caused us to realize there were some errors on a map and a table in the document, which has been with you and on the website for about a month now. But we scrambled around and created a replacement page, which I hope you have. It's just a front and back, a colored map on the front and the table on the back. And with that, I will hand it over to Andrew. When he's finished, Elena and I will be available to answer questions. We're also supported by Stephen Turner, who's here in the audience this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. Good evening, council members. My name's Andrew Hill. I'm with Placeworks, the consulting firm that's helping the city with the comprehensive plan amendment. I have a quick presentation for you tonight. I'd like to focus, I'd like to recap the process by which this draft concept plan has been developed, and also to introduce you quickly to the key contents of the plan. Starting with the study area and context, you can see the California Avenue area, concept plan area at the center of your screen. It's adjacent to the Cal Ave Caltrain station, but it encompasses more than just California Avenue. It extends from Cambridge down to Lambert, and it's bounded by El Camino Real and the Caltrain tracks. Yeah, this area is a transit-rich area. In addition to Caltrain service, it also has a number of bus lines and shuttle service, and El Camino Real is planned for bus rapid transit in the future. Additionally, in the concept plan area, there are a number of large vacant or underutilized sites that are, parcels that are primed for redevelopment. And importantly, there's also a residential enclave centered on Olive and Pepper Streets in this area here. And then, of course, surrounding the concept plan area is our single-family neighborhoods. Olive and, Olive and Pepper, it's a residential enclave. This is a map of the existing comprehensive plan land use designations, and as you can see, Olive and Pepper have single-family residential around them. We have the regional community commercial designation applicable around, in the business area around California Avenue, and surrounded by single-family neighborhoods here. And the, this map is not correct. This, the Fry's site is currently multifamily residential. Next slide. So these slides I'm going to skip over.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, just a second. So no one's misled. I think there are two errors on this, according to what we got at our places. Not only is the Fry, yes, looking at this slide.
Yes.
Not only is the Fry's site multifamily, but these other sites that are also identified as service commercial, according to what we got at places, those are service commercial, not, hang on a second. Maybe I'm in error.
The other sites are correct. It's the Fry's site that was designated as service commercial on the existing condition map, really because of the uses on the current site, but it really should be multifamily residential. And that was the correction included in the map that you got this evening.
Okay, I think it's a different color, and that's why I was thinking differently. So, sorry to interrupt you.
That's all right. That's all right. We'll skip over these. These are just details in case we needed them in the question and answer period. Another important piece of context, I think, is that much of the concept plan area is in the pedestrian transit-oriented combining district from the zoning code. The PTOD combining district is, allows for higher residential uses within walking distance of transit, while also protecting and preserving historic resources and surrounding lower denser, density residential uses. Next slide. That's the definition in writing. And of course, the concept plan, in and around the concept plan area, there are a number of other separate planning initiatives recently completed or underway, and those are listed here, and they include the city's bicycle and pedestrian transportation plan, the Cal Ave streetscape improvements project, the rail corridor study, the ongoing El Camino Real design guidelines update, and the regional grand boulevards initiative. So if I can turn now to a recap of the process by which this plan was developed, the impetus for doing the concept plan in the first place was a number of key issues. First, the need to develop a vision for sustaining and proving that California have a business and retail district, Park Boulevard and the Fry's site. Next, the need to manage change in areas that could accommodate it while also preserving and enhancing the quality of life in existing neighborhoods. And then, to address parking, pedestrian, and bicycle connectivity, and open space and park amenities. This draft plan was developed with extensive public involvement and opportunities for comment, including three community workshops, two city council meetings, and a number of PTC hearings. And the contents of the plan really reflects what we heard from the community. In summary, three sub-areas within the concept plan area were identified that could accommodate a degree of change, and those are pictured on this graphic. At the top is the California Avenue subarea in the orange box, the Park Boulevard subarea in the green box over on the right of the screen, and then at the bottom in the purple box is what we're calling the Fry's site subarea. Outside of these three subareas, we heard a strong desire for neighborhood preservation. And so, a vision and key concepts for each of these subareas and area-wide was developed on the basis of input from the community. These concepts were refined with input from council and also from PTC. And then, all of that input was translated into the goals, policies, and programs that are in the draft concept plan. PTC most recently reviewed the draft concept plan at the end of the year and in subcommittee earlier this year, and this is a summary of the changes that they made from the time it was presented in December until now. Next slide. And then, let me move on to the plan, the contents of the plan itself. The plan is really intended as a tool to help the public and decision-makers frame the planning context for future, future planning decisions in this sector of the city. As I mentioned, it contains area-wide policy, goals, policies, and programs, and also goals, policies, and programs that are specific to each of the three subareas identified. Generally, the existing comp plan land use designations applicable to the, to the concept plan area are preserved with two notable exceptions. One is that the mixed-use designation would be applied to the Fry's site. And the second is the creation of a new technology corridor overlay along Park Boulevard. If I move to a quick summary of each of the goals in the plan, the draft concept plan contains five goals. The first goal is really area-wide, and it's about balancing, balancing the varying needs. So managing a change in areas that can accommodate it while also preserving the quality of life in neighborhoods and preserving the existing commercial character of Cal Ave. The second goal is focused on the California Avenue subarea, and what we heard very loudly from the public was a desire to preserve the existing commercial character of the California Avenue area. And so, the policies and programs that are in the draft plan support that, that comment from the public. And so, you can see that recognizing the importance of maintaining the existed neighborhood-oriented commercial character is in there, and the other things like promoting active uses at street level, which would support California Avenue's existing commercial, neighborhood-oriented commercial character. This is a repeat, so next slide. Yeah, the third, there are two goals in the plan that pertain to the Park Boulevard subarea. This is the first of them, goal number three, which seeks to build on the nascent cluster of technology-oriented businesses along Park Avenue and promote Park Boulevard, Park Boulevard, rather, Park Boulevard as an important hub of innovation and entrepreneurship for new companies. The second of the two goals that pertain to the Park Boulevard subarea is this one, and it is designed to promote bicycle and pedestrian safety along Park Boulevard. This was a very significant community concern that we heard quite a lot about considering a number of recent accidents along Park Boulevard involving cyclists. And so, again, the policies and programs here are designed to speak to that community concern. And then, the final goal pertains to the Fry's site. And this is, if Fry's elects to leave, and they have not yet elected to leave, but if in the future Fry's does elect to leave or relocate, this goal is designed to foster the transformation of the site to a walkable, human-scale, mixed-use neighborhood. And so, the policies and programs under this goal would support that transition. And that concludes a quick presentation on the, yeah, and so we open it up.
Thank you, Andrew. Just to wrap up, again, we're asking for the city council's question and comments. We'll answer what questions we can quickly, but the intention is to really keep a list and get back to you with answers that we can't get to this evening. We're also seeking a motion authorizing us to apply for this grant to do some further site-specific planning on the Fry's site. We'd be happy to answer any questions now or after the public comment.
I thought I'd go out to public comment, and then I'm going to let you comment on the public comment, and then we can move into council member questions and comments, and then hopefully get to the specific motion at hand. Colleagues, I will be limiting time for five minutes to get your comments and questions out to staff with a minute to wrap up. After five minutes, we'll be timing you out here, but let's go out to the public right now, where you will have three minutes to speak, and we have about eight speakers here. Our first speaker will be Adina Levin, to be followed by Sandra Slater.
Two minutes.
No. No, it's fine. Sure.
Good evening, council members. My name's Adina Levin with Friends of Caltrain, and we have an overall program. We've got over 3,000 people in the Caltrain corridor from San Francisco to San Jose and work with local groups in different cities on the corridor, supporting not only Caltrain itself, but transit-supportive policies in station areas. And it's in that context that we would, and this is going to be bolstering several other people who are talking with the Green Planning Action Group, supporting the California Avenue Concept Plan, and in particular, with the decision this evening regarding the Fry's site applying for the planning grant for a mixed-use area. And the points that I'd like to make about that is, in that planning, to support a set of policies so that it's not just transit-adjacent development, where you take buildings and you plunk them near transit and hope for the best, but to really pay close attention to the walkability, the fact that you have, you know, a fine-grained grid that people can walk through, bikeability, public space so that it feels comfortable for people to be in. In the California area, as the city has a transportation demand management policy, starting to create a operating area for the Cal Ave area to reduce the number of vehicle trips with the, the set of TDM policies as appropriate for the area, which might include shuttles through the Caltrain catchment area, transit passes, zip cars for people who live there and have fewer cars per household, and workers who, you know, don't want to bring a car just to drive to run and errand in the middle of the day. So basically, would encourage that planning process to focus on that range of policies to really leverage that transit-rich area and make it bikeable, walkable, and make use of the transit so that mixed-use location will, you know, really contribute to a, you know, adding benefits to the neighborhood and not adding drawbacks. And one other item that I neglected to add was also considering extending the residential parking permit into the neighborhood to avoid parking overflow into the neighborhood and avoid that negative impact as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra Slater, to be followed by Robert Moss.
Good evening, council. Thank you again for letting me speak yet again. I'd like to offer my support of the California Area Concept Plan as an almost 30-year resident of Palo Alto and also Green Planning Action Group member. I value Palo Alto's many assets, as I know you all do. I think this is a great opportunity to support a creative and innovative project that could, should not be diluted, to become yet another neighborhood that contributes to the problem rather than being part of a solution. Palo Alto has one of the highest jobs-to-housing ratios in the region, so reducing the need for workers to commute into our community is a win for all. Putting denser housing near job and transit centers allows for balance while decreasing the transportation crunch. And living near walkable, bikeable areas makes people certainly happier and healthier. Denser housing on this site helps support the Cal Ave streetscape design. It means that retailers and merchants in this area will get customers without an additional automotive burden. Denser housing on this site is very much in line with the city's comp plan, which is in favor of denser housing close to prominent transit hubs and employment centers. Walkable communities are much more likely to support their local retail centers. Once in a car, a driver is more likely to go down to the mall or a big box store rather than a local, local store. So I think promoting that kind of thing really fosters a good economic development for that area as well. And denser communities can share green space, which reduces landscaping and costs time for individual homeowners and overall community water use. So I think it's a win-win, and it's an opportunity for council to really look at something that could be really exciting and a way, a beacon for how Palo Alto might look at future development. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Moss, to be followed by Eric Rosenblum.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd, and council members. I think there are some aspects of this study and report that have to be looked at very carefully. The one that really struck me is traffic is hardly mentioned. And as you know, El Camino and Page Mills are one of the most heavily congested intersections in town. Oregon Expressway will fill up with traffic to and from the research park as long as an hour after the normal peak traffic. I've seen it backed up from 101 down to Middlefield. I've seen it backed up from 101 down to Middlefield in the afternoon. That's not mentioned. Talking about policies, for example, Policy 2.2 encourages smaller but higher density development. If you keep talking about increasing density, where are those people going to go and how are they going to get there? The fantasy is that they're going to take transit. Let me tell you the reality. I talked to the fellow who was the president of the homeowners association in Palo Alto Central, those of the condos at California and Park several years ago. He surveyed his neighbors. Ninety percent of them drive. You couldn't be any closer to the Caltrain station. So if you do an awful lot of heavy lifting, you might get 20% of the people to take transit. VTA doesn't have a bus from the Caltrain station. You have to take the margarita if you want a bus or walk to El Camino. People will not take transit. They will do as they have been doing and drive. If you want to find out how people get to work, I would suggest you actually survey the people who live currently on nearby streets, Olive and, or Oxford and College and Park, and ask them, "How do you get to work now?" You'll find out that the vast majority of them drive. They don't take transit. Second, there's a very brief discussion of the fact that we have groundwater contamination in the area. Yeah, and some of it is serious. And in fact, exposure for as little as three weeks, if a woman is pregnant, is highly likely to cause birth defects in the baby. It's levels of as little as 0.5 ppb of TCE. But the groundwater contamination problem in the area is basically ignored. If you're going to be developing with a high-density residential over an area which is contaminated, you had better be very careful. That's got to be looked at. Finally, you should be looking at where the people, oh, let me back up a little bit. You talk about encouraging smaller units. How do you do that? The developer is going to put in the size of unit that he thinks is going to sell. I can give you two examples. An El Camino near Charleston and a San Antonio near the Mayfield Mall. Those were built with fewer, larger units because that's what the people wanted.
Thank you. Eric Rosenblum, to be followed by Mehdi Alhassani.
First, thanks, Mayor Shepherd, and members of city council. My name is Eric Rosenblum. I'm a member of Downtown North. I have two kids in Palo Alto schools, and I'm also a member of the fledgling group GreenPlanningAction.org, which supports intelligent development. And I think this project is one of the poster children for intelligent development. It's a, I support rezoning the Frye's electronics area to be mixed-use and residential. The only thing I would love to see considered is to see if there could be a greater skew towards residential development versus more retail development. I think we already have a jobs-versus-housing imbalance, and anything that exacerbates that would, you know, exacerbate it by definition. However, I think even its present form, it's a very attractive project. And there are a lot of benefits, but I want to focus just on two of them. The first is that it promotes a pedestrian-friendly community. And the second is that it's very much in line with the comp plan. And I find the comp plan a very wise document. And when there are things that fall directly in line with the, with, with many of the things before in the comp plan, it makes me really sit up and pay attention. Now, first, the pedestrian-oriented committee, community. It's located close to the California Ave Commercial Center. I think it'll be a great help to the businesses there. In order to have a walkable community, you need someplace to walk to. And it so happens that there is, there are great places to walk to. Putting people within easy walking distance of those places would make for a virtuous cycle for both the merchants and the people. It would increase the quality of life for the Australian neighborhoods, because I believe this takes cars off the streets. For people to get to work or to where they need to go, to retail, to their schools, you can actually get cars off the street. I also, as I said, believe that Palo Alto's comprehensive plan was wise and forward-looking. This proposal is very much in line with putting density in the right places, in pedestrian-friendly areas close to major transit hub in downtown areas. I think the timing is also very good. It falls in line with the redevelopment of this whole area. So finally, Mr. Moss just suggested that the pedestrian-oriented or transit-oriented development is, is a fantasy, that we should actually just talk to people who live in these areas. And I have seen data from people who live in these areas. I've seen data for people who go to these businesses, people who live in areas close to transit and close to, close to their schools. And by and large, they find other ways to get around in much greater numbers than in places where it's difficult to do. A big-box store by definition on that site is intended for people to drive, park, and bring back big boxes. Putting people on that site that are walking to places when they bring back potentially smaller boxes will be using alternative forms of transportation. So I'm fully in support of this. I think it's great. I hope that it skews a bit more towards residential, but otherwise, bravo, great job. I think that it looks great.
Thank you. Mehdi Alhassani, to be followed by Herb Borack.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd, and city council members. My name is Mehdi Alhassani. My wife and I are proud residents of Palo Alto's Crescent Park neighborhood. One of the many reasons we love Palo Alto is that we are fortunate enough to have essentially two downtowns between University Avenue and California Avenue. We enjoy long walks, window shopping, and eating out at both these fun areas. I'd like to thank you for considering the California Avenue Concept Plan today, especially the proposal to rezone Frye's for mixed-use with the residential uses, and encourage you to apply for the VTA grant. I would also like to thank city staff as well as the Planning and Transportation Commission for the diligence with which they have considered this issue. It's a great time to be thinking of the future of Palo Alto, and this proposal aligns with pedestrian-friendly, transit-oriented development that the comprehensive plan envisions. Consideration of housing is especially important because Palo Alto's severe jobs-to-housing imbalance. Adding housing where the jobs are will help ease regional commutes, traffic, parking, and greenhouse gas emissions. With respect to the plan in particular, I support more residential developments to ease the housing deficit the city currently faces. I also believe that adding residential usage would be good for California Avenue businesses and will be better for the environment as it would encourage walkability and public transportation options. Moreover, I believe that this is achievable without sacrificing Palo Alto's character and small-town feel. If I were to make one suggestion that differs from the current concept plan, it would be to consider raising the floor to area ratio in a manner that allows for more housing but ensures Palo Alto's essential character is preserved. As we consider any changes to Palo Alto, I think it is vital we look forward to meeting the future needs of our city and not merely the present ones. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Herb Borack.
Mayor Shepherd and council members, the staff report says that this concept plan will be part of the, study is part of the program EIR for the comprehensive plan. It is the council's decision to determine what project is going to be studied in the comprehensive plan. You're not making a decision about this part of that project tonight, but at some point you need to have on your agenda what is going to be studied in that comprehensive, in that environmental impact report and including this. The changes to the map and the table that were discussed, I want to make sure that, that staff is actually making a change based upon the existing land-induced map in the comprehensive plan and not making a change based upon the zoning map. Of course, I know the zoning of the Frye's site is multiple-family residential, but what you have here is the land-use map designation. The table does not match the map. If you take a look at the two boldface items, a mixed-use and service-commercial, the changes between existing and proposed balance out as 15.2 acres each. But in addition, the multiple-family residential is also shown as being decreased by 15.2 acres. So the total under-proposed is not the total that's shown. It's 15.2 acres less because 15.2 acres is being subtracted twice and being added back only once. I oppose applying for the VTA grant. The purpose of, of that grant program is for increasing employment development. We can ease the traffic problems and parking problems we have due to overdevelopment of non-residential by building housing close to existing employment-generating activities. But as you can see from the floor-area ratios shown for the proposed mixed-use land-use designation, the number of jobs generated by that use will overwhelm the amount of housing, even if there are multiple employees in each of those housing units working in those jar-producing areas. So it will just make things worse. What all it will do will give a windfall profit to a developer who bought property at its existing zoning designation. If the existing zoning, which is multiple-family, it remains, that will ease the problem because it'll be building housing their existing jars. But if you just build more jars and the housing can, can service, you just make things worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary, would you like to respond to any of the comments made during? Okay. And Jim, would you mind helping me? I was going to do five minutes for each council members with a minute to wrap up if they need to at the end of five minutes for the comments and the questions from council. And then hopefully, do you think that'll be enough time for us to record the information that planning needs or what is your thinking here?
I mean, we're going to be able to capture what the council says anyway, both through the minutes and watching the, the session and everything. And, you know, obviously, this is a preview in a lot of ways for the council's reaction to this plan before the staff ultimately takes it out to the public and for their input and that sort of thing. So the council's not acting on the plan itself today. You're informing.
Right. We're just giving, and we're just informing planning of what we want to.
Concerns about the plan.
Sure.
As you laid out this process, and as Hillary did, this would be a very brief opportunity for the council to wade in on a very significant development in our community. And for this to come back to us as a subset of a comp plan discussion, which will be the entire comp plan in one meeting. And I don't think this is a proper consideration for the council of some very significant decisions. And if they go forward here with the proposals that we have, then that's going to be largely locked in. If we come, this comes back to us in a year or more, and the council says that they want to fundamentally change this, that's going to be very far down the road.
But I have Hillary respond to that so that we can move along and get into the comment period. We do have a very.
Well, I'm also going to make a proposal, so it's not just Hillary's.
Okay, we also have a very tight agenda here too in order to get through the Caltrain EIR and the Dunbarton rail. Can, okay, make your proposal, but I think, Hillary, do you want to have any comments before you make a proposal as to how we're taking?
Can I, can I just say one other thing, though, here?
Sure.
We're trying to reconcile the fact that there are a lot of items on this agenda, and that we do, we have a limited time, and you have a lot of items on your upcoming meeting agendas. You know, there's nothing that precludes the council from making the comments and questions that you make tonight. And even if we carry then some of that over into this couple-hour comp plan discussion, if that's not satisfactory, you can schedule, you know, something else on, another session on the Cal Ave plan. I mean, this is going to track concurrent with the larger comprehensive plan look that we're going to be doing over the next, whatever it is, 20 months. And, you know, I mean, obviously, the council wants to send something to the public that is sufficiently vetted, but you don't want to complete this, it seems to me, in its entirety because you want to get the public's involvement and input in this also. So how do you reconcile this?
Our, whatever we do, even in a follow-up meeting, won't complete this. So what I would recommend is that we schedule a separate follow-up, agendaized, meeting on this topic, separate from the comprehensive plan discussion. So I'll move that.
Just a second, let me get some clarification from, I would like to, first off, I would like to understand how this is going to operate with the schedule that we've put out there.
Oh, wait, we have a motion in a second.
Yes, and I'm going to, I'm going to try to follow procedure here to try to figure out how we can get this accomplished tonight. So are you suggesting, then, that we need to not take up the agenda item to do the grant, but to, to do that portion of the agenda tonight and then take up the questions and the comments at another time?
What's the timeline on the grant application?
By the end of the month, so the 28th, so we need to know that today.
Well, the, the grant is, is one issue, but then the discussion itself is on a different schedule or track.
If, if we have dissent or significant discussion on whether we should pursue this grant, I don't see how that's going to fit in your schedule tonight.
All right. City manager, this is the work from your department. How would you like to proceed?
Well, there's a couple of issues. I, I mean, to be honest with you, I don't know why the council can't bifurcate this if you really want to have a more in-depth discussion. You can even make a decision for us to submit the grant. I mean, if somehow you change your mind later, we just say, "Never mind." I don't think you would do that frivolously. Secondly, if you did want to meet next week, you know, for a follow-up on the 29th, we've got the, basically, the environmental issue related to the, you know, the composting item facility out there. We've removed.
We planned.
Yeah, we may have some other items off. In addition, you've also sometimes talked about a, an occasional Wednesday meeting, the 30th, I don't know if that works, where you just have a single item that you could talk about on this. I mean, it seems to me it would be better to do this soon, sooner than later.
I think our brief discussion tonight will inform the grant, grant consideration. If we want to put the grant on the 29th, I'd be fine with that.
We can't. It's too late.
All right. And is, if we don't support this grant application, will there be subsequent grant opportunities?
Not in this timeframe. I mean, I, I guess we.
I don't know what timeframe you mean.
We had understood that the council felt some urgency to get to site-specific planning so that we would have something more specific than the plans and policy, the policy language in this document by the time an application was filed. And so this is a grant that's immediately available. We could go for it. We could get planning underway. We would have to wait for the next grant cycle, whenever that may be. If we miss the 28th is the deadline.
Well, I'll say that my motion does not determine whether the council will take action on the grant tonight.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table, which is to.
Can I speak to my second?
Yes, I know. I'm going to.
Thank you.
Go over the motion, the motion by Councilmember Burt, and second by Councilmember Holman. And do you want to speak further to your motion, Councilmember Burt?
Yeah, I'll just say that we have not had an opportunity to look at the significance of this very large upzoning for this area. And it needs much more consideration. We have at our places four pages of response to questions. I'll just say that the responses unfortunately do not really address many of the questions and are inaccurate in some other places. This really needs significant council consideration and understanding of what we're facing.
Councilmember Holman, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, thank you. And I think there's a correction or clarification to the, to the motion, which should be, take up this item at an additional, I believe it is, Councilmember Burt, if you would consider that. It's not on my screen. It's up here on the, on the board, Pat.
You want to toggle the screens, is that what you'd like?
I think it's at an.
No. They're toggling right now, so you'll see it in a second.
Okay. And I support this because this has been, and not your doing, Hillary. It's like you're in the hot seat, but this isn't your doing. You're exactly right. We have been wanting this. I've been crying for this to come forward, so, exactly right. But it's been eight years in the making, and we can't just rush through this, you know, with a half an hour or an hour discussion this evening. And I think what our comments are about the plan itself are going to inform whether we should, at this point in time, apply for the planning grant or not from VTA. Because the VTA grant, as the way I read the memo, it seems like it commits us to some, not specific things, but to certainly a policy direction, which I don't think has clearly set forth for us to consider yet. So I very much support us having an additional meeting on this.
Okay, I have one light on this, but.
Well, I would just hope, I mean, come on now, we're, we're not talking about a completely blank slate here. I mean, everybody actually knows the area pretty well right now and knows the forces that are at play and under, can see roughly the recommended changes. I can understand that there might be a good policy reason to be able to get to even in. I can understand that there might be a good policy reason to be able to get to even in a half hour's time, some sense that we want to apply for the grant now or not, but just a, I wouldn't suggest that you just say, forget about it, because it, there might be enough that would inform...
The motion doesn't do that.
Okay. The last statement sounded more like we were going...
It's not the motion.
Councilmember Scharf.
So I think the, what the concern a little bit is, is the limiting it to five minutes, frankly. I mean, I think this is an important topic. And I understand the need to get through it. So, I mean, I think there's two divergent goals here. But I think it is important to be transparent and open with the public and to allow council members to speak frankly and give their comments of what they need to give. And I think it's inappropriate, frankly, to say we're going to do it for just five minutes without council policy on that. We have no council policy limiting council members, and I don't think that's appropriate. On the other hand, I would like us to take this out. So I'll make a substitute motion, which is sort of similar to this, is that we move forward on this with focusing on the VTA grant. And at the end of this, if council members initially are limited to five minutes, if that's what we want to do, but at the end of that, that we go ahead and then decide whether or not we want to continue the discussion if council members feel they haven't had the opportunity to speak enough and want to do a second, and then we go ahead and make that decision then. So I'll say, move that we, that's the basic way to say, move that we do this as the mayor suggested, and at the end of the discussion, or as part of the motion, we then take up the issue of, do we want a, another session on this? Maybe that's not very articulate, but...
Well, that's where it stands right now, if you don't vote for this motion.
No, it doesn't, because I just made a substitute motion. I may not get a second.
Second. All right, could you speak to that? So I guess I just need to understand the difference between that or voting this motion down, because we can always take up California Avenue separately after we do it, the way we, the way I worked it out with staff to...
I guess, as I said, in my mind, the difference in this is what you laid out seemed very prescriptive as to that we have five minutes to talk to this and we're done. And I don't think that's appropriate. I think what we need to do is to be able to say, we can start that way, let's have one round that way. People want to make motions, we can take up the VTA grant, we can do stuff like that. But frankly, if people make substitute motions and that kind of stuff, we're not going to stick with the five minutes. I mean, people need, if there's a substitute motion, people need to be able to address the substitute motion, they need to. So I think the five minutes is my real issue here. So I think we need to be able to go forward, as you suggested, but then do our normal process when we have motions.
That's what we usually do, that's what I was intending, but go ahead, Councilmember...
And then at the end of the day, and then at the end of the day, we then can add it in that we want to have another session.
Okay, Councilmember Price.
Yes, I concur with Councilmember Scharf's comments, I have nothing additional to add. And it is important to keep moving on this topic.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein, did you still want to speak?
I did, by the way, I still have the original motion.
Okay, Vice Mayor Nissa.
A couple of points of information. Councilmember Burt, take up this item, what, how would you define item at this point? The entire number 14, or you're talking about the grant?
Excuse me, I'll answer. The California Avenue Concept Plan.
So your request is to take up the concept plan at another time separately. Deal with the grant tonight, take up the concept plan at another time.
It was actually to have preliminary input on the concept plan and schedule an agendized meeting, additional agendized meeting on the concept plan, and allow for a vote to take place tonight on the VTA grant.
All right, so this is a three-part motion. One is to comment on the concept plan tonight briefly. The second is to talk about another night when we could discuss this. And the third is to talk about the grant, am I correct?
The motion...
You do want the grant voted on tonight, am I correct?
No, I want to allow the council to determine whether they want to. So it's not precluding a vote on the grant.
Well, you'll take up the motion, is what you're saying, the idea. But right now, we're speaking to the substitute motion, so do you have any comments on the substitute motion?
Yes, so I'll support the substitute motion, but I want to put some more parameters on it, Greg, if you're willing.
Sure, go ahead. In fact, I wanted to...
We are now almost at 10 o'clock. If we all talk for five minutes plus the extra minute, we're going to be up on 11:00. We have people who really want to speak to the Caltrain EIR tonight, and this is the last night for the Caltrain EIR. If we have no discipline whatsoever in where we're going with this, we're going to be here until 2:00 in the morning. I don't think we're at our best at 2:00 in the morning. And I don't think that whomever is here who wishes to talk to Caltrain will be either. So I would suggest that we have a time certain for stopping this. If we're willing to go and stop at quarter of 11:00, I'd be willing to support your motion. But I'm not willing to stay here until 2:00 AM.
That's fine.
So that's 50 minutes. Okay, I see no more lights. I'd like to weigh in on this, because as you can tell, we've been trying to, I've been trying to work with staff to manage the meeting so that we can get everybody to speak equally on items and input on items, and some people do have a tendency to speak a lot longer than other people. Also, there's questions on this item tonight that are just not answerable tonight, and so staff felt that they would rather take all of the, and digest it, and get it back in a timeframe that they could have, feel a little more, that they could research them, these questions that might be asked, including the ones that were submitted in writing. This is not simple, it's not easy. But this is our first look at the California Avenue Concept Plan in, I think, four years. And I think that this is an update and a time for us to provide input. So I'm going to support the substitute motion, which is almost identical to the way we were going to manage the meeting anyway, because as council always does, they will take up the items just the way you had described it, Greg. So in that case, I'm going to go ahead and, I've got one more, one more light on, and then I'm going to call for the vote.
Point of order, I don't see the language, I thought that, I thought that the maker of the substitute motion had accepted the language proposed by the Vice Mayor.
Yeah, he did.
Oh, you want to see the...
I don't see that on my screen.
Want to see the hard stop at 10:45?
That's in the motion.
In the, in the substitute motion.
Okay, good.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, another clarification. I thought, it says now the substitute motion is to move forward focusing on the VTA grant. I thought your motion was to permit...
Yeah, five minutes.
Limited time.
No, it was.
Have a round of five minutes.
That's correct.
Yeah, that should be in the motion.
Thank you. I hadn't read this up. So let's vote on the substitute motion. Councilmember Scharf moved, seconded by Councilmember Price, to move forward focusing on the VTA grant and decide to continue discussion on the agenda item.
Five minutes per council member.
Five minutes per council member, right. Let's see, let's get this motion out. Could you look at the motion, Greg, until...
Per council member, right? Per council member.
Per council member.
On the item, on gentleman, decide to continue to schedule the hard stop at 10:45 PM.
Casey, is you stand for...
Okay, is that right? All right, let's go ahead and vote. And the motion carries with Councilmember Schmidt and Holman voting no. All right, should we, I'll take, I'm going to go ahead and set this timer out here for four minutes, and then it'll turn to yellow at five minute, at the four minutes, and you can wrap up, and we'll move on to the next colleague. And I have no lights, so I, I'm happy to go first.
Go ahead.
All right, so you want to tie me, Vice Mayor? First off, I think one of the ideas that did come forward at one point in time when we did discuss this California Avenue Concept Plan is the fact that, and it was more, I think, in the context of the grant that we had, had accepted for reducing the lanes on California Avenue, to extend the vision for California Avenue down, you know, and just make it more bold and broad. And so we have had a lot of focus on specifically California Avenue, and now we're moving out. And I do like the way that you've compartmentalized it into three different segments. And yet, at the same time, one of them has the North County Courthouse, which I do think is a destination spot. It is certainly a focus of an awful lot of people that have to get over there for jury duty. And I think that it's important to call that out in this plan so that we can decide how we want to feature that in that particular focus area besides just the tech corridor. On page 352, it talks about, and this is with the Frye's Spot, and thank you very much for getting this Frye's Spot picked up right away. It is a lot of angst in the community to take Frye's on, to take this section on, because we know that there's, you know, a new owner of that site that is anxious to build, and we should be figuring out what that is. I think one of the biggest problems we've had is having things not figured out. So the way I understand it is, this will not be part of the comprehensive plan until after we do the EIR, and then we adopt it as our plan in 2015, which means that if somebody comes today to do something on that site, they get to do what the current comprehensive plan has and the current zoning is. So I think that there is a lot of angst here. And so I will be supporting the grant application, because that will just save, save money from the city to have VTA give us the money to do this site-specific plan, or much more site-specific than what we would be, than what we're doing right here tonight. And that, to me, is, I think, an important piece of trying to move this section forward. So, but in that context over there, you said that you were going to use context-sensitive approach. Now, the last time I heard about context-sensitive solutions was with how Caltrans works with doing freeways and such. And there is a whole process for doing context-sensitive approach, and I just wanted to know what your thinking was on that, so if you can get back and define that at some point. Also, just a moment here to say, one of the reasons why University is just on fire, in my opinion, is because that's where the bullet stops, and that's where everybody queues up. There's minimal shuttles down there at California Avenue. Now, when Caltrain does get finished with their electrification and their modernization, this, I'm not sure if the bullets will still be part of the schedule, because they will be able to keep an efficient and effective schedule, just stopping at every station, at least so it's been claimed. And I, so I do, I am interested in wondering if you could get to some of that load, like if a bullet did decide to stop there a couple times a day, how would that change the district and would it become more University Avenue-like? So those are my primary comments. And just a reminder to the community that, you know, we're not applying for these grants to get transportation dollars, we're applying so that we don't have to spend our own money on doing things that we need to do in some of the areas. It's not about the ABAG numbers, it's about, we do our, our housing element for different reasons. So, anyway, those are my comments for tonight. And Councilmember Schmidt. Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I want to just focus on one general question on the concept plan. What we have in front of us is a list of why this area has been identified for a concept plan. It's a pedestrian transit-oriented development district. It's the California Avenue Transit hub. It is a priority development area. It has been one of the focal points of the rail corridor study. Each of these things emphasize mixed use. Mixed use is defined as a combination of commercial, retail, and residential space. Now, we are dealing, like it or not, with a housing element, and we need to identify sites for it. It is clear from what this site is and the comments made tonight that residential is a critical part of this particular site. It is where we can have that vision of smart development, where you mix commercial and retail and people living. It's what modern urban design is all about. Now, our housing element from the last seven years said that, oh, 20% of our housing sites, units, should be in this area. That doesn't make any sense. I would look at a design concept to help tell me what share of our housing mandated unit should be here. And I'd expect that to be one of the conclusions of the design concept, but there's no hint here. I think one-third makes sense. At least one-third of the housing unit elements would make sense for this modern urban design sector, where residents, mixed use, residents, retail, and commercial can get together. What's the danger of it not being in this design concept, where we have planning grants and, what, five, six community meetings about the details of the streetscapes and what goes where? You start putting housing, dense housing, in places with no planning. That's the option to not doing it here. Now, for me, that's convincing evidence that as we move forward on this, one of the conclusions we need, and we need it quickly, is what share of our mandated housing units belong here? And I think people tonight have made a convincing case, this is one of the best places in town. So let's have a discussion in there.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes, first, a couple procedural things. One, I'm glad we have a five-minute limit on speaking on this item, but I think we got there the right way. I don't think that the mayor has the authority to say that each member is limited to five minutes. I would have gone with it just as a matter of comedy to you, Madam Mayor, but I don't think it's really within your authority. Second, I don't think we should be slaves to timing. I'm all for having shorter meetings. I agree with Vice Mayor Nissa's comments that we don't make good decisions when we get past midnight or 1:00 or something like that, but we have lots of work to do. And if that means extra meetings, I think that means extra meetings. These are very momentous decisions, and I don't think that we should say we should get them done in one hour or some, something that's really artificial when we're talking about the future of the community. As to the report, I'm very concerned that really no attention's being paid on the financial impact of what is outlined. This gets to Frye's. Frye's has been one of our leading sales tax generators, and to sort of lightly ignore that, I think, is unfortunate. In the past, we've sort of moved heaven and earth to see what we could do to keep Frye's in Palo Alto. Our discussions with Frye's have gotten nowhere in the past. They refuse to talk, but maybe now they, they are willing to, and I think we need to know what their plans are and what the, what the landowners' plans are. This is not, whether it's unilaterally up to Frye's, I don't know. But I think we also need to think about, would we want to have a successor to Frye's if Frye's is not willing to be there? The assumption here seems to be that no Frye's, no, no sales tax generator there, and that's a financial hit to our, our, our city, and that we need to think about that. So I'm not so quick to rule out Frye's or a successor. And I want to use whatever time I have left just to give a few remarks about the jobs, housing imbalance, because people seem to accept this as an article of faith. I do not. I agree that we need housing, but people talk about the jobs, housing imbalance as if we've committed some sin by having lots of jobs here in Palo Alto, quite the contrary. I think actually, when you look at the history of cities around the world or job centers, you get what, primarily, you get what we have here. That is, that jobs tend to congregate in particular places, housing moves to the periphery. So I don't think we should be, be beating ourselves to, over the head, saying that we've done something bad. Quite the contrary, we've done something good. Jobs tend to congregate. There's a recent article in the Wall Street Journal about how a section of London, called the City of London, has 8,000 people living in it and has 430,000 jobs, and they continually turn down housing. So their ratio of jobs, housing is over 50 to one, and somehow it's very, very successful. And I urge you to take a look at that. So I think that we should stop feeling that we have to be enthralled to that idea. We may have to comply with the ABAG and whether we can get them... We may have to comply with A-BAG, and whether we can get them to take a different look at it is another story. But I think we need to look more deeply, and I look forward to a more in-depth conversation when we have this special meeting or add it on to some other meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, I'm actually going to try to abide by the motion, which is focusing on the VTA grant, and nobody else has been doing that. I don't know why. So, first, there's trepidation by some of us based upon some of the prior grant applications that our transportation manager had done without policy direction from the council, and that ultimately were somewhat contrary to the policy inclinations that the council had. So my question is, if we apply for this grant, what constraints will be placed upon us? What are we committing to, to the VTA? Are they going to give us a grant just because we say we're going to do a master plan of this area? Or is it a master plan that does certain things that they want to see, which may not be exactly what we want to see? And we haven't determined that.
Just quickly, we, as a city, would be able to develop the scope of work and direct this project. We would be using a consultant selected by the VTA, so they would take charge of all the administrative, you know, circulating of invoices and paying bills, but we would be directing the project. And I should say also, all we're asking for today is permission to apply for the grant. We would still come back to you with a scope of work.
Yeah, but our application, our application says we're going to do certain things at the Calav area in order to try to get the grant. They're not going to give us a grant to turn this into R1 neighborhood.
We're applying for the grant and eligible for the grant because it's already designated as a planned development area.
And are you saying that that is all that we have to commit to, is that we're going to do a plan for our planned development area?
Pretty much it, right?
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what we're saying. And I'd also like to make the point that this will come back to council at the point at which we have a specific scope of work. And at that point, if you don't want to proceed, you can tell us, don't proceed. I mean, this is not a irrevocable decision this evening.
Okay, so that's an important clarification. Wasn't anywhere in the staff report, wasn't anywhere in the prior clarifications. To me, that matters, and that helps determine this. So now, I'll just briefly say that I was on this thing, this thing's been going around for a long time, seven-plus years, and I was there on the groundwork. And what we're seeing here has elements of what we were envisioning and some real differences. That plan was for a pedestrian and transit-oriented district where pedestrian and bicycle access and use would be the predominant and most convenient form of accessing and using that district. And the vision from that would flow from that, from, the programs would flow from that vision. It was also, as Councilmember Schmidt spoke about, we were looking at increasing the housing in this area, and what we have is a plan that would increase the commercial as much or more as the housing, would decrease the retail at both the Frye's site and the automotive, where we have this concept of the technology overlay that goes over the top of our automotive overlay, which was there for really specific policy reasons, both service and for retail to retain that years ago. And that's a big decision, and one I don't think I'd agree with. And so, I think we're going to really need to think about this. When you look at that overlay and the density, even with staff having corrected their error on what they put in the staff report on the FAR for the Frye's site, we're talking 1.5 FAR along that entire technology overlay and 2.0 FAR at the entire Frye's site. Those are higher-density FARs than what was at, on the J-Paul site, not across the street in the parking garage in the police building. It's higher FARs. So we're talking about, we had, we were, we thought we were stepping over a cliff on the J-Paul site? We're running over the Grand Canyon potentially on approving these major upzonings without real consideration.
Councilmember Scharf.
Could I just add something? Pat, I'm not disputing, I want to be absolutely sure we ultimately get these FARs nailed down straight, and whether you can do that now or not, but, you know, I think that, you know, pretty quickly coming back to council so that we're clear.
Well, and I'd double-check on the existing of that technology, or it says light industrial, is it GM or is it light industrial? And what FAR is that? I mean, we don't have the FARs on a lot of these things. We have this chart that was vitally important that got corrected. It still says there's, it's not applicable for residential and neighborhood, commercial, service, commercial, and regional commercial, because it says you can't do a wholly residential. But it makes no reference to the total FAR and the amount of residential that would be allowed there. So, it's very misleading, and we don't have time to go through the myriad of concerns that I have over the responses to the questions that were asked.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scharf.
All right, several points. The first one is ground-floor retail. I didn't quite see where we were going to have a ground-floor retail requirement and where we weren't as part of this. One of the things that's clear to me is Cafe Riachi is very successful as a restaurant. It's really great space and all of that. We don't need to have all of our restaurants on California Avenue. And that's clearly where it's moving, to some extent. Everything new seems to be a restaurant. So one of the things I'd suggest is when we do the Frye's site, we have a requirement for retail in that a certain percentage has to be ground-floor retail. And frankly, if it's restaurants, I don't think that's a bad thing. But I think we need to provide other spaces in that area, and I think the more we have it, some ground-floor retail requirements there, the more we're going to get that. And that creates that walkable and service feeling. I mean, it's, it's a bit of a hike, actually, from the Frye's site to California Avenue. So I think you want to provide that and focus on those amenities. I thought it was also really important to make a distinction between rental housing and non-rental housing. So, I also am sort of where Larry is on the jobs, housing imbalance. I don't think it's a sin. I think it's good for Palo Alto. I think it's made us who we are. I think it's created huge amounts of jobs. I think that's fine. The question is, is how do we get people out of their cars? And I think it's false to just say if we build housing next to it, people will get out of their cars. Most of the people who buy that housing aren't necessarily going to work there. I think we have to think about this in reality, is that if you place it along the Caltrain station, people may work in San Francisco, they may work in Redwood City, they may work, and so that's a good thing. I think that rental housing, they're much more likely to do it. You know, I think when people get a job, they may originally work somewhere, but then their jobs switch, they don't necessarily sell their housing unit. It's not always that easy to move out of Palo Alto and move up to something bigger. So I think we need to think about what's real here. And one of the things that I've always liked about Palo Alto and the city councils, we're data-driven, and we don't have any data on this. I mean, I can tell you that my gut sense is that renters, just from anecdotal evidence, rent near the Caltrain station where their work allows them, or rent near their work. In fact, I've seen studies that say people rent near where they work. I do not believe people buy near where near they work. So if we really want to, you know, address this issue, I'd like to see that, thinking about making it rental housing, or at least a portion of it rental housing. I was a little confused too about where we are in terms of, you know, for instance, the Holbach property is going in, that's a mixed-use project, as far as I can tell. And yet, it looks like it's zoned here as light industrial, frankly. Whereas I thought that was actually zoned general manufacturing, if I recall, and that was why, he was on the housing element site, but it was general manufacturing. But anyway, I'm not going to argue it, I just think it's a little confusing. And then the other thing is, if we really want to have a technology corridor and focus on startups, is what the staff report seems to indicate, you can't just have a big office building and say, that's okay. You're just going to get a big company like Groupon. I mean, nothing against Groupon, but that's not a startup. If you really want startups, you're going to have to think about, what does that space look like and how do you limit it? That probably means you have to say to people, you can't rent your space, you have to break your space up into 1,800 square feet, or 3,000 square feet, or 5,000 square feet. I mean, I don't know what it is, but someone needs to look at that and say, what's conducive to a startup? Because it's not, because if you're a landlord, you're going to say, I want to, you know, lease a Google the entire building or to whoever it is. So I mean, I think we need to focus if we really mean that. We can't just say startups and then basically allow large companies to come in and do that without, if that's really the thought. The other thing I think I wanted to address was, let's see, the retail, technology overlay. So are we actually upzoning these along the technology corridor significantly? I was unclear on that. I know you had a chart, but it was a little unclear to me, what we're doing.
There is an increase in FAR along the technology corridor, yes.
Okay. That means like I have a minute. So since I only have a minute left, I'm actually going to move that we approve that, that council goes ahead and submits the VTA grant.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Do I get to speak to my motion then?
Of course I should.
You know, this is where, obviously, the council, obviously, the mayor does not, cannot limit people to speak, and I certainly don't want anybody to think that that's what I'm trying to get to do, but I am trying to make it so that, you know, we do have a little better path forward, so we can be equitable about this. Do you mind if we take up the motion after we go through the, I've got three more speakers?
That's fine with me.
And then we can take up your motion if you don't mind?
We just have a hard stop at 10:45, so I wanted to get the motion out there.
Right. Okay, so the next person is Councilmember Berman.
I was hoping it wasn't us. So, I mean, I, as painful as it was, I think tonight's process was a good one, because clearly we're going to need a little more conversation on some of these issues. I, you know, I don't think we should chastise ourselves for our housing to jobs imbalance, but I don't think it's a good thing. It's, I don't want to live in a city that is a 50 to 1 housing imbalance that reminds me of kind of Los Angeles 15 years ago with downtown Los Angeles, where it's a bunch of skyscrapers with offices and a few skyscrapers with housing, but that's not a very vibrant community. And that's, that's not what I want in Palo Alto. So I think it's good to have jobs. I think we need more housing, and I think that this is an ideal place to plan for it. You know, some overarching things, I was, two priorities jumped out at me in the plan, which were safety on Park Boulevard, and you can extend that to safety everywhere for bicyclists and pedestrians. You know, Park Boulevard isn't at its, at its peak safety level right now, especially not for the use, I guess, both from vehicles and from bicyclists. And so we need to, you know, be as creative and thorough as possible to make that a safer area between Calav and south. And then maintaining the small-town feel of the business district. I, I love what we're doing with the California Avenue Streetscape Plan, I think that's fantastic. But I don't want to turn Calav into downtown Palo Alto, I don't want to turn it into Castro Street in Mountain View. You know, I think it has a certain charm to it that we need to, you know, work hard to maintain, so that includes, you know, ground-floor retail overlay. I think Councilmember Scharf was right in terms of the diversity of different entities, business entities, I think is incredibly important. And spreading that out across that area, including the Frye's site, I think makes a lot of sense, so that you don't have to walk from, you know, here to restaurants, to there to shop, to there to the, you know, let's try to have a little better mix. And this gives us the opportunity to plan that out. Somebody mentioned the Page Mall-Oregon intersection, and I think they were kind of using it as an excuse not to build anything here. I disagree with that, but it's a bad intersection. And so, to the extent, and there wasn't much discussion about it in here, it's on the edge and, but, you know, maybe there's nothing we can do there at the moment, and if so, then I'll stop agonizing over it. But, but I don't know that we've had that conversation yet and thought of creative ways to improve the traffic flow there. And going along with what some other colleagues have mentioned, you know, it would be really helpful to have in a clear way a table discussing the changes in FAR in the different areas that, that helps us make our decisions, you know, understanding really how we're changing an area. How much time do I have? A minute and a half? I think that kind of covers the overarching ideas I had. I'll support the motion for the grant and look forward to the more thorough discussion later. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
So, going immediately to the grant, I want to make very, very, very sure I understand what we would be committing to, because the letter, it's not a memorandum of understanding, that's how it's referred to in the staff report, but this just says memorandum, to the city managers. It says, "Each CMA should design a PDA planning program, da-da-da-da, that emphasize and support growth in housing, employment, and transportation within its PDAs." Then skipping down, it says, "That will result in," hang on a second, "The goal of enabling transit-oriented housing and employment growth in Santa Clara County's PDAs will result in intensified land uses," and I'm skipping down here, "will result in intensified land uses around public transit hubs, rail corridors in Santa Clara County," and skipping down again, "enable developments in planned or potential PDAs." That's the purpose. And the policy planning must include the entire PDA. So, sometimes, as Councilmember Burt said, it seems like we have applied for funding that then commits us to an outcome. So I want to make sure that if we apply to this, we are not committing to any kind of outcome in terms of what level of intensification that the VTA envisions for our community. That's exceedingly important.
Thank you. So basically, part of the whole process would be, you know, we would have to go through a scoring process based on other applications. If we are chosen to be given the grant, part of the process is developing a memorandum of understanding between us and VTA, and it's the city that determines what the project should entail, provided that it meets the policies and goals that you reference. But it is the city that determines what the parameters of the project is. The city is the one that also approves the scope of work with a consultant, so the city does retain some amount of, actually, a great amount of control over the process. That was a significant concern that we had when we were first analyzing the grant application, and we did have a subsequent conversation with VTA to basically try to get some clarification about the amount of control that we would have.
Thank you for that. And for me, so we'll, we'll see the memorandum of understanding and approve it, correct?
That was stated, or definitely.
Okay, just want to make absolutely sure, because it is a critical point with me and, I think, with the community. So, that said, just some comments about the plan itself. Akin to, I guess these were Councilmember Burt's comments, I think the responses that we got, some of them still leave me with questions. You know, the response about parkland needs, it talks about, you know, the ability to use in lufies, and it talks about accessible open space and plazas, and a linear park about Metador Creek, but it doesn't really talk about, and it isn't addressed in the plan, as far as I can see, really creating a park, creating significant open space. We have, you know, little areas here or there, which don't get it for me. We really need some drawings. It said in one of the responses that there were some drawings. We need to know what some of this development as proposed would look like. The community needs to know that. There have been prior community meetings, I don't know what the outcome of those were, except for, we have this plan in front of us, what did the community have to say? There are a lot of issues here having to do with adjacencies, for me, and I mentioned, I referenced the question about buffer zones. I don't see any buffers or any reference to really buffers, except there's the reference to compatibility, but we're talking pretty, pretty broad, broad-brush strokes when you look at this, at this plan. I think there's some confusion. The land use designations, for instance, the light industrial, I think the zoning for light industrial is GM. I could be wrong on that, I could be a little bit rusty, but I think it's helpful if we have not only the existing comp plan designations, but also what the existing zonings are in these areas. I think it's really helpful. That helps us understand what's going on there. When I read this, I have to say, it just seems to me as a plan for redevelopment. It really just looks like a plan for redevelopment for me. There are areas that need to be improved, we will have some redevelopment. I don't know much of anybody that's a no-growth person or a non-development person, but this really reads to me like a redevelopment document. It's how, it's how it seems to me. I think there are a lot of missed opportunities here, because I look at adjacencies in terms of.
Okay, that's five minutes, Karen. Okay, that's five minutes, Karen. So we've, we've got a hard stop in 15 minutes, so, thank you. Councilmember Price?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I always appreciate it, and I appreciate the comments made by colleagues and the public. I feel very positive and hopeful about this concept plan because I think it provides us a terrific opportunity to, in conjunction with our, our Palo Alto discussions, really become more refined and more thoughtful about the kinds of decisions that we are in the process of, of making. And I guess a couple of observations I would make. First of all, related to the VTA grant, I absolutely support the application. I think it's important to remember, and I think you've mentioned this, that this is not a kind of a prescriptive set of activities. There's a sort of a transactional, ongoing iteration, and we will have many chances to respond to what you bring forward to us. I think what I'm seeing and feeling right here is that I think we are asking a lot of details about items that haven't been fleshed out yet. From, from my observation, I think, the, the questions are certainly valid, but these are the kinds of things that will come up and will be revised as the plan is refined and these discussions continue with the public and, you know, as we go through this process. I think I will very much, I do very much align myself with all of the comments made by the, I'm not sure if it's the Green Planning Network or the Green Network, but I don't know the name of the group per se, but all of the comments made by individuals associated with that planning network, I definitely agree with. The jobs-housing balance is a kind of a standard planning practice. It's been used for years and years, and it has, it's sort of, it morphs over time. It depends on the community. Now, we're in a trend, a period of transition, and at least from my perspective and other people who've said this, we definitely need more housing. And given the imbalance we already have, it, I'm not sure if we'll ever really get to, you know, closer because of frankly, the land costs here and the fact that to develop land in any residential properties at the, at this level to the capacity that we need is going to be very, very challenging. I think this is a tremendous opportunity to move forward, and I look forward to further discussion. One question I have about the sub-areas that were identified in the plan. We talk in terms of a master plan, which is very clear. We know what that means. Are you precluding or not the option for a site-specific plan for the Frye's site, which is a, you know, a, a separate vehicle that allows, you know, specific development standards and guidelines that apply to a specific geographic area? Are you precluding that opportunity or are you not? And if you could explain your thinking on that?
Well, that, that's what we would use the VTA grant for. It would be a site-specific master plan for the Frye's site.
Okay.
So we would get to that level of specificity and detail on that site with the grant.
Okay. And so the issues of, for instance, on the Park Boulevard area, it says, within the presentation, combines high standards for design and appropriate incentives, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that would be built into the language of a specific planning process that would address the, the guidelines for the development and the realization of the goals for these sub-areas. Is that correct?
Right now, we're proposing to only cover the Frye's site in the site-specific plan. The rest of this area would be covered by the language in the concept plan, other policies of the comprehensive plan, and by the zoning that may have to be adjusted to implement the plan that's ultimately adopted.
Okay. So the real drilling down in terms of detail and, and intensity of effort would be focusing on the Frye's site is a significant mixed-use site. I think the language in, in the concept plan at this stage gives you a lot of flexibility, but I think, again, to support the VTA application, I think it is really critical to be able to have you look at this sort of more intensively so that we have something more substantial to respond to. And I certainly hope that we vote to have you move ahead, and there will be other times to review this. I look forward to more discussion about the California concept plan.
And I hate to say this, but Vice Mayor Niss, it's your turn. So are you, are you able to manage?
I will be extremely brief.
And we have a hard stop in less than 10 minutes, so.
Let me add just three things. I think the economic analysis that's been mentioned is critical. I think more data is critical. I always worry about mixed use. That has not always been a great success in this community. And last, I strongly support the grant. And I think that's enough, and I'll submit other comments that I have in writing and make it briefer by doing that.
Well, thank you very much. I'm going to turn to the motion and the maker of the motion. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, just very briefly, I want to say that I got a lot of comfort that we are not locking ourselves into anything here. And this, I don't want the community to think that we're then, by taking this grant in any way, we're predetermining the outcome of this because we've been assured that we're not. And, you know, given that, given that we're in effect, what we're really doing is just saving Palo Alto's money by applying for the grant. I mean, it seems like the right thing to do, so I would hope that we'd all support it. Thanks.
I seconded that, and I think you spoke eloquently to this. I also want to point out that many people think that we only do our housing element and comply with ABAG numbers in order to get grants like this. We have to comply to the ABAG numbers because they are state-mandated, and if we don't meet our, meet our deadlines on that, then we will not be able to do our own zoning on that, that we will be forced to do the zoning, and there are a lot of sticks out there that are making us do that for a different reason. And so I support this grant because, again, it's going to be doing what we're going to be doing anyway. It's focusing on exactly the area where we have a lot of angst in this community, council included, me included. I would like to see this particular segment of California Avenue designed much more specifically and get to that design phase. So with no more lights, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a vote. And that motion carries. You have your grant, City Manager?
So thank you. Glad to see unanimous vote. So if I just might make a couple of comments. So first of all, I thought, you know, in this, whatever, 45 minutes or an hour we had, actually, there were a lot of comments made by the council, very good, very helpful. I mean, they covered a lot of territory. Obviously, we could get a lot more detail about them, but, you know, emphasizing the pedestrian transportation piece and being more visionary in these issues about housing, all of these things, the, the different data needs, more clarity. I mean, you know, understandable, this is what happens, you know, we get questions, a whole bunch of them, and the staff, you know, works for an hour or two in the afternoon, and, and it is incomplete in that regard. Here's my suggestion. I was trying to think, could we come back next week? But I, I think we have a little more reconnoitering we need to do even just based on the comments that you've talked about, that I want to be able to talk with the planning director and the staff a little bit about how we would frame this and, you know, how we can organize some of this information. Because I think what you want to do is, in, in a lot of ways, that you're sort of preparing this release ultimately from the council for sort of the public response and the ability to integrate it with the EIR work that's going to need to be done on the plan itself. You know, but, but I, I mean, I, I think trying to come back with, I guess my sense was trying to push to, to next week, but I'm just wondering if, if, if a few more weeks and working somehow with the mayor on the scheduling of this to get a session, a follow-up session would be good. And then secondly, I really have to make a plea for this. I think we have to start looking sometimes at being able to schedule some afternoon sessions on items like this, particularly when you're, the council's talking, you're not making a decision, you know, but you're informing things that you're going to direct for us to be able to come back. So I'd, I'd like to keep a little flexibility in that. We're going to be going into May, and we're going to have Boku Finance Committee meetings and all sorts of evenings and that sort of stuff, so just, just some thoughts there.
Do you mind if I, if, if. Forgive me, I just wanted to add one thought, which is, we're really at the, we're, we're on a long journey here with this comprehensive plan. There's been a lot of work done to date, but we have a lot of work to do, and we're trying to structure these conversations so that we can embark on this next phase, which according to the schedule you saw in March, has us really picking up the pace starting in May. So what I was going to ask, I, you know, apologize to those of you who felt our responses weren't responsive. If there are questions that you still have after this evening, of course, you know, we'd be happy to receive them like we receive questions on, on council items in a routine way. And if we could try and respond to those at our May 5 study session and devote sufficient time in that study session to at least make really good progress on the material that will be presented. And at that point, we might be able to judge how much additional time we would need to embark on this next phase, which as I say, is going to start moving. We're going to start the public meetings in May. We're going to start spending real dollars on analysis and outreach and, and all of that. So the sooner we can get your input and feedback and some of the substantive kind of comments and questions we got this evening, the better it will be, I think. So that's.
Okay.
Okay. I, I know we've got a couple of minutes left, and there's two lights here.
Okay, sir.
We're done. Okay, that's, then I, then I will move on to the next item.
Well, however.
Point of order.
Point of order.
The original motion had a third piece to it of whether we wanted to vote on a return. Have we done, are we satisfied?
Yes, that was my point.
I think that we just heard from the City Manager that that's what they're intending to do. So are you?
I have clarification around that.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought I was very, I was very clear about coming back, and then the planning director suggested, well, we're going, we already have scheduled at least a two-hour session on the comp plan, of which it will include this. And if that, we'll be able to see at the end of that where we are. So I would presume, you know, if, and, and I don't think that this is just any piece of the comp plan. I think that there are some, some areas within the city that, I mean, you know, 95% of the city, as far as its urban form or its, its land use form is going to stay the same in this, at the end of this comp plan from now. But there are a few places like this area that are already, you've already identified them as areas where some change and redesign and needs to take place. And it could very well be, the council will feel as you go through this comp planning process that you want some more intensive focus earlier on, like on this. That's what I'm hearing you guys say.
Now I'm confused.
Why? I think I'm.
Were we having a separate meeting on this or not?
We're, right now, we're talking about coming back on May 5 as part of the comp plan session since we have it, and we'll talk about it a little bit then, and then at the end of that meeting, we can also look at having another session.
Okay, thank you. The way I understand it is we will pick this up.
We can have 20 sessions if you guys want. We'll do whatever you want.
Right.
You know, but we're, we're, we've already got something scheduled, and we can do another one. I can say this, we're committed to in being, ensuring that the council releases it to the public when you're ready to release it to the public.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to move on to the next item, which is item number 15, which staff has requested be continued until April 29. Do I need a?
I'll put my light on.
So moved.
No, I put my light on.
And.
Point of order.
Yes, Councilmember Scharf had his light on.
Good. So I have to be back in Washington, D.C. with NCPA, with our utility department next week, protecting municipal powers' interests against public power and those kind of things. And I was one of the original writers of the colleague's memo, and that was back in October of 2012. And I would ask that, I'll actually move this, that we defer this item to after, to May 5 or after, to a date uncertain unless the mayor has, or has something, what date you'd like to do it. Because I won't be here on April 29, and it's a Tuesday, and I was on the original colleague's memo, and I'd really appreciate that from my colleagues, frankly.
Would you like to speak further to your motion?
Yeah, I mean, I think I spoke to it mostly. I just would really appreciate that since I really have to be on council business with utilities department back in Washington, D.C., and I can't make the Tuesday meeting.
Madam Mayor, could the attorney just weigh in real quick just for a second?
Okay, clarification to the mayor and the maker of the motion. I think because this is a publicly noticed hearing, it would be most efficient in terms of public notice and the clerk's operations to actually select a subsequent, a, a particular date, and perhaps the clerk has some guidance on that.
Why don't we see if we can get five votes to move it off of the calendar on the 29th? And I would appreciate taking that action right now, and then if we do get the five votes, we can come up with a date. Councilmember Price? Price, thank you. Would you like to speak to a second?
Yes, I concur with everything Councilmember Scharf has said. I think as a courtesy to the writers or the authors of the original motion, it seems appropriate they should be there to participate in this important conversation.
Councilmember Klein?
I'll move a substitute motion that we move it to October 29, I mean, April 29.
I think the mayor had already moved the previous, right?
No. I'm sorry, I didn't move it. We, 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 I reverted it back to you even though you tried to, to make a motion and you, I think you had Councilmember Berman, but let's see if you have a second. So there's a substitute motion for moving it to the 29th or keeping it on the 29th, and it fails for a lack of a second. So Councilmember Schmidt?
We're voting just on removing it from the 29th. I guess, is there a commitment to do it soon thereafter? I mean, we've got a calendar on the.
Actually, that's what we're going to try to figure out if we get five votes to move it off from the 29th. Right now, it was noticed to here tonight. It was, it needed to get re-noticed, so the soonest we could put it on is we, it was a little clumsy, but last week we moved our meeting from Monday to Tuesday in order to get enough council members available to take on a council meeting. And so it's been noticed for next, next Tuesday, and so then we will have to go and notice again for a new one. So that's how it will go. So we will find out if we have five votes to move this.
Yeah, I guess the question is, are there five votes to reset it as well?
We'll find out. Yeah. We will, that's what we're going to find out.
I don't want to remove it without finding that out.
Yeah, that's what we're going to find out. So I have Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I believe the motion that's on the board isn't exactly what was stated because the motion that's here says, continue this item to May 5 or later, not just, not to take it off.
Yeah, we can't take it up on the 5th, so it'll be much later.
Well, so what was stated is the motion, though, which was different than this, is to take this item off the April 29 agenda.
Right. Is it possible for us to just see if we have the five votes to move it to another?
But it, but it needed to be what we were voting on. Now it's changed, okay. All right, now it's changed.
Right. Okay. Councilmember Klein?
Well, I, I can.
Go try, I heard it. I know.
First of all, this was never on the agenda for October 29, for April 29. We were moving to get it done on the, on the agenda for April 29, so we could be clear in what we're doing. Well, I recognize the courtesy that Councilmember Scharf has asked for, and sometimes we've done that. I think, though, in this case, it's a very dangerous precedent. We have a very, very crowded calendar throughout the year, and I think if we're going to give in to requests like this, that we're, we may never get things done. We just have to face the fact that when you go off doing something else for city reasons or other reasons, that you, you can't make every meeting, and the, and the council has to move forward. So I'm very concerned, not so much about this issue, but the precedent that, that we're setting. We just have to move along. We have nine members, Quorbs five, we've basically never had a meeting with this five, but we have lots of meetings with less than nine, and when the person can't make it, that person can't make it. We've got to move forward.
I would like to support the comments that Councilmember Klein has made because I think that we have a lot of agenda to get done this year, and it's been difficult, it was difficult to try to get the library naming on an agenda item for two members of Policy and Services that wanted to do something. Now it's the same situation. It was very difficult to try to get things noticed properly last week, just last week in order to get enough council members. And so I think that members just need to be very mindful of the tentative agenda. I'm going to go ahead and support this in order, out of courtesy for one of the makers, but quite frankly, the moment that we vote a colleague's memo, you know, all nine of us, I think, voted for this one, so all of us took it up and wanted to take it up. And so I think we all care deeply about this one. So, but, but going forward, I think we need to be a little more careful. So, but going forward, I think we need to be a little more careful about that, and maybe the city manager can help explain to us how colleagues memo, do they always revert back to the people that wrote that? Or once the colleagues, once all colleagues vote on it, it does become the work of council. And with that said, let's go ahead and vote.
When are we voting?
We're voting to move it off of council item for the 29th, and then we will select a date.
In the future?
Yes, that if this fails, then we will revert to the motion tonight, which is to have it be heard next Tuesday on the 29th.
He just wants it moved.
He wants it moved off the 29th. And that motion carries with Councilmember Klein voting no. So do we have a date that we could hear this?
So, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, looking at the upcoming agendas, actually, right now, June 2nd, Monday, June 2nd would be the best. We only, we have a closed session and two study sessions and.
What about May 12?
Only one.
Can't do it then.
One.
We have vacancies.
No, no items yet on the, for action. So that would be a good meeting.
Okay. So now I need to have a motion that it's moved to a date specific?
I'm sorry, City Manager King, we did get this afternoon, they moved, I thought we moved an item.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So we, and we have to make, move to a date specific, correct?
In order to not advertise again, it would always be helpful if we could be clear to the public where we're moving this, because it has been advertised twice with two different dates.
Okay. In that case, do I need a motion to do that now, or can I just set the date? So I need a motion to move it to the council meeting on June 2nd. I'm gonna go ahead and make that motion.
We have a lot of items on the 19th. The planning director is not here on the 12th of May, so that's why it shows a second, and there's no items on the action agenda for the 19th.
So I don't have a second to move it to?
Second.
All right. I see no lights. Do you want to speak to your second? No, okay, let's go ahead and vote. So that motion carries unanimously. We will hear that item on the 2nd of June. So now we are into our new legislative element or portion of our agenda, and we have.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I just noticed an error in the motion. It says to continue agenda item number 14. It's item number 15.
Yes, thank you. So we've got Intergovernmental Legislative Affairs, and we have three items under this. And the first item, we have scheduled for 10 minutes. We have our former mayor speaking to us about this, introducing it for us. This is Mid Peninsula Open Space District's initiative, and Yuriko Kishimoto is the Director of the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable members of the council. It's great to be back here, and I was really thrilled to hear the progress made, being made on the climate plan. So actually, this might be a really great time for this item to appear on the council because you can look at the beautiful picture, and it says room to breathe, so everybody can take a deep breath. And remember that against the urbanization that we're talking about, open space is what we're about. So I'm gonna, I am definitely gonna speak five minutes or less about giving an update on Mid Pen Open Space, the vision plan, and our request to have you support the resolution in favor of Measure AA. Nonet Henkoe would be here with me, but unfortunately, she's struggling with a bout of sciatica. She's at home, hopefully still awake, watching us. So just briefly, this district was created 42 years ago by overwhelming public support, thanks to people like Nonet Henkoe and Larry Klein was, was, was part of, part of that founding group as well. And it's all, and as you know, the mission is threefold: acquisition of open space to save in perpetuity, to restore the environment, to make it better, and three, to open it up for public, public access. And the, our policy is set by a seven-member Board of Directors, of which I'm proud to serve on. And in those 42 years, we've acquired 62,000 acres, opened up and operate 220 miles of trails, and receive millions of visits a year. And as you probably agree, our Mid Peninsula would be unrecognizable today without the support of the public for, for our open space. So thank you very much for our support. So these are some of the benefits we bring to the region. So these are the policy reasons why hopefully you'll, you'll support us tonight. The quality of life, the clean air and clean water, healthy lifestyles, and the benefits we bring to the public. And, and the vision plan. So at the, at the end of the 42, 42 years, we asked ourselves, well, what's, what's next? Do we slow down? Do we need to do more? So we embarked on a vision plan twofold. One is science-based, so we went to the best science, scientists, and they said, well, this is what we've acquired, look at wildlife corridors. We've looked at which are the most important watersheds to restore. And then we also had a big public process, which our own Karen Holman, we were proud to have her as co-chair, says, thank you very much, Councilmember Karen, Karen Holman. And as a result of the very extensive vision process, they told us very clearly that they wanted more, they wanted more public access. Actually, half of our land is still not open because we don't have the resources to open it yet. They want, they do want to have strategic more open space and restoration, redwood forests. We came up with a list of 50-some projects, which we whittled further down to 25 projects. And so we'll just spend 30, 30 seconds just on projects which are closest to Palo Alto. Some are definitely the ones on the Bay, Bay Shore, to, to work on the Bay Trail, close the gaps, as you've talked about with the Stanford mitigation funds. Another is the Windy Hill to improve the projects there. And specifically, I know you've been talking about the foothill addition to the foothill park. The Hawthorns area, which is not open yet, would actually back up fairly close to that. So you'll see another really wonderful connection from the Palo Alto parks to Windy Hill. Bicycleists will be thrilled to hear that we'll be restoring and improving Alpine Road as a trail, and, and open space is talking about taking it over as a trail. And then Rancho San Antonio is the single most popular preserve, and we're talking about using the funding to build a welcome center there and also improve the transit access somehow. But of course, we're part of the spectacular larger region. And so you have before you the list of the 25 projects. There are 25 pretty spectacular projects. Many are on the coast side, big ranches, kind of more bay-to-sea trails, really sweeping views that you'll see on the ocean while we're protecting our farms and grazing. And the Ridge Line, which I'll skip over quickly. And this really gets to the crux of the issue, which is that we are going to the public on June 3rd, coming up very quickly, to ask the public for support, for authorization to issue up to $300 million over the next few decades. The impact on the taxpayer would not exceed $3.18 per year, per 100,000 assessed value, so not market value, but assessed value. So, and of course, we, much, many of the years, it'll be much less than $3.18, hopefully. It'll start out at a dollar. And to put this in perspective, if your house is assessed at half a million, we're talking about $15 a year. If it's assessed at 1 million, it's, we're talking about $30. So it's, it's a, it's a small ask for Mid Pen to continue the work that we've been doing in the three areas. Importantly, we do, we will be having a public oversight committee to, to make sure that we deliver on our promises. And I think that's it. So I, I ask you for your support.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna send this right over to Councilmember Holman, who might give you some support, so.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And thank you to former Mayor Kishimoto for coming to speak to us. And it was a pleasure to serve on the Citizens Advisory Committee. It's a long process and a great number of people who participated in that. And I won't name names, but you would know many of them as leading environmentalists and experts in variety of fields. One thing that I just wanted to point out, that maybe you want to speak a little bit more to this, Yuriko, but this project also will affect in other ways our local community, our Palo Alto community, because it talks about corridors for wildlife. So it helps support that so that you don't have isolated large areas that are preserved in wonderful, but it really does support those wildlife corridors. So with that, I will move approval of the resolution in support of Measure AA, Regional Open Space Access Preservation Restoration Bond on the June 3, 2014 ballot.
I don't think we need to vote on that one. Would you like to speak any further?
I think I've spoken enough, except I think a lot of council members have already supported this individually, so I look forward to, I hope, a unanimous vote in support of this resolution. Thank you.
I'm not sure who to pick as a second here. Did I hear you, Gail? Okay, go ahead. Vice Councilmember Price, do you want to speak at all? Okay, I think we're just gonna go straight to the vote then. And I think you got some support. Where are you? There you are. That passes unanimously. And thank you very much for coming down and waiting through. And so our next agenda item is one that's very time-sensitive. It is the Caltrain Draft Environmental Impact Report Comment Letter. And I have, we have staff here tonight. Richard Hackman is taking charge of this, and Aaron is here too. Hi, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor Shepard and City Council. Quickly before we start, I'd like to acknowledge the Caltrain staff that has come out tonight to support us in the event that we have any questions. Obviously, it's now late in the evening for them, but they wanted to be here in case you had any direct questions for them. So following our presentation, we do questions, feel free to ask them anything staff's not able to answer. So quickly, I'll do a brief presentation. The staff report was pretty extensive, so I'll let a lot of that speak for itself, but just wanted to do a quick overview for you and the public. Generally, the project is 51-plus miles. It spans from San Francisco to San Jose, and it's electrification project that's been proposed via overhead contact system, which most people know as catenary wires. It proposes going to six trains per peak hour per direction. That's an increase from five trains per peak hour per direction at the current time. It would also restore service at the Atherton and Broadway stations, and the trains would go up to 79 miles per hour, which is the same as today. Just a brief timeline, notice of preparation was issued on January 31, 2013. The City of Palo Alto responded to that in March of 2013, prior to the deadline. Caltrain then released their draft EIR in February of this year, and comments on that are due by April 29. It's anticipated that the final EIR will be released this fall with certification in the winter. So in terms of what CECL requires, identify an environmental baseline, analyze direct, indirect, and cumulative impacts, compare impacts to significant criteria, identify feasible mitigation for significant impacts, consider alternatives, and look at reasonable worst-case assumptions. So Caltrain's project goals as a part of the CIR are to improve the Caltrain system performance, increase service, reduce fuel costs, reduce environmental impacts, and make something that's blended system compatible. Some key project benefits would be improved air quality, increased servicing capacity, and reduced regional traffic congestion. Some project concerns are tree removal, catenary wire installation impacts, electromagnetic fields, and local traffic impacts. Once again, the city's NOP letter that went out identified 19 areas for additional analysis. The city's draft EIR letter that's before you identifies seven areas for additional analysis. Those are impacts on local traffic, catenary wire installation, pedestrian accessibility, ridership estimates and Caltrain service impacts, construction impacts, the visual impact of Parallel Station 5, and impacts on historic resources. Just a couple brief points on why not DMUs, which have been brought up before. The reason stated in the draft EIR is that they do not meet the project purpose to provide electrical infrastructure compatible with high-speed rail. And then in addition to that, the environmental improvements and operational improvements of DMUs were identified to be not as great as those of an electrified system. Why not longer trains and platforms? The reason given in the EIR was that it provides increased capacity but does not meet the project purpose to provide increased service. And then just before you get into your discussion, a few considerations. Project benefits and impacts should be weighed in context of the Palo Alto corridors as a whole, and comments should be focused on items the city needs addressed in the final EIR. So with that, we will take your comments and input on the draft letter before you.
Okay, I have a number of speakers tonight under oral communication, so I'm gonna go out to the speakers first, and you'll have three minutes, three minutes to speak on this item. Our first speaker is Adina Levin, to be followed by Sven Deason.
Good evening, councilmembers, Adina Levin, Friends of Caltrain. And I'll talk about a couple of the specific items, but first, just overall, Friends of Caltrain very strongly supports Caltrain electrification. With Palo Alto as the number-two highest ridership city on the line, Palo Alto really stands to benefit substantially from this project. You know, as the council was just talking about the Calav plan and the potential to have more service in the Calav area, electrification really makes that possible by the trains that are able to make more stops and starts and keep the same schedule and have more stops than Calav. The overall, the city's plans for TDM and reducing vehicle trips depends heavily on having Caltrain continue and have increased capacity. So I urge you to support electrification in making these comments on the project. And then a couple of nitty-gritty items on the letter, which overall has a lot of rich detail on some of the important nuances for Palo Alto, including trees and noise and the visual impact. One of the comments asks for Caltrain to look at some of the options that will help increase capacity over time, including longer platforms, which agreed shouldn't be an either-or. Instead of electrification, that doesn't make any sense, but both and, because the electric trains are able to haul longer consists without having a slowdown in performance. So with electrification, the longer platforms will enable significantly greater capacity. And just a tweak in there, level boarding goes along with there very nicely and also adds capacity and ridership. One capacity and kind of out-year scenario that is not in here, but the TransBay team is writing in their comments, consider sending all of the, all six of the Caltrains to TransBay Terminal, which is a reasonable thing to do to meet the region's needs. Glad to hear the proposal of bike ped mitigations for the traffic impacts, which is a great fit for Palo Alto. And also, good suggestion to have a mitigation fund relating to grade separations. This project doesn't do any grade separations, and it, you know, doesn't make any sense to wait for grade separations to move forward with the substantial benefits for electrification. But the future increases for Peninsula will depend on grade steps, so that's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Sven Deason, to be followed by Roland Lebron.
Evening, it's late. In summary, we need to support this, and we should have had language at the beginning saying, we support the electrification of Caltrain as quickly as possible, because you just spent an hour talking about how we need to get so fast and so far to reduce our carbon footprint. This is one of the things. This is one of the things that will do it in a heartbeat. It really sort of irritates me to see such consulting language, that we spend a lot of money on nitpicking the details, the trees. I have overhead wires in my front yard. The majority of my neighborhoods have overhead wires, distribution system. How many tons of tree debris do we take out every year because we have to trim those trees due to the distribution system? There's a lot of things, you're mandating that they do the environmental or calculate the greenhouse gas reductions as part of this. It's simply obvious. You never required those for electric vehicles. So please, when we have something like this go through, at least put in language saying there, "We support and we wish to accelerate the electrification as quickly as possible." And it's important to note, I live a block and a half away from the tracks, and I am so looking forward to that electrification. I will see those catenary wires as our statement to the future of my children and their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland Lebrun, to be followed by Elizabeth Alexis.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Roland Lebrun, Ali in San Jose. My topic sentence is "Trains first, electrification later." The first thing I'd like to touch on is a business case for electrification, namely that it is impossible to make a business case for a maximum of six trains an hour. Next, I'd like to question the current plan to give higher priority to electrification of the line than to a complete fleet replacement with dual-mode EMUs with lower emissions than a proposed mixed fleet, which would continue to use the all-diesels for 25% of the service. Replacing the entire fleet would also substantially reduce operating costs, even if the new fleet, even if the new fleet had to be operated primarily on diesel. With regards to acceleration, it is true that pure-electric EMUs can theoretically accelerate faster than EMUs powered by diesel power packs, but this comes with significant negative impacts. First, the CBOS system being installed by Samtrans cannot possibly keep up with the rates of acceleration mentioned DDI in the DD, in the DEIR. And second, such acceleration would not be allowed in Europe because of excessive energy consumption and the impact on standing passengers. In closing, we should follow the same path to electrification as cars, which did not go from fossil fuels to electricity overnight. And we should focus on a complete fleet replacement in the next three years, regardless of what happens to electrification, which is currently budgeted at 785 millions or over half a billion more than what could be done in Europe in half the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Alexis, to be followed by Stephen Rosenblum.
Just a second. I have a handout. Sorry about this, guys. For those of you in the crowd, it's Figure 3.1-17, Simulation 16 from the Electrification EIR. I'll just wait till everybody has this.
My name is Elizabeth Alexis, and tonight I'm going to speak for one minute on behalf of Green Meadow Community Association, and then I'm going to speak for two minutes, maybe, on behalf of CARD. So on behalf of Green Meadow, I've given you the simulation of the PS5, Alternative One, which is right now to be placed at the entrance to Green Meadow, right at the end of Green Meadow Way. The city's comments do mention it, but I think there are some additional details. It is not only at the entrance to the neighborhood, it is directly at, visible from the park and the community center, which is the heart of the neighborhood, which I think, which is where our Fourth of July picnic takes place, where many of you have come to oversee the festivities. This is why we're a national district, you know, Historic Register District, and I think there are additional details. I've sent those by email, but we need to emphasize that this is, I mean, it really is bizarre that they would choose to put it there. I will note that the date on the diagram is from 2004, so it is a little disappointing that after our comments in the last round, that it is still placed there. I noticed they have another alternative now by Calav. That seems to me that may not work either, though, because I believe there's a building being built right there. So I think this needs to go not only, and I would say, not only not right in front of our neighborhood, but it actually should not be in the, directly in the right-of-way because it would interfere with any plans for grade separations. It would make those very difficult. It would make the staging and construction either prohibitively expensive or would just, we would just not even consider this alternative. So it needs to go someplace safe. The second, from CARD, we've sent some additional comments. I think we would echo Adina Levin's comments. Yes, electrification is the right choice. I don't, we don't think it's going to be six trains. Who knows how many it's going to be? It's going to be more, longer, everything, and we need to plan for that. We need low-noise barriers. We need to consider things like wayside horns. We need to look at burying some electrical wires near bot, near the corridor, which would mitigate the catenary and would provide more space for pedestrian and bicycle access. So I think, you know, we, in general, would endorse the city's comments. I think we just need to go further on that and to really think about where that switching station is beyond just the aesthetic. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Rosenblum, to be followed by Herb Borack.
I know it's getting late. May I ask your indulgence on this? I've spoken on this issue several times at other meetings in the past, and I think the confluence of this Caltrain EIR with the discussion on California Avenue and the city's vision for comprehensive plan is kind of interesting in the sense that, to me, the most important thing about Caltrain is that it should be grade-separated. I think it's an illusion to think that one more train in peak hours from five trains to six trains per hour is a significant improvement in service for a billion dollars. I think that's not at all cost-effective, and it, and it's ridiculous. And to talk about it as necessary for high-speed rail eventually, to think about a high-speed rail train going by at 125 miles an hour on a grade crossing with horns blowing, I think is totally ridiculous. I think Caltrain needs to rethink its plan, and to think about doing grade separation along with electrification. I think that, that we'll have the horn noise, we'll have the, the
It's natural.
gates going down, blocking pedestrians. We'll still have the issue of suicides. I, I just don't think that this is the right, the right way to go for Palo Alto, and I hope that the council will do its best to see that, that the project does not proceed without grade separation. Thank you.
And our final speaker, Herb Borack.
Mayor Shepherd and councilmembers, the councils' guiding principles on real say that there should be two environmental impact reports. The first for Caltrain Modernization Project, and the second for any subsequent improvements proposed and necessary for high-speed rail. However, this draft EIR before you is based on a project that would essentially be designed on the assumption that there would be high-speed rail. There are two problems with that. First is, if you're following litigation, of which Palo Alto is a part, there may never be a high-speed rail on the peninsula. The second is that by including the need to be compatible with the high-speed rail project in, the project definition for the Caltrain Modernization Program means that we would get a different designed project, whether or not high-speed rail ever happens. Just for the cross-section and the width of the supports to the catenary system, it's going to be different if you're designing a system that would include the width for passing tracks for high-speed rail. It would also affect whether you could support the catenary system with a single support in the middle of the two tracks, or whether you would have to have a catenary system that would have supports on, at either end of that right-of-way, which would take out more trees, for example. So I believe as part of our comments on the EIR, the draft EIR for Caltrain, we should raise the issue of the prejudicial abusive process by essentially having a Caltrain draft EIR that assumes that there's going to be a high-speed rail project in the same right-of-way. If you eliminate that from the project, sometime later, there could be a high-speed rail project that would then be responsible for making the changes to the Caltrain Modernization Program. There's a separate issue of it being an electrification EIR, because then there will not be the complete study of alternatives to electrification. Instead, there will just be a cursory analysis, because they will then be considered that they're not feasible, since it's not electrification. Therefore, the project definition would be better, that it would be Caltrain Modernization rather than Caltrain EIR. I believe those are all appropriate issues to raise at this level of the draft EIR to preserve the council's flexibility for litigation later. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to take it up with council, and the recommendation is to approve the attached Draft Environmental Impact Report Comment Letter, following review and input. So, Richard, are you looking for us to make changes to your letter, or what is it that you'd like from us?
If you don't have any changes, we would welcome a motion to approve it.
All right. Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you, and thank you to everyone for their comments. A couple of observations here under the, the issue related to the catenary and the design of the catenary. I know this issue has been raised before. First of all, I think the letter is very well-done, very comprehensive, and I really appreciate the work. The issue of the design of the catenary, though, I think it would be appropriate to, for us to be a little bit more forceful in choose, in the choice of words and language as it relates to the aesthetics and the design. If you look at fixed rail all over the world, there are a variety of catenary styles and design issues, and there's nothing that's going to make this beautiful. There's no question about that. But there are a lot of examples where with kind of more thorough assessment of options could result in an improved design for, for the, for electrified Caltrain. I very much agree with the comments made by members of the public related to the issue of grade separation. Now, this was not addressed specifically in the electrification plan, but it is very important in terms of operating efficiencies, safety, and aesthetics for our community and other communities along the peninsula. So my request is that in the discussion of the grade separation, that it have, that it be not just embedded on, within impacts on local traffic, that somehow there'd be a, a different way of presenting that information. And the other issue is that I think it's very critical to emphasize the need to have the fund to assist with the implementation of future corridor improvements. Now, the critique of the draft EIR, we critique them for using may, should, could, and we fall a little bit into the same trap. So my, in, in some of the statements here, so what I would like to request, and I don't know if my colleagues will concur, that we be more demonstrative in our statements. So instead of could create a fund, you know, use language that's, really rephrase it so it's a clear and specific recommendation. And again, I think that the, the language is very good. The other thing on pedestrian accessibility, I think it says could create opportunity for additional pedestrian access. I don't think there's sufficient language here. Could be a sentence which talks about the issue of safety, because pedestrian access near a live corridor, we know what some of those tragic outcomes have been. And I, I know within a draft EIR, there is a safety section, but I think that that does need to be amplified. It's very, very critical. Let me see here. I think that covers most of it. The question of tree replacement, in the language in the letter, are you suggesting that there be a, recommending there be a tree mitigation fund or a fund set up so that the, either the absolute number of trees or the, the value of the trees taken out, that the equivalent value be put either, you know, appropriately near the corridor, on the corridor, or elsewhere within Palo Alto? Are you making the case that either an absolute numbers or value of the trees taken out, that we end up being made whole relative to the significant number of trees that are being removed? That's a question.
Yeah, the, we could touch base with some of our tree folks, but the thought was to have the trees replaced. And the first attempt would be to do it on or near the corridor, and if we weren't able to do that, to then do it at some appropriate place nearby.
And are we getting into the detail, you replace it with, you know, a popsicle-type tree, or replace with a more mature tree? Because it takes a while for these to develop.
Yeah, I think we've, I think we've gone through this before, that for the long-term success of the trees, there's, you know, some limitations on the size at which they can be replaced.
And minimum standards. And I really appreciate the detail work with, related to the arborist. So thank you again. I think the work's very well-done.
Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you. I also think the letter is very well-done. Couple of questions on the ridership estimates. So it seems to me that the ridership estimates are frankly low, which would create greater impacts than we think, and that's why I think we may care about it. As we discussed not that long ago, there's a bunch of TDMs that people are planning for in Mountain View and other places, and there's, what, 7 million square feet of commercial space? And if they all get GO passes, that'll be a tremendous impact on, in terms of the ridership estimates. Is this an area that we should concern ourselves with now, or, I mean, we're not worried about it and just say, "Well, the ridership estimates are off," and not be concerned? Or should we be addressing that?
Well, I think we should be concerned about it. You know, in terms of the, speaking of it in context of this EIR, they're looking to go from five trains to six trains per hour. So obviously, that's a 20% increase over the existing capacity. I mean, that doesn't even factor in, you know, potential increases that might come from reconfigured train sets or longer train sets. So I think, you know, speaking to, to the issue you raised of increased population along the corridor and desire to use the service, that's one of the key reasons to, to support this improvement.
Right. I mean, I, no question, I think the, I think we really need to support it in terms of doing our planning around it, and if we're going to get cars off the street, this is the primary mode we're going to do that. I'm just really asking, it seems to me that we're pushing a strong TDM program. Other cities, was it San Jose, Mountain View, and there's one other, right?
San Mateo.
And San Mateo are all pushing strong TDMs. That's all going to include GO passes for everybody. You start to just take Mountain View, for instance, where there's 7 million square feet, and all of Google employees suddenly get a GO pass. I actually think, if anything, we're going to have Caltrain capacity issues, and so Caltrain needs to plan for that now. And if it's not in the EIR, does that really matter? Or what can we do about it at this late stage is really the question. Should we be raising the issue and saying, "Are you looking at all the new TDMs that are going in? Your ridership estimates seem low. Should you redo your..." And I guess I'm looking for feedback if that's something we should be doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Scharf. Yeah, I think you, we could definitely add additional language to have further analysis, given the additional TDM measures that have been proposed up and down the peninsula. Something else that we included, which was a recommendation of Councilmember Burt earlier, is also to take a look at to what extents future high-speed rail requirements will constrain Caltrain capacity in the future that, that might be needed for increased ridership.
And also, isn't Redwood City going on a development boom?
Yeah, that's what I heard. Yeah, that's what I heard.
What other things should we include in that letter? I mean, I think we should try and get them out because you mentioned what Councilmember Burt had mentioned earlier to you. Are there other things that should be changed or added in this letter?
I think we tried to be as comprehensive as possible. We did include we did include the comment that Councilmember Burt had made, both at the council meeting and at a rail committee meetings within this letter. And we could add additional language related to taking a more critical look at ridership estimates based on current policies within cities up and down the peninsula.
And then, Councilmember Price, I thought, raised a good point about a lot of times we say could as opposed to should or more. Do you agree with that? I mean, you're willing to.
We could change the shoulds to shalls.
That's what I was thinking as well. So, I'll move that we do those three things. Those three, right?
Can we?
Yeah?
Do you mind re-saying?
Sure, that you obtain the I mean, I don't want to necessarily say shells to could, but that's what.
The affirmative.
So, clear and demonstrative, clear and specific recommendations, I think, was what Councilmember Price said, which was the right way to go, that we take a more critical look at the ridership estimates. And the third one was that we include Councilmember Burt's comments, but it was what would be a good way to phrase that?
I'll speak to it when I.
Okay. I just wanted to get the motion right.
Yeah, but I got other stuff.
Okay, second.
Okay, I'm going to ask the clerk to toggle the screens at our dais. Do you want to speak any further to your motion?
No.
Councilmember Klein, would you like to speak to your second?
I'll suggest a couple of other things to add on to the motion as well. But first, I want to say I appreciate the staff work on this and where we are. And where we are, however, is limited. If this were a question as to whether we whether I personally support the entire program, I would have some serious questions. But we're just commenting on the EIR. We're not trying to set policy because we can't set the policy. This is not for us to do. We're used to setting policy, but it's not our job tonight. So, the question is, as the EIR, to me, anyway, the question is, is this EIR taken into account everything that it should as far as we're concerned? And I have a couple to add to what in the main motion. I would like to see us beef up the language with regard to consideration of the center pole alternative.
What was the center pole term? What page was that on?
That's having the support for the catenary system in the middle rather than the two sides.
Okay, I'd be fine with that.
If you have in the center, it has less impact on the trees. And trees are my main concern for Palo Alto. And in this respect, I would suggest you take a look at the letter from the Atherton Arborist. And I guess I'm a little unhappy that we didn't have our arborist involved. Maybe he still could be. We have we still have another week because I think that we're really concerned about our trees, how many would be taken and how many would be trimmed. And I worry about the word trim, and I think we need to talk about that a little bit as to making sure that the trimming is indeed just trimming and not butchering. And that gets me to my next-to-last point, and that is that I think we need to beef up our language with regard to El Palo Alto. For example, we don't include the reference to the fact that it's California Historical Site Number Two. I think we ought to put that language in just in case people don't realize it, and there's no reason why they should if they don't necessarily. But I don't know how else we can much more we can do, anything else we can do to make sure that that little trimming they refer to is just that and doesn't endanger the health of our tree. So, I would really add a couple of sentences that this is a 1,000-year-old tree, historical site number two, and it really must be protected. And that we should have a role in it, that we're the guardians of this tree. Caltrans is not. And I don't know what else we can do. Get the attorney's office involved in something along those lines, just to make sure that this is not like any other tree on the on the whole corridor. Got that, Mary?
I did. I read it down.
Lastly, I think we need a section on what would happen if the Supreme Court of our state rules appropriately and really causes the end of high-speed rail in the next year. What alter would Cal would Caltrans would Caltrain thus be entering into a modification of the design, or what would they do? And I think it at least needs to be questioned because I don't think that's a possibility that's out of that too far-fetched. So, I would add, one, further attention to the center pole possibility, further protection in our language for El Palo Alto, further attention to appropriate procedures for trimming of the trees. And again, I'm repeating the Atherton Arborist, and if you don't have a copy of the letter, I do, pointing out how different procedures for trimming may save more trees, that it's not a one-size-fits-all type of situation. And the last one is the possibility of HSR being struck down by the State Supreme Court.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, I didn't hear staff respond to any of the substantive recommendations from members of the public. So, I don't know whether those were captured at the time they were raised. I can I made notes if you didn't, but.
Was there a specific comment that you wanted responded to?
Well, first, I would have assumed that some of the ones that that seem to have merit we'd you'd on your own volition would respond to, but I.
You know, I forgot to go out to him, and I thank you for reminding me after public comment.
Actually, he said he didn't have anything except to approve it.
Can't remember. Usually, I do ask if they want to respond to anything under oral communication.
Okay, so, I'll go through the ones that I captured. One was a question about whether we should also request evaluation of fixed-location horns or wayside horns, which would reduce the noise impact from horns. So, I can just offer these as amendments or have staff comment first, either one. Is there any any concern with that concept?
Staff doesn't have any concern with that. If just the final EIR will look into those more if we have those comments, so there's no downside.
Okay, so, I'll ask these questions and offer them all up. The second is increase. When we when we have tree removal, those are partially noise buffers, right? Now, we have an offset that the electrified trains have less noise, but they will lose the buffer for the freight trains. And so, my understanding, and I saw a note from a member of the public, that there are low-level berms that address wheel noise and are a well-established practice elsewhere in Europe and elsewhere. On the tree issue, I would want to add that we have our the city would approve the most environmentally beneficial relocation of trees, plantings. And then, the issue about the substation location at near Green Meadow that would potentially be in an area of a grade crossing and/or pedestrian uses. And then, Councilmember Price's point about safety, that we're going to have more trains that are going to accelerate faster, and the overall track safety concerns for pedestrians and, for that matter, cars would be a significant concern. And then, finally, Councilmember Scharf brought up this question I talked about before on capacity. And specifically with that is for the EIR within the system and in Palo Alto to look at platform lengths that would be where are the constraints on platform lengths that would be needed to expand the length of trains, which electrified train systems will be able to expand more if the platforms are there. My understanding is that particular choke points are at Menlo Park and Burlingame because of the adjacency of their grade crossings to their platforms. But the entire system would be choked, and if you choke the system, then the rest, the streets go up in their volume because people can't take the train as much. So, it looks like actually the clerk captured most of what I said. One, does staff have any objections to inclusion of any of those items?
What do you mean when you talk about the substation?
So, Elizabeth brought up the concern over the location of the substation.
So, what do you want to be?
Want to have the the EIR evaluate less impactful locations.
Just places that would maintain more flexibility. Does he capture that? I just don't see that.
Okay, so, I have to look at there. Well, first, I wanted to ask Aaron, does the staff have concerns over any of these? Then, I'll make sure we get them in amendments.
I don't have any concerns. There may be some that I could see that Caltrain's going to answer that they're beyond the scope of the EIR.
Such as?
For example, the the platform lengths. They may say that, you know, perhaps that's a mitigation. I mean, there's different ways to look at it, but they may say things like that aren't within the scope of the EIR. But they could just say those aren't.
So, my my argument back to them would be that restraining the capacity of the system would increase the roadways and create additional environmental impacts. We'll see. I think it's a good enough argument.
And if I might touch on the paralleling station number five outside of Green Meadow, just because I know that's a sensitive topic. Staff has proposed moving that down towards San Antonio Road, which is a little bit more of an industrial area away from residential where the overpass is. So, we are aware of that. We're addressing it in the letter. We agree there's opportunity to move it somewhere better, and we've asked.
So, our letter already says it's.
Yeah.
Thank you. Great, then that doesn't need to be included if it's already in there. Okay, so, if that sounds good, I'll just offer those up in concept and then try and make sure the wording is.
Yeah, it's acceptable.
Okay, great. And is it to the second, or is that acceptable? Whoever that is.
So, we're taking out substation location in Green Meadow because it's already in the in the letter.
I don't think it's very strong in there.
All right, so, then I'll just add strengthen the language around the substation agreement. Okay, let's see. Would you like me to just go to the clerk and?
That would be fine.
Refine that so we don't have to all do it publicly.
Senator Barnes?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Holman.
Okay, thank you. I think my and large staff's done a really good job on this. I do have some additions and comments, a few, that I'm proposing to the maker and secondor of the motion. One of them is on the is in the first paragraph. I appreciate very much that the staff put in here, "conceptually supports." That's critical at this stage. Conceptually supports the operational, and this will include my revision here, "conceptually supports the operational improvements to Caltrain service, provided that all impacts can be." I'm going to change this to be eliminated or effectively mitigated to the level acceptable to City of Palo Alto. And so, I use the word eliminated because if nothing else, the Green Meadow entrance substation site, or not substation, but the station site there. Because we're not looking just for mitigation, we're looking for elimination if we can find them. So, it would be impacts can be eliminated or effectively mitigated to the level acceptable to the City of Palo Alto. It's not evaluate. It's this is to City Clerk, this is in the third sentence down.
She's doing.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, you're doing double duty, aren't you, down there? Okay, so, it's the third sentence down on the first page of the letter. And it you could go dot, 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 "that all impacts can be" eliminated or effectively mitigated to levels acceptable to the City of Palo Alto. And I don't know if you want to if you want to indicate where that is. It's in the first paragraph, third line. So, you can go so it picks up, so it would be a dot, 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 "that all impacts." You got it? There is I appreciate the other amendments that have already been added very much. I had a question about the Julia Morgan, though. The Julia Morgan is just the other side of the train station, and does staff not think that there are visual impacts to the Julia Morgan?
The Hostess House?
Yeah. I guess it might be worthwhile to add add the Julia Morgan as, and I'm sure Aaron can come up with some language, visual impacts on the historic resource.
We could add it to the list of the other structures that we put in the letter.
That would be appreciated. Thank you. And the last next-to-last paragraph on the last page of the letter, this again strengthens the Green Meadow issue. It currently says, "while the project would not identify, excuse me, would not directly affect the historic Green Meadow neighborhood." And then, it's got in parentheses, and I'm going to I'm going to suggest eliminating those parentheses. "By eliminating or modifying a contributing resource," again, eliminate that parentheses. "Our view indicates that there are potentially significant visual impacts related to the sighting, blah, blah, blah." This would, I would say not could, but this would contribute to a direct impact. Can City Clerk follow that? And I could I could I could actually bring it to you. I could bring it to you since, okay? And my last comment is, I put this out for staff, that Herb Brock, I thought, raised a good question about if we should object to the DEIR using the definition that the project should be compatible with the California High-Speed Rail Authority project. So, I put that as a question to staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. If you take a look at the staff report that did address this, there's basically two ways that you could go about it. You could do a phased environmental impact report, and this would be phase one of a two-pronged project. Or you could look at them separately with iterative EIRs, or not iterative, but one EIR after another, and that's that they're doing now. And both staff and the consultant think this is a reasonable approach because there was an in-depth analysis of the future high-speed rail within this, and there'll be an additional level of review once high-speed rail moves forward.
So, if staff, maybe you could comment on Karen's, "all impacts can be eliminated or effectively mitigated to levels acceptable to the City of Palo Alto." Is putting acceptable to the City of Palo Alto an appropriate legal standard in an EIR? Number one. And number two, somewhere in this letter, we say there's something we can't mitigate. We say, we're asking them to say that it's a non-mitigatable impact, which means that we wouldn't be supporting this. Because we somewhere, we say, we believe that there's it can't be mitigated. I forget where.
Correct. There's several intersections where there's significant unavoidable impacts.
Right. So, by putting this in, that all impacts can be eliminated or effectively mitigated to levels acceptable to the City of Palo Alto, we already said it can't be.
Correct.
So, I just want to make sure we're clear on that. So, I can't accept that. So I can't accept that.
Okay, Karen, your language, actually, could you get some mics off over there, Councilmember Karen, Councilmember Holman, they are not accepting the language regarding that first paragraph change that you made. So that's not accepted.
What I heard was not being accepted is the acceptable to the City of Palo Alto, but are you accepting impacts can be eliminated or effectively mitigated?
No, and the reason is, we've already stated in the document that there are certain impacts that can't be eliminated or mitigated, that they're unmitigatable.
Well, but this says eliminated or effectively mitigated. I'm not saying that they all have to be eliminated.
No, no, we've said that there are ones that cannot be effectively mitigated. There are certain traffic impacts that cannot be.
I don't think it's the same thing.
It's not been accepted, so would you like to see if you can get a second to the words that you'd like to change?
Sure. Provided that all impacts can be eliminated or effectively mitigated.
Is there a second? Councilmember Schmidt, sorry, it's getting late, seconds your motion. So can you please get your language out, and do you want to speak to it?
Well, just, just briefly, it's, I just think it puts up front a stronger position for the city to say, you know, we're not looking just for mitigations to impacts, that we are expecting that effort will be made to eliminate impacts. And where you can't, where they can't be eliminated, then we are looking for effective mitigation. I think sometimes that we often, in EIRs, we accept mitigation as the acceptable path to take, and I think we don't often speak strongly and forcefully enough about eliminating impacts where they really could be feasible sometimes.
Councilmember Schmidt, would you like to speak to your second?
Oh, in the opening comments, Councilmember Price stated that she would like the traffic impacts to be more forcefully stated. I think the east-west corridors in the city are extremely important to us and under heavy pressure at the moment, so I think stronger wording would be more effective here.
This is, by the way, the first paragraph, third line.
So you're accepting the one intersection?
Did you want to speak on this?
Is okay. Is that right? That your addition comes after the word mitigation?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
Where are you inserting this statement?
Okay, it's "that all impacts can be," so it's the third line. So I'm picking up in the middle of the sentence. It starts, "provided that all impacts can be eliminated or," so I'm just adding the two words, "eliminated or" "effectively mitigated."
Okay.
Councilmember Klein?
We stated that this would somehow improve our position. Quite to the contrary, I think it would undermine our position because it's just not a credible statement. I think that anybody looking at this would say, that's an impossible thing, and who are these people suggesting impossible things? And so I think it would tend to vitiate the other points which we've made, I think, which are reasonable.
Okay, let's vote on the amendment to the motion, which is to add in the third line that all impacts can be eliminated or effectively mitigated. Councilmember Price?
Do I need to add a friendly amendment to incorporate a couple of comments I made before?
Hang on, just a second. We're voting on an amendment right now, which is Karen's, which has been a, which is a small addition. So I will pick you up when we finish the round. Okay, have we voted? Can the clerk go ahead and... Okay, and that, that fails with Councilmember Holman, I can hardly read it now, and Schmidt voting yes. Karen, are you, you're finished with your, because I'm going to move on to Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I think the other things were accepted by the maker.
Okay, good. Councilmember Schmidt? You're finished?
Okay. Then I'm going to jump in with my comments, and actually, I have questions for Mary Ann. Sorry, but you stayed up this late. I'm going to go ahead and shoot them right over to you. When I'm told that the platforms are not part of this EIR, et cetera, et cetera, project, does that mean, then, that if you want to extend a platform, do you have to go through an entirely new EIR for that particular platform? If you decide to extend, for example, we would like to see it looked at to have the University Avenue one extended. So what does that mean?
Yeah, so given, usually when there's a project, they always do an environmental assessment to see if it requires a full EIR or something short of that. But given the location and the size of the platforms and the challenges, I assume that it would need to go through a full environmental document.
Okay, so that would be another process at another later date. And the reason why you didn't want to take that up in this particular EIR?
It's just not the scope of the project. There's, you know, I'll just lay it out really frankly. If we had more money, we'd do everything, and we don't. And so we were asked to, to size and package the project in a way that would provide very effective improved service to the community, and so this is the first incremental investment. I think we need to do additional improvements beyond that, but that requires more money.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just get a follow-up question?
Sure.
But Mary Ann, this is not the project, per se. This is the environmental scoping. I mean, you could scope that, and whether you get additional funding later or not would determine whether you would actually expand the platforms. But, but you don't have to limit your environmental analysis to what you have funds in hand for.
Our, our environmental document, this is, what we're doing right now is just a state, but originally, we also had to get federal clearance, and for the federal process, we have to have a sufficient funding plan for the project, which, which needs to match the scope of the project. Okay.
For the EIR?
For the federal clearance.
For the federal environmental clearance? You have to, you have to have funding in place in order to have got, achieved a federal environmental clearance?
We have to have a sufficient funding plan, a reasonable funding plan, that matches the scope of the project for federal clearance.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. So, yeah, thank you. Then, first off, I want to thank you also for not certifying the 2003 EIR that you did. I know that you were really hot to do that a couple of years ago, and I wanted to, I appreciate the fact that you had to go back out, and I think the conditions did change. And yet, we still have that thing going on over by our Green Meadow neighborhood, and I know that we are asking that it get moved. How did it end up still there at the end of this EIR?
So basically, what we did was, the 35% design of the electrification system was completed in something like 2008, and so what we did for this environmental document was, we essentially scrubbed it to make sure all of the assumptions were still correct. We did not do a redesign. We really scrubbed the existing design.
Okay.
But then what we did specifically for the Green Meadows concern was, we did add an alternative. It's my understanding that that's, you know, not, you guys weren't overjoyed with that one either.
Which, is that the California Avenue alternative?
Yeah, there was, there's two options, I believe, in the environmental document, and we got a third suggestion from staff. So we'll work with them and figure out how to address it in the final document.
Okay, so, so we will look to see that, that'll probably be moved in the final document, then? Is that what you're saying?
So in the final document, we, we do not have to choose the preferred alternative. We just have to look at all of the options.
Okay.
And so we will take into consideration the comment on the third option recommended by staff.
Which is the one underneath all of the overpasses and everything at San Antonio? Okay, and so there's a strong likelihood that we might be able to get relocated there?
We will, we will look at it and try really hard.
All right. I hope you get that to happen, that that would be. My, my biggest problem with this whole thing is that right there, because it is so obnoxious for that neighborhood, especially when, I know that, you know, you're very generous in leaving a few portions of vegetation here, but there's not going to be any, the way I understand it, when it goes in.
Yeah, and I, and I didn't mean to be cutesy with my language, but when the engineers laid out the location of the specific paralleling stations, it was with an understanding of how the electricity needs to flow between the traction power system, so they need to do that due diligence, and that's really the qualifier I'm trying to stay.
And that's the way I understood it before, that you couldn't make it any longer away from the other one. So, but on the other hand, I, whatever we can do to, you know, get that to happen.
We'll take a hard look, yes.
So then also, I think you know that I don't think that Caltrain's going to work effectively for Palo Alto unless we have grade separations. It's just not, because you're even at this particular level. If you're able to get up to this schedule, we will end up with, you know, just a wall of trains before high-speed rail gets involved. Then finally, I just wanted to make a comment, and basically, I, I'm, I agree with all of the comments that have been made. I'm not sure I really agree with the Julia Morgan one. I think it's completely hidden behind the train station, so I don't think that there's really a visual there, but if, if you want to keep that in, that's fine. But thank you, colleagues, for those comments. My one comment is that I did see cantilevers made out of telephone poles, and it certainly was a nice softer look than having the harshness of metal. So I don't know if it's possible to take a look at that or to allow for that boutique-ness between communities, similar to the way you see subways in New York and other places where, you know, when you go, even in Paris, when you get to the, where the Louvre is, it's just a very different subway station than when you're off someplace else in Paris. And I think that it would be nice for us to have some of that autonomy going through our communities so that we can have some choice there as well. And those are my comments. And we have Councilmember Price, you wanted to add another amendment to this before we take it up?
Just one, just one statement. The one question, I had made comments before about the grade separation. So it was a formatting observation about the grade separation language, and so do I just assume it's in there, or do I need to restate that? So the, the grade separation language is buried within point one, impact on local traffic. So I just need some guidance on this. Do I need to clarify that about the grade separation?
Do you want the language to be stronger than it is in here?
Yes, and make sure that it's not, you know, lost within point one of the, of the letter.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to, we're going to take direction from what the motion is to change this letter.
Okay, so my concern is that we need to, okay, so, let's see, grade separation. Let's see, could establish, okay. The issue in my mind is that any discussion of grade separation should ensure that the electrification project will not preclude potential future improvements to the corridor, including grade separation. And the second point, that's a motion, an amendment.
Let's, let's see if the...
So, yes, I accept that.
Okay, okay, thank you. And?
And do you have another item?
Just one more. All opportunities created for additional pedestrian access should emphasize the importance of safety for the public.
Is that necessary?
Yes, I think it is.
So is that accepted by the maker?
I just want some clarification from staff if they think that would hurt us in any way, or...
I think to analyze the pedestrian safety is something that's fine to put in there.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Just said, that's it, Gail.
Okay, that's fine. That's my amendment.
Okay, we have a long motion here. So let's see if we can get it all up on the screen, and we can take a look at it.
I think the mayor should read it.
You want me to? Really? Okay, let's see if I can do it really fast. Hang on, let's see, where are we? So first, we've moved the letter. Ooh.
Now I want the mayor to read it.
To take a look at critical ridership, keep popping around. Ask Caltrain to take a critical look at ridership numbers up and down the peninsula. Change the "shoulds" to the "shall." Impacts future high-speed rail, what is that about?
What impacts high-speed rail will have on future ridership?
Okay. Incorporate into the motion with the consent of the maker and second, catenary wire shall, wires down the middle, El Palo Alto tree protection, appropriate procedures for trimming trees, analyze the effect of plans on Supreme Court rules against high-speed rail, evaluate fixed location, wayside horns to reduce noise impact, city approve the most environmentally beneficial location of tree plantings, strengthen the verbiage around the substation location in Green Meadow, grade crossings or pedestrian uses, eliminate mitigations to improve track safety resulting from increased numbers of trains and train speeds for pedestrians and vehicles, evaluate the need for platform expansion throughout the system to accommodate longer trains that can be needed, Julia Morgan's last paragraph, eliminate the parentheses, and Gail's two items.
Meta mayor, that, the language in that isn't correct.
Which one?
Last paragraph, it's actually the next-to-last paragraph.
Okay, next-to-last paragraph.
It's right there in the middle.
To eliminate the parentheses, where you have parentheses in the very end of the first sentence, in the final bullet before you get to the last paragraph.
And then, in addition to that, it's eliminate the parentheses, and then on the third line, last, next-to-last paragraph.
So which paragraph is this, illogical resources?
On the last page, there's this bullet, there's this indented paragraph where it starts, "while the project would not directly affect the historic Green Meadow neighborhood." Parentheses, she wants that eliminated.
So we're eliminating the parentheses, and then the third line, it changes from "this could" to "this would." I'm not sure that that's going to be trackable, the way it's written correctly currently.
Well, we already told them to go through and put "woods" and "could."
That was a different issue. So what needs, so the "as this changed," "as this should be," gone, should go away. At the, after parentheses, "as this should go away." And then, change third line to "this," capital T, capital T, "this would"
Contribute?
Change. No, "this would contribute to this, this," I'm sorry. Now, okay, "this could" to "this would." Okay, "this, this would change."
"This would contribute to," there's no change.
From "this could," okay, "to contribute to a direct impact." And then, dot, 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 after "impact."
Okay, so the maker is fine with all of this?
Yep.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote. And you have a letter with, that passes unanimously with Councilmember Niss and Berman absent. So moving on to our final item.
I apologize, but the vote on the amendment that was captured, on the amendment that failed, there was an error in that. It says, amendment failed, 2-5, Holman-Schmidt, no, it's Holman-Schmidt, yes.
Thank you. So we're moving on to the, our final agenda item for the night, and thank you, Caltrain, for coming, Mary Ann and Casey. Always good to see you. This last item tonight is to approve the letter for the, or, let's see, this is item number 18, "discussion and direction to staff on additional action the city should take on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission's proposed changes to the Regional Measure Two program specifically related to Dunbarton rail funding." Richard, I think you have this as well.
I do. Thank you, Mayor Shepherd, and for this item, staff does not have a PowerPoint presentation. I'd just like to add a few brief additional comments. presentation. I'd just like to add a few brief additional comments to what you have before you in the staff report. I think, hopefully, that communicates to you the issues before us related to this issue, but just wanted to elaborate on one element of what's going on here. At the April 9, 2014 MTC Programming and Allocations Committee meeting, just wanted to give you some quick staff impressions from that. Staff did not get the impression that the MTC believed setting aside money for the Dunbarton rail project was a good use of the funds at this time. Staff got the impression that the committee felt that allocating $20 million for the Caltrain electrification project now was a reasonably fair trade-off for BART not having to repay the $91 million Dunbarton loan in the future. Seemed that the committee was focused on projects that are under construction or will be under construction in the near future versus identifying funding for projects much farther out in the future. That said, it's unlikely at this point, in staff's opinion, that any significant changes to the plan will be made. Therefore, if council directs staff to make comments beyond what has already been submitted, it's staff's opinion that they will be most effective if those comments are made in the context of the existing plan. An example of that might be asking for partial repayment of the loan versus full repayment. So with that, I turn it back over to you. I just wanted to give you a little bit more context on the discussion that occurred at MTC.
Okay, so let me get this right, you don't have a letter for us to approve, you just want us to leave the letter that Jim's already written to MTC, and if we do write a letter, you want to do it, here it is under, the exact language can be found in the attached letter, which is in the back of the report. So, so we would be taking no further action, communicating with MTC?
So...
Unless we direct you to tonight.
Correct. So, one option would be to feel comfortable with the input that staff has already provided. The second option would be to clarify or elaborate on what staff has provided with additional input that would likely be communicated to them in the form of letter.
Okay. I have four speakers on this item, so I'm going to go ahead out to the public first, and our first speaker is Adina Levin, to be followed by Roland Lebrun. I think they're going to do that themselves, right?
If I can even get a sentence, Adina Levin, Friends of Caltrain, agree with staff that it's given where MTC is, this may not make a huge difference, but on the other hand, the Dunbarton, so in the law, the voters approved, it says that if a project can't be completed, the funds need to be assigned to something else within the same corridor. So, they're voting to change the policy for how to implement the measure, and there is now need, and there's going to be more need for Dunbarton Transit in the future, so having the cities on our region stand up and say, you know, "We need this, we know we're going to need this, you know, please make sure to address that," is, will be helpful. So, increased Dunbarton service, good, Caltrain, good, 20 million here versus 90 million on the other side, doesn't make that much sense, and, you know, saying, hey, fund with the voters funded, I don't think can hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland Lebrun, to be followed by Richard Brand.
Thanks again, I'm going to need one minute, 10 seconds. I'd like to start by touching on the current capital budget for Dunbarton Rail and close with a potential phase implementation as a way forward. The current funding envelope for this project stands at $300 million as follows: $60 million in San Mateo sales taxes, $40 million in VTA Measure A, and then the $135 million in RM2 approved by the voters in 2002. Alameda County is only contributing $31 million, which makes it somewhat unclear why the East Bay should walk away with the majority of the RM2 funds, especially considering there is no immediately apparent nexus between the Warm Springs extension and reduction across bay traffic. So assuming the RM2 funds were divided evenly between the peninsula and the East Bay, the peninsula would be left with a total of $167.5 million, which could easily be rounded up to $200 million, which matching regional and state funds are more than enough to connect Redwood City to the future Menno Park Station on Willow, and we could run dual-mode DMUs until there is sufficient ridership to justify electrification. In closing, the primary issue that needs to be addressed is leadership, something Palo Alto is famous for. And I believe that a way forward may well lie in a new Peninsula Cities Consortium, which will get the job done, including laying the foundations for the Dunbarton Tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Brand, to be followed by Hurd Borak.
Yeah, good morning, and I'll make a quick Richard Brand, 281 Addison. The important thing about this MTC issue is that we have related issues, and I'm one of your volunteers working on the parking issue, that are interrelated to this transport link across the bay. TDM and parking, a lot, probably up to 20% of the people that are parking downtown come from the East Bay. Fremont is a connection with the Capital Corridor and the Altamont trains that come through there. Putting people on the trains and out of the cars, longer term, I know it's not just next year, will solve a lot of the parking issues that Jim has me working on, and I think this is an important issue. So while I've got a lot more to say, I think that we need to protest this, what I call theft of the money that was allocated to this important link, which ultimately could be a BART link too. And so, I've written a letter, you've seen my letter a month ago, I think the MTC needs to hear from Palo Alto to say, "We're trying to get people out of cars, and that link is critical to that function and getting a traffic on University Avenue." Thank you.
Thank you, and our final speaker is Hurd Borak.
Thank you. On the previous item, and I'll try to paraphrase what Councilmember Klein said, although the hour's late, and that is, it was not an appropriate place on the previous agenda item to talk about what our policy is, but rather, we were commenting on environmental impact report. On this agenda item, it's different. Here, we do talk about what our policy is, and it's appropriate to do it. My concern with the letter that's already been written is that it supported $20 million for Caltrain electrification, when the council's adopted policy is that it can't determine whether we support electrification until all the potential impacts are identified, studied, and suitable mitigation measures are implemented. It was the purpose of the previous agenda item to make our comments on a draft EIR, and the conditions in our policy are not going to be met until the final EIR comes out and a project is approved, and there is a complete and certifiable EIR on Caltrain electrification. Therefore, I think it was inappropriate to support the $20 million for electrification, and that we should take action to reverse that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Burt.
Yes, first question, do staff have any idea on that the program requires that it be for projects within the Toll Bridge corridor? This doesn't seem, BART running from, to Warm Springs doesn't seem to be in the Toll Bridge corridor. Is that, is that something that we should be questioning in terms of whether they're consistent with their own program guidelines?
I'd have to follow up on that for a very specific answer, but I know that there's, corridors defined beyond just the part of the corridor that goes over the bay.
Okay, well, it's certainly not the peninsula corridor. So I think that we should push that point, as we, some people have stated, we're probably not going to turn them around, but this lays the groundwork for next year's requests and to rally peninsula cities around a common position. So, I would, I would advocate that we include wording that, that says that the fund should remain in, for purposes, within the corridor.
Yeah, Adina just gave me some language that does reference it. I'm not exactly clear with the source of it, but it obviously speaks to the original decisions in the project, and it makes it explicit that says if a project cannot be completed, the commission is to consult. After the hearing, the commission may vote to modify the program and the project's scopes, increase its funding, blah, 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 or to reassign all the funds to another or an additional regional transit program or project capitalized within the same corridor.
Yeah, are they referring to the peninsula rail corridor? I mean, that's what the...
Yeah, it seems to be...
Or across the bay, or whatever?
Seems like it's across the bay, but...
Okay, so either way, I would support that we...
We might as well take the liberty to interpret it the way...
That's right. Second, what, did VTA take this up, and did they take a position?
At this time, VTA has not taken a position opposing the loan forgiveness, and it's my impression that they're comfortable with it.
Have they taken a position supporting it?
I believe so.
Councilmember Price?
I could just give you a brief history. The last official action taken by the VTA Board regarding the corridor was approval of the 2013-15 budget in June 2013. The Dunbarton Rail Corridor is zeroed out with a carryover appropriation of $141,000. This was decreased from the original budgeted amount of $2.4 million. The Policy Advisory Committee agreed that VTA would not support money allocated to this project, and the VTA Board voted in that way around the same time.
And what position?
And I don't, I am not, I don't believe they took a specific position on this item recently, because they've zeroed out their budget related to this project.
And what position did you take as our representative on that action?
That action took place before I was on the VTA Board.
Then on the Policy Advisory Committee?
And this took place before, let's see here.
Didn't you move from the Policy Advisory Committee to the VTA Board?
Right, right, and zeroed out. I think the majority of the Policy Advisory Board agreed with the staff recommendation.
Well, my question was, what did you take as our representative?
Honestly, I don't remember that, at the time. I don't remember that vote specifically.
All right. And then, the other thing that I'd like to put in the letter is that, that we advocate in the future that the dollar, these dollars be put back in, and that one purpose can be for platform lengthening, the very thing that Marian said, we couldn't put in the EIR because we don't have the funds for it. I'll bet $90 million would help go a long ways on the platform lengthening. And I just want to make the point that the whole thing of what we're going to get, of increasing from five to six trains, will add 20% capacity, which at the current growth rate is two years' capacity increase. Now, we just had additional capacity, because they, we're going to have some, because they'll be able to lengthen the trains 25% from, I think, four to five cars, or whatever it is. So we get two bumps of 20%. This would be a second one, but at the rate we're increasing, 20% buys us two years in demand. So, it's a big deal. I'll second that motion.
Can you restate the motion of what you want?
Yeah, that we include two elements to our letter. One is that the fund should stay within the, the, serving the peninsula corridor, and second, that the dollars should be evaluated for purposes, including, that purposes that would increase the capacity of Caltrain, including platform lengthening.
Then, do you want to also, I know in our letter that went out on, in April, it illustrated something that we haven't taken a position on, that the allocation to Caltrain modernization instead of electrification?
Oh, yeah, I, that, let's, that we do what we've done elsewhere, which is, we substitute modernization for electrification. It doesn't exclude electrification, it just doesn't go beyond what is our policy position.
So I, yes?
If I may speak to that, the issue we're dealing with there is we've got two things going in parallel. One is our environmental review of the Caltrain electrification, and the other is funding of the proposed Caltrain electrification project. So the $20 million is, it's not identified for Caltrain modernization, it's identified to go towards this specific proposed electrification project. So, you know, it's staff, we're kind of balancing...
I think we can say modernization, and they can take it however they want.
Okay.
That's kind of, all right. I'm going to go out and see if he wants to speak anymore, and then also the second.
I just want to understand the motion.
I think that what Councilmember Burt means to say is that we're authorizing the mayor to send a letter, similar to what the city manager's letter was, with the additions that you've set forth?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
They're all sharp as a tack right now. Okay, Councilmember Scharf, would you like to speak to your second?
I would like to speak to my second. You know, I think we as a council need to deal with this issue very soon on electrification and modernization. I think it's silly that we say modernization, and I think we need to stop that. It just seems really silly. I mean, they're moving forward to electrify it, I have no idea what we mean by modernization. I think what we're trying to say is maybe not electrification. I know that's what Councilmember Klein's talked about in other rail, but if we're not going to, if we're not going to support that, I think we need to be pretty clear, because I think it confuses people at Caltrain when we say that. The other thing is, I think we need to be more effective on this stuff, which means that we need to come to council earlier. So, so, you know, I think Councilmember Burt was giving Councilmember Price a bit of a hard time, and in Councilmember Price's defense, I think this stuff needs to come to council, and we need to have some direction and some sense of where the council stands on this, and also bring it forward so that we can, you know, have a council position, talk about it, so that our representative knows. And then frankly, on the cities association, our representative is Joe Przynski on MTC, and Joe's from Los Gatos, and, you know, I would like to have talked to Joe about this earlier, before these votes were taken.
There's no train.
And so, there's a, and you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunities to advocate, and I think if we're going to be effective, we need to think ahead and advocate effectively on this. And so I'd like to see staff bring us these opportunities, if possible, beforehand, so we can advocate effectively as a council.
Right, just so we're clear on this, we brought this as soon as we got, this came to our attention, and I wrote this letter, literally, you know, just at the last minute to try to get something in the record before the meeting and put this up. So, I mean, we weren't sitting on this. Now, that's a different question of how do we get the notices from them?
Yeah, I'm really not complaining that you're sitting on it. It's more, this has obviously been in the works for a lot. Councilmember Price voted on the policy committee a while back. You know, so this has been percolating through. We should be advocating way before it gets to this. And I'm, it's a tracking issue, I'm not sure it's that easy, I just think that if we're going to be effective as a council on these issues, that's what we need to do. I mean, I could think of lots of things we could have done earlier on this. And this is a big thing. I mean, I, you know, $90 million, $100 million, Caltrain is one of our bigger issues. So I think that's one, something we need to look at. All right.
Councilmember Holman?
Just one clarification.
This is, you want to make?
And sorry, it is getting late, but is it, do we, do we want to put the sentence in, in there in a follow-up letter, that we're supporting the $20 million allocation to Caltrain, if it's modernization or electrification? It seemed like Councilmember Scharf. So, are we, I know it's already gone out, but you're sending a follow-up letter. So do we want to soften that language, is what I'm saying? If that can be clarified?
May I just ask, were you intending with this new language to limit us to the $20 million, or I was thinking that this potentially says, we're interested in more than $20 million to go to these, these things?
Can I offer a concept? Perhaps what we want to say, so it wouldn't be inconsistent with what the city manager is, that we would, we would support the $20 million at this time, and we want them to evaluate additional support for the corridor in the future along the lines of such and such. Does that seem like a...
Yeah, I mean, I think if we could do that, and then embellishes with some of the ROI that we get on the capacity there. We make this case that, you know, don't just throw us a bone of $20 million bucks to do this, that we can buy a lot of improvement here. this, that we can buy a lot of improvement here for, actually more cost-effectively than they're thinking about redirecting.
Now, I'll just say, this whole platform thing, Caltrain, we asked two years ago for an evaluation of the lengths of the existing platforms. They still haven't supplied it. They're finally starting to say, oh, yeah, we'll take a look at that sometime in the future, but not even in this EIR. And it took like three years for them to even look at level boarding. We just not, need to not assume that they're going to be experts doing the right thing for the system that they run.
So I'm needing additional clarification from, thank you for those comments, Councilmember Burt. From Richard, thank you. As you said, we're kind of juggling this, we're kind of juggling this EIR conversation that we're having earlier about Caltrain, and then this letter too. And apologies, it is late and I'm tired. But is it appropriate at this point in time to say that we support the $20 million, or we are, you know, supporting at this point, I guess, to this point in time, or something of that nature? So we're not speaking out of both sides of our mouth?
No, Vanessa. Why don't you just add language there?
How to, to stay the course with what we've already said, but go beyond that and make a larger case with these other examples. So I don't think we're undermining our past position, but we're arguing for more.
And this isn't consistent also with our concern still with the DEIR for Caltrain modernization?
Yeah. I mean, I think we're treating this as a colloquial expression of, on the funding side.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Price?
Just a question then, because no one's addressed this specifically, this language then, we are not specifically challenging the repayment issue, the loan or anything. We are, are we, have we changed language there? That's what I'm missing. We're talking about directing funds as outlined, but we are not, thus far have not changed language regarding the issue of the repayment condition for the $91 million, correct?
My impression...
Right, just, the letter as written, no changes other than that, right?
Yeah, that, my impression is that we're asking for the contribution of $20 million and the repayment of the $91 million loan with that funding going towards Caltrain, consideration of platform lengthening and other things.
Oh, that the funds of the total, of the $91 million, okay, because I didn't see the 91, and I thought, all right, so if that's clear.
The, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I'll be supporting this letter going out. I also just want to say, I think we did ask for them to look at platform length in the original comment period. Actually, they did bring it up at the one Policy Advisory Committee meeting. I can't remember what they're calling it right now. They've changed the name, the Modernization Committee, but they did look at it. And this is how it turned out, that they, that they weren't allowed to go there without having the funding to be able to implement it. And that's the way I understood their comment. So they have looked at it, but not in the way that we would like to see them look at it. So anyway, there's no more lights, so I'm going to call for the vote. And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Niss and Berman absent. And our final agenda item is Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcements. And I see no lights, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting.